That's all you got to do.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting of the LSU Board of Supervisors will now come to order. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dan?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Ms. Aaronson? Mr. Blossman? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mrs. Zuschlag?
Here.
Mrs. Chair, we have a quorum to begin.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griffith. We have two very special guests here today that are graduating this spring. If you wouldn't mind, and they will lead us in the invocation and the pledge, I'd ask them to come forward and introduce themselves, please.
My name is Patrick Werner. I'll do the invocation, so if you'll please bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here safely all together. We thank you for everyone here in these rooms filling these seats today. We ask that you so graciously fill their hearts and minds with patience and wisdom. We bless all those graduating this weekend and that all participants and their families will travel safely here and back home safely. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you very much. We'll ask our next special guest to lead us in the pledge, and then we'll ask for comments.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And young lady, if you would please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit, and then we'll ask Mr. Werner to do the same.
Good morning. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this morning. My name is Colleen Temple. I'm a senior at LSU Laboratory School, and I've attended all 13 years there. There aren't a lot of us who've done that, so it's an honor to be a part of that group. It's been such an amazing experience. I was surprised when Ms. Tiffany Creel asked me to speak this morning, and I have to admit, I'm a little bit nervous. I've actively, I've been actively involved in basketball, volleyball, and even one year of track in my time at U-High. And my parents have been so supportive, especially my dad. He's had a huge impact on my personal experience and my personal success at school. I'm so glad he's finally got the opportunity to be on this board, and I know it's something that he's been wanting to do for a long time. And I'm just so proud of him for that. And I just want to say thank you so much for the board for always making sure that us students at U-High have all the tools we need to succeed, and I'm just, I'm sure that I'll be leading this school in good hands. Thank you so much.
If I could ask you one question. Did your dad play basketball for LSU? Was your dad a good player for LSU?
That's my girl.
Mr. Werner?
Good morning. My name is Patrick Werner. I'm currently a senior at LSU, and I'll be graduating tomorrow morning, so for the next 23 hours, I guess. The last three years, I studied sports administration, and I've had the opportunity to be a student manager with the men's basketball team, which has been an incredible opportunity. And I've met Mr. Temple on multiple occasions and learned quite a bit from the organization. And it's helped me a lot with what I want to do in my future, as well as being a young life leader at U-High and getting to experience firsthand the impact that the Lord can have in high schools around the country. My, you know, thank you so much for all your hard work the last four or five years you've been on the board for LSU. You've done so much that so many people don't even know about. And me, Hannah, and Grace are all so proud of you and very proud to call you our mom. So, can't wait to celebrate graduation and Mother's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Temple and Mr. Werner, it's an honor to have you with us today. We're extremely pleased to have you. We have, I believe we have someone registered for public comment. Ms. Griffith, is that correct?
Yes, we have three individuals registered for public comment. The first is Mr. Javen Bowman, and he was, he will be speaking on Item 10 on the agenda concerning executive search.
Is the gentleman here? Okay, I'm assuming he is not here. Do we have someone else registered for public comment?
Yes, we have Ms. Abby Grace Milligan also speaking on Item 10 on the agenda concerning executive search.
And...
Mr. Chair, I believe that Javen Bowman just walked in.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Javen Bowman, who is registered for public comment, just walked in.
Mr. Bowman?
He's walking forward.
Okay. Mr. Bowman, you're registered for public comment, and under our rules, we allocate three minutes, sir. We invite you to make your comments, sir.
Thank you. All right, hello, everyone. My name is Javen Bowman. I have the pleasure of serving as the new student body president for the 2021 to 2022 school year, along with Abby Grace Milligan. She couldn't be here, but she does send her regards to the members of the board, faculty and staff, administration, and other guests. I just want to thank you for being here. I want to thank Mr. Jason and the board for allowing Abby Grace and I and other student government members to be a part of the presidential search process. It was a privilege to interview all of the candidates. I won't say necessarily who I think is the best candidate for the choice, for I think they all brought amazing things to the table. I think they all offered things to students that we love to hear and that would see our university forward, whether that was Dr. Henderson making us feel very personable and making us feel very safe and comfortable when he walked in the room, to Dr. Drogmire having a very technical mind and logistical mind to fix situations, or Dr. Tate, who offered very tangible solutions and very, I guess, present ideas or things that he had done in the past that worked for his university, University of South Carolina. I just would also say that when you all do make the decision for the president of the university, that you just keep the thoughts of the student body in mind, or the students in mind, or at the forefront, honestly, because students are a little bit nervous, scared, just unsure, just unsure because of the unknown, but they are excited and really happy with the candidates overall. But I heard too many negative things about either one of them, which I think is amazing and just shows how well of a job that the search committee has done with choosing the next university president. So, that was more so what I wanted to say, just thank you all for letting us be a part of it, and just to make sure that when you do make your final decision, that you keep the thought of the student body in mind. And thank you, President Galligan, for the service you have done to us thus far. And that was all I had.
Sir, we appreciate your comments very much. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
Ms. Griffith, do we have anyone else registered?
Yes, we have Dr. Sierra Williams speaking on Item 10 on the agenda concerning executive search.
Dr. Williams.
Good morning, esteemed members of the LSU Board of Supervisors and LSU community. My name is Shira Williams Jennings. My comments this morning are informed by a number of intersections. I am an associate professor at a neighboring institution with tenure. I am also a native of New Iberia, Louisiana. I am a 1994 graduate of LSU, a member at large of, a board member at large of the A.P. Turo Senior Black Alumni Chapter. But most importantly, I am the mother of an amazing young woman who will graduate later today and Saturday, summa cum laude, with a 4.13 LSU grade point average and upper-division honors in accounting. My daughter's name is Jordan Grace Williams. She has managed these achievements, also being a two-year member of the Tiger Golden Band, Golden Girls Dance Team, and working on campus four years. Just last week, our family was extremely disappointed to learn that Jordan was disqualified for consideration of the university medal due to a policy change that became effective just last semester. To be clear, I do not disagree with the faculty senate's decision to change the policy. It is well within their purview. However, I want to state for the record that the manner in which the university has executed this policy is questionable and unacceptable, it should be unacceptable to you and the LSU community. Failures regarding transparency and communication are just the beginning of our grievances with their behavior, which we find apathetic, dismissive, and arrogant. For context, this decision was made in the Fall 2020 Semester in the middle of a pandemic, to the detriment of unsuspecting students like my daughter, who were nearly done and believed that they were continuing to meet the requirements of the university medal. My daughter set a personal goal of pursuing this medal when she began her tenure at LSU in 2017. Each semester, she exceeded the criteria of maintaining a GPA above 4.0 and made straight A's every semester. She did not go to any other institution. Given her record, I'm sure some wonder, why isn't she getting the medal? As she embarked upon her senior year, the final lap in her race, the rules of the marathon were changed, such that a B that she made in high school prior to ever stepping foot on LSU's campus disqualified her for this medal. Let that sink in. She did not make the B while a student at LSU. She made it in high school. Seems like this is an unintended consequence of a policy change, which often happens. Therefore, the policy change is clearly a case where a grandfather provision is warranted. Degree plans are governed by the year the students are admitted to the university. Likewise, their academic performance should follow suit. Such a provision allows for transparent, fair, and equitable ways to apply the former policy and extend it moving forward. In closing, my family and I strongly disagree with the provost's designee who denied Jordan's appeal. The faculty senate and the provost's office had an opportunity to make this right, but they chose not to uphold LSU's commitment to community. We continue to ask that Jordan Grace Williams and the other students who made appeals in this regard receive the university medal that they have earned. Thank you so much for your time and attention. I appreciate it, and I welcome the opportunity to discuss this matter further with anyone interested in doing so. Thank you.
I congratulate you on your daughter, and let me say this, if I may. I learned a little something about this this week, and we're taking a good hard look at that situation, and that's all I can say. But at any rate, congratulations on your daughter, and we are taking a look at that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Dan, Mr. Chair. Ms. Jennings?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am.
I just want to address you. I want to thank you for coming up here, and I do know Jordan Williams, and I think she is absolutely outstanding and deserving of every honor we can give at this university. And she's the best of us, and she's exactly what you dream of having as a student. And I want to look for ways to promote and to encourage Jordan Williams and students like her. And like the chairman said, we're going to be looking at every way that we can do that.
I wish, I wish I'd said it as well as he just said it, but that's what I forgot to say as well. Thank you.
I thank you both, I thank all of you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Jennings, I want to echo what my colleague just said. Congratulations on such an amazing accomplishment, and we will do our best to rectify that situation. But she's an amazing student and deserves all the accolades that come along with her accomplishments.
In other words, you've gotten our attention.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Other public comments, Ms. Griffith?
No, sir.
There are no other public comments, unless there's objection, I move that we move, that we recess for committee meetings. Is there any objection to moving to committee meetings?
Oh. Excuse me for one second.
Second. We're going to recess. I think you just made a motion to have a recess for five minutes. You've got a second.
It looks like the board's going to be in recess for five minutes.
Okay, folks. I try to invite as much confusion around me at all times as possible. Have we got everybody? Before we move into recess for committee meetings, I will ask unanimous consent of the board for a motion that Ms. Werner will make. Ms. Werner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While we continue to discuss the matter of the university medal policy, today I would like to motion that this board names Jordan Grace Williams as the Board of Supervisors honorary outstanding student graduate of 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Werner. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Jones. Do we need a roll call vote?
I'd call for a unanimous second.
Mr. Starnes has asked that we make this unanimous. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is passed unanimously. Congratulations.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
No, sir. You have to vote unanimously to add it to the agenda. Then you vote on the motion.
Okay. I'd like, can we unanimously put this on the agenda? Ms. Werner?
I move that we put this on the agenda, and I'd ask for a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Jones. Is there any objection to making it unanimous? Okay, and at this point, we will, I will ask for the motion itself, which Ms. Werner has made. Ms. Jones has seconded.
I want a unanimous second for that.
And I would ask that that motion be made unanimous?
Unanimous second.
Unanimous second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion is passed, thank you. Okay. At this time, we will recess for committee meetings unless there's any objection. Hearing no objection, Ms. Jones, would you please call the academic committee meeting to order?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Griffith, please call roll. Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Ms. Aaronson? Mr. Blossman? Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Madam Chair, there's a quorum to begin.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. We're proud to note that LSU-UNIS has placed 47 students from Evangelion Parish into a program where they can earn an industry-based credential, a high school diploma, and a $1,900 stipend through its partnerships with the Jobs of America Graduates, JAG, program. Lacey Hamilton, LSU's Director of Workforce Innovation and Continuing Education, notes that students now have the opportunity to work with local information technology companies and business leaders. This allows them to have a direct pipeline to employment or additional degree or certification. We're proud to note that the LSU's debate team finished its 2020-2021 season as runners-up in the International Public Debate Association National Championship Tournament. The National Championship Tournament included 62 teams from 24 states with more than 300 competitors. In the individual categories, the LSU's debaters brought home noteworthy victories. Seniors Ethan Arbuckle and Dominic Mercer were selected as national champion IPDA team honorees in the varsity division after debating against 94 competitors. Arbuckle placed ninth overall in speaking and finished second in the season-long championship. This ranked him second in the nation overall for the speaking category for the competition. Graduate assistant Leah Smith and MBA student J.J. Thompson both finished as semifinalists in the professional division. Additionally, graduate students Matthew Gadian was an octo-finalist. The LSU Health Sciences Center New Orleans faculty has been busy during the pandemic months. Year-to-date, faculty has submitted 121 new grants with a potential value of over $180 million. At present, they have 1,271 active IRB protocols. In relation to intellectual property, they have 31 disclosures submitted and have filed 13 new patents. At this time, I'd like to call Dr. Haney to present the agenda items.
Thank you. The first item we have on the agenda is from all of the campuses to approve the conferral of degrees for the 2021 calendar year commencement exercises. Typically, we submit a list of specific dates for approval for conferral of degrees. However, we are asking for board approval for the conferral of degrees for any commencement, whether virtual or on campus, from spring to fall '21. The flexibility will allow campuses to adjust commencement dates in the event of an emergency, such as a natural disaster or a sudden change in state health guidelines. The flexibility is especially needed in light of the recent pandemic so that we may continue to provide safe and compliant commencement activities for all of our campuses.
Yes. Are there any questions or discussion? Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Griffith, please conduct a roll call vote. Yes. Mr. Armenter?
Yes.
Ms. Aaronson? Mr. Blossman? Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? We have five yeas, none opposed. Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Without objection, the motion is approved. The next item, please, Dr. Haney.
So, the next item is from LSU Alexandria to establish an undergraduate certificate in criminal justice. This certificate will provide a pathway for individuals who are already working in the criminal justice system and who wish to earn a post-secondary credential so that they can advance in their career, and high school graduates who are not yet ready to enroll in an associate or baccalaureate-level program, but who wish to acquire the basic knowledge and skills that would help them obtain work in the criminal justice system. LSU Alexandria hopes to contribute to the Board of Regents' efforts to increase affordable and accessible post-secondary higher education options for the citizens of our state. The university also considers this certificate as a potential pipeline to its Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice, a program that already enjoys very healthy enrollment and strong graduation rates. Currently, no higher education institution in the state offers this undergraduate certificate, so there's great potential. And the program will be offered both online and via LSU online, excuse me, both online and on campus. LSUA receives a high inquiry rate from those in the criminal justice system who want to pursue a higher education credential, and graduates with a criminal justice certificate can work as correctional officers, bailiffs, police officers, security professionals, detectives, and investigators. And when combined with relevant degrees and work experience, certificates in criminal justice can lead to advanced in-demand roles. There are no new costs or new resources required for the program, and I give this to you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stone. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Armenter. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. No, I'm sorry. We need to conduct a roll call vote for that one as well. Ms. Griffith, would you please call roll? Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Armenter?
Yes.
Ms. Aaronson? Mr. Blossman? Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Six yeas, none opposed. Without objection, the motion is approved. The next item, please, Dr. Haney.
The next request is from LSU Health Sciences Center in New Orleans to establish the Daniel W. Nuss Endowed Chair in Skull-Based Surgery. The Daniel W. Nuss, M.D., Chair in Skull-Based Surgery in the LSU Health Department of Odorat-Larynology will advance interdisciplinary education in skull-based diseases and treatments. It will also fund research and innovation in the further study of surgical anatomy, microsurgical, and endoscopic techniques, reconstruction and rehabilitation of cranial nerve paralysis, facial deformities and deficits that are the frequent consequence of skull-based diseases. $700,000 was received in donations for this endowed chair. Thank you for your consideration of this proposal.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Is there a motion to approve the proposal? Moved by Supervisor Armenter, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Starnes. Ms. Griffith, please conduct a roll call vote. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Armenter?
Yes.
Ms. Aaronson? Mr. Blossman? Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Six yeas, none opposed. Without objection, the motion is approved. Thank you, Dr. Haney. Mr. Chair, that concludes the business of the academic, well...
Thank you, Ms. Jones, very much.
I'd like to entertain a motion to conclude the...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Without objection, the motion is approved. That concludes our business, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Werner, please convene the athletic committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Werner? Here. Mr. Temple?
Here.
Mr. Blossman? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mrs. Zuschlag?
Here.
Madam Chair, there's a quorum to begin.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to recognize our outstanding, some of our outstanding student athletes who continue to represent LSU during this year, which has proved very challenging, while keeping up their academic studies and representing the university nationwide on our most public stage. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our gymnastics team, who once again soared to great heights, making it to the NCAA tournament performances. And though they were under a new coach this year and facing a lot of physical challenges, they represented LSU very, very well. And I know there are great things ahead for our ladies in gymnastics. Our track and field team, as everyone knows, continues to set records, and as they move on to the SEC championships, I have no doubt we'll be watching them all the way to the NCAA finals this season. They are fast and inspiring, and I look forward to all the success ahead of our track and field. They certainly hold a lot of history for LSU. And once again, our very young beach volleyball program is moving forward, ranked number four seed going into the NCAA championships coming up. And I know these women are going to represent LSU very well once again. We all know baseball and softball season rolls on. Softball wraps up this weekend, and we expect great things coming up in the SEC tournament for them. And baseball has a couple more weeks, and we expect the same for Coach Minari and our LSU Tigers. And now I have to highlight a few of my favorites over in UNIS. Our LSU Bengals have been... Our LSU Bengals have been doing great things. I am so excited to say that our baseball and softball teams are both headed as number one rankings into the NJCAA tournaments, and we have a lot of fun sports to watch with them, and LSU E softball is hosting a first round up in Eunice. So if you have the chance, please make your way up there and support our ladies of the LSU E Bengals softball team. And finally, a young man I happened to have known back in high school, Jonathan C.C., was named All-Region National Junior College Athletic Association All-Region and All-Tournament Team Knod. So I want to congratulate Jonathan and Coach Byron Starks at LSU E. I know all of our student athletes continue to work very hard, train, and keep up their studies, and I'm very proud of all of them. And I know you joined me in congratulating them in all their success this year. Now I'd like to call on our Athletic Director, Scott Woodward, to present our items on our agenda today. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members. First of all, if I can, if you don't mind indulging me in the tis the season of graduation, and I just had breakfast with three of our four summa cum laude grads in our office, and it was just, you know, quite humbling, as always. You get an inferiority complex when you see what these young men and women do as far as their schedules academically and athletically, and as I say, it definitely is an inferiority complex time of year for us administrators because these kids are going to be doing awesome things. So with that, I just want to let you know that they are representing you, they're going to make you proud. One of them is going to get his master's in medical science to get ready to go to medical school. One's accepting a job in the recruitment business, and the third one is going to graduate school as well and here in LSU in liberal arts, and so we're proud of them from that standpoint. So, the items on the agenda, Madam Chair and members, the first one is the contract of Kim Mulkey, the term sheet and request, and it's pretty straightforward. I just want to let you know that it hasn't been said pretty publicly that Kim was a delight to negotiate with. Essentially, essentially, her contract is the exact same contract that she had at Baylor. I couldn't ask her to take less, obviously, with her incredible career and her incredible record, but she understood what we had here and how badly we wanted her, and she took the exact same thing that she had at Baylor, and that hasn't been said because obviously it's a private school and most people don't know that, but I want you to know that of how good of a, not only person that she is, but just a class act and to deal with. So, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions about that for the sake of time.
Are there any questions from the committee or the board?
Do you need a motion?
I'd like a motion, please.
I would. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Starnes, second by Mr. Morrow. Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, our second item is Assistant Head Football Coach and Wide Receivers Coach Mickey Joseph's contract. Obviously, we always are in the market and watching what's happening, and as always, when we have great coaches, they tend to be, are tempted to be poached, and this is one of these situations where we thought that there was a proper adjustment in his salary to retain him and to keep him. He's obviously done a good job. If the NFL Draft is a marker, he had two of his players drafted in the first two rounds, and we expect and hope for more success there, and just wanted to let you know that. It's straightforward here, again, what we're doing. We're adjusting him, that will move him from ninth to eighth, and moves him to sixth on the LSU staff and fourth in the SEC.
Very good. Any questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
I move. Second.
Mr. Zuschlag, second. Mr. Armenter? Is there another second? Mr. Armenter is not a member of the committee.
Yes.
Mr. Woods, thank you, but thank you, Mr. Armenter.
I was excited.
We all join you in that.
Thank you, Counsel.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. And, Mr. Woodward?
Yes. Finally, obviously, we are excited about the upcoming women's basketball season, and to date, we have, we believe, over 3,000 deposits for season tickets, new deposits for season tickets, and we're requesting an upgrade and an increase in what we're doing and how we're doing it. And as you see and have seen in the item, is that we're going to give a four-year essentially amnesty to our current season-ticket holders as a loyalty reward, and to give them an opportunity to hopefully see and view what they like, and we know that they will be honored to do that. And then finally, our ticket staff did a tremendous job comparing top programs nationally as well as programs in the SEC and what we do, and we think this is a very fair and equitable season-ticket package, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in chain of motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Brown. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. Mr. Woodward, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the committee.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Any opposition? Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of the Athletic Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Werner, and thank you, Director Woodward, for all your great work. We appreciate you very much, sir. The committees have now completed their business. The recess has ended, and the board is reconvened. I will accept a motion to accept all committee recommendations from today's committee meetings.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Jones.
Second.
Second by Ms. Werner. Ms. Griffith, please conduct the roll call.
Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Mr. Armenter?
Yes.
Ms. Aronson? Mr. Blossman? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morrow? Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mrs. Zuschlag?
Here.
Thirteen yeas, none opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. The committee reports are adopted by the board. This month, we have personnel actions requiring board approval. They've been distributed previously. Is there a motion to accept these actions, Ms. Werner?
Mr. Dampf, I would like to motion to accept these personnel actions.
Thank you, Ms. Werner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Jones. Without objection, is there any objection? Without objection, these reports are adopted. The next item relates to a statement we're going, relating to Title IX. We're going to defer that on advice of counsel and move to the executive search for an overview and conversation and discussion. I will call on Chairman James Williams.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I first want to start by thanking you, Mr. Dampf, Chairman, our Chairman, for the opportunity to chair this search committee. It has been one of the greatest honors of my, of my career. To my colleagues on the search committee, and I want to call them each by name because they put in an incredible amount of time, effort, and intellectual energy through this process. We had Professor Gabriela Gonzalez was the committee vice chair. She's the LSU Boyd Professor of Physics and Astronomy. We had our chair-elect, Remy Starnes, our board supervisor member Valencia Jones, our media pass chair, Mary Werner, Chancellor of LSU Shreveport, Larry Clark, the dean of the New Orleans School of Medicine, Steve Nelson, education, technology, and specialist and the staff senate president for LSU Alexandria, Takira Wagner, Professor Luke LaBord in the LSU School of Renewable Natural Resources, Kristel Slaughter, the co-owner of SSA Consultants, Jessica Jones, the director of student success at LSU Eunice, Lester Wayne Johnson, the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, LSU Health Monroe, Dean Roland Mitchell, dean of the LSU College of Human Sciences and Education here at the Aynham Campus, Hannah Barrios, who is the student body vice president, Clarence Casalot, who's the chair of the LSU Foundation, Lori Martin, who's professor of sociology at LSU, Tara Smith, who's the regional director of the LSU Ag Center, and Edwin Murray, vice president at the LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans.
I think I got left off in Iowa.
Oh, you're, you're absolutely right. And Glenn Armenter, LSU board supervisor member from Lafayette. I thank you very much. I apologize, sir. I also want to acknowledge we had board members who, all board members paid very close attention to our work. We had several board members attend our meetings in person. Wayne Brown attended some meetings in person. We had Randy Morris, Colas Temple, and Lee Mallett attended our interviews. So we really think it was a very good and, and fair process. I need to give a special thanks to Nicole Griffith, who really performed the administrative functions of the committee in a tremendous way, and we want to thank you. She really kept things to our LSU standard of excellence. And of course, our general counsel, Winston DeQueer, who, as always, kept us, kept us on the right, on the right track. And of course, our, our search firm, Parker Executive Search, who did a tremendous job, not only coordinating the search and running the search, but also in going out and, and engaging with the constituents, recruiting candidates, and we just couldn't be more proud of the efforts they have, they have given us. There is one observation that I want to share for future consideration, perhaps by Chairman Dampf or, or Chair-elect Starnes. We do not have a standing policy on how to conduct searches, it seems, and I'm very proud of the way this search was conducted. It was very transparent. It was very open, and that is because our chairman insisted on, on such a process, and you, you really insisted on and crafted a search process that, that we could all be proud of, and it may be time to look into whether or not we formalize the way we're doing things to comply with, with, with the law. Several universities have search levels to outline how a search should be done, and that's something we ought to, just food for thought. Having said that, though, I am very proud of the transparent way the search was conducted. We held 10 public meetings to discuss this position. I reported to this board at least four times on the progress of the committee. All committee meetings were broadcast online, and the videos can still be found online for anyone who wants to go back and see what we did. Each candidate visited both Shreveport and Baton Rouge, and all of their presentations were broadcast. It was very, it was a very unique situation, but also very good for our community. Each of the candidates were interviewed at length, online, for the world to see. This has been a very transparent process, which yielded three extraordinary candidates. That now brings us to the final step of this process, and that would be the interviews. We will have three candidates today giving comments and answering questions. Each candidate is allocated a certain amount of time. Though if one candidate finishes early, we will move on to the next candidate. At the end of this process, once we have interviewed all three candidates, our board will then vote on the next president of the LSU system. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve, and with that, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Williams, I will say it again later today, but I thank you for your incredible efforts, the energy, integrity, the transparency that you, Dr. Gonzalez, and the rest of your committee did. You all worked extremely hard and did an absolutely wonderful job. We are deeply in your debt. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Today, our first interview will be with Dr. Jim Henderson. While Dr. Henderson makes his way to the table, I will let everyone know that Dr. Henderson will make an opening statement, and then we'll move to questions and answers, and we'll proceed in that way with all the candidates. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you very much for your time this morning. I have, I want to thank you and Committee Chair Williams for engaging me and Tanya in this process. We've thoroughly enjoyed getting to know many of you that we didn't know before, and so many members of the LSU community, the distinguished faculty and staff, the astonishingly impressive students at LSU. We had conversations, and by the way, I'm very bullish on the future of, because of students like this. I also want to thank the board of supervisors and the presidents of the University of Louisiana System, where I currently work, for their patience, their, their understanding throughout this process, and their unwavering support. I also would like to introduce to many of you who have never met her, my wife of 28 years. Tanya and I have walked through traditional markets in Guangzhou and Hong Kong. We've walked through the hills of Saint Paul de Val. We've walked through the Glendalug Valley. We've even wandered into inner-city Havana. We've always made our way home, where we've raised our families and created our home in Louisiana. Tanya is a first-generation college graduate from Gideon, Louisiana. She is a remarkably successful small-business owner, and she is a loving grandmother of three. Tanya, would you stand up? Mr. Chairman, throughout this process, I've come to the table and answered questions without a piece of paper or a note before me. That's just the way that I do things, except for today, and I did bring a piece of paper. And this piece of paper is from you. It's actually the list of presidential qualifications and attributes that came from this body. And when I first saw this, I was, I was stunned at the perfect alignments with the attributes that I've demonstrated and the qualifications I have earned in 16 years of executive-level higher education experience in Louisiana, including 15 years at the chief executive level. Seven of those leading complex multi-institution systems of higher education have led these institutions through innumerable traumatic events and natural disasters, through a protracted disinvestment in higher education that the nation had never seen before, through social unrest, and even a year of a global pandemic. Throughout those challenges, we have exceeded all reasonable expectations in terms of growth and advancement. I have surrounded myself with diverse teams of engaged professionals, and I'm forever in their debt for their work in helping me come to this table, and it is an honor for
And it is an honor for me to even be included in the finalists for president of this august I empathize with you to an extent, because I have chaired four university presidential selection committees myself. It's hard work. But this one is distinct, because the foreseeable future of the state of Louisiana depends in large part on the next decade of LSU. I humbly submit to you that I am the candidate that can help realize the potential of this university and dramatically improve the quality of life of the state of Louisiana. And, sir, I would be happy to answer any of your questions, and thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Questions from the board? Mr. Armentor?
Dr. Henderson, would you set out the three most significant characteristics that you think separate you from the other candidates in this endeavor, and why they separate you?
Thank you, Mr. Armentor. I appreciate that question. You know, first and foremost is the leadership experience. And I mentioned some of that in my opening statement. I have been the chief executive of universities. I've been the chief executive of multi-university systems. I mentioned in my first interview the words of Admiral McRaven, who had led U.S. Navy Special Forces, the Navy SEALs, that took out Osama bin Laden. When he retired from the Navy, he became the president of University of Texas at Austin. And when he retired after three years, he said being a university president is the most difficult job in the nation. There is, as a student and a researcher on leadership and cultures, there is nothing that compares to the leadership of an academic institution, because you have so many different constituent groups. You have faculty. You have staff. You have alumni. You have a board like yours, which is very similar to the 16-person board that I've served for the last four and a half years as their CEO. And then you have a community at large, and you have a legislature. And balancing constituencies that have different goals and ideas and aspirations for your institution, many of which conflict with each other, is an extraordinarily difficult challenge. But it's one that I have faced at the CEO level for more than a decade. I think that leadership experience is the first. The second is the nature of my academic experience. I mentioned my research area. It's in organizational culture and top management teams. If you look at the top management team that I have surrounded myself with at the University of Louisiana System, I have a five-member executive team. Four of them are women. Three of them are African-American. All of them as individuals are extraordinary talents. Collectively, they're the most engaged, high-performing team that I have ever developed. That's extraordinarily important when you're working with these complex organizations. And I believe the academic research that I have done and the theoretical work that I've done and the reading I have done, both formal and informal, in a career of leadership, makes a remarkable difference in leading this complex system of institutions. This state is the home of some wonderful people. This process has helped me remember just how many of them I have connected with during my career. The support from every corner of the state, from Oil City to Chalmette, and from Tallulah to Cameron Parish. The support from every seat in the state legislature. Support from people of every demographic, every background, and every city reminds me of why I do this business. Behind me over there in the back is a guy named Jimmy Sawtell, or I should call him, as of yesterday, Dr. James R. Sawtell, who graduated from the EDD program in Northwestern State yesterday that I created and that I teach in. He was one of the first four graduates. Jimmy was my partner in 2006, when we were handed a challenge that had seen four CEOs in six years come into part. The CEO was dismissed. Her 42-person staff was dismissed, and James R. Sawtell and I took over, replacing all of that. And we transformed an organization into a juggernaut. We made a case for community and technical colleges and workforce development across the state of Louisiana, because we realized this is important. Because if Louisiana is going to succeed, we have to understand that the foundation of workforce development and economic development and community development is human development. And human development work in Louisiana is the calling of a lifetime. Those would be the three.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next question, please.
Go ahead. Let her go. Ladies first.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Warren. Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Henderson.
Good morning, ma'am.
The missions of LSU's Ag Center, Pennington Biomedical, and our two Health Science Centers, as well as the flagship A&amp;M campus, include research. What is your vision for research across the LSU system?
Thank you very much for that question. When I started the work at the UL System, we created a strategic framework that is based in three key areas. One is on academic success of students. One is on stewardship of our resources. But the second one was on driving innovation and growth through research and economic development. We have seen our research portfolio expand dramatically over the last four years. In fact, at UL Lafayette, we now have exceeded $144 million in NSF-funded research. In fact, if you had the Pfizer vaccine this year, you can rest assured that its imprimatur came under the guidance of UL Lafayette faculty at our new Iberia Research Center. Research is vital important for us to understand, one, the sciences, the life of humans, the life sciences, the social sciences, to help us understand more about the world we live in. But more importantly, they help us advance the quality of life. And there is no more powerful research engine in the state of Louisiana than the component units of LSU. You know, we're still an ag-centric economy. And when we look at the advances in technology and how they're impacting every sector of the economy and every sector of life, it's certainly occurring in agriculture. I went to Brett Allen's sugarcane patch, if you can call it a patch, it's about 1,800 acres, and I watched laser leveling on his fields that creates a great advantage in giving you more usable space and production per acre. That's done through technology, which is a product of research. The research that's done at our Ag Centers is absolutely essential to the future of Louisiana from an economic standpoint. But you know, with the first Senate Select Committee on Women and Children that was held this year, the first presentation had nothing to do with the issues that have garnered the headlines in the newspaper. It was a presentation on research being done at Pennington on obesity, and especially maternal and neonatal obesity. And I was stunned listening to the way that researchers who are at an intellectual level and at a level of expertise that exceeds most of us in this room, I dare say, articulate their passion, but their learning about consequential issues that affect every single one of us. The research mission for LSU is one that I would be thrilled and privileged to champion and grow our research portfolio to the levels that exceed those of what I think should be our peer institutions, other flagship institutions. I'm not talking about institutions in Louisiana. I'm talking about institutions directly to our west and directly to our east. They should look to LSU as their aspirational peer. You have a number of extraordinary faculty that are engaged in that research. You don't have nearly enough. It requires resources to bring more to the table. I would be honored with the chance to advocate for those resources and to carry the message of LSU research to the populace. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mallett, yes, sir.
Dr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Good to see you here this morning. Thank you for coming.
It's a privilege.
I'm going to ask you several questions, because I don't know how many times I'll get to ask you, so if you can try to remember what I'm getting to asking, if you could address them all, I'd be appreciative.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that comes up in the conversations, which you need to address, is the academics. Some feel because you do not have a PhD, you're not qualified. I'd like for you to address that. Wait, let me finish, because I might not get a chance to come back up here. One of the other things they talk about is research, that you're not as versed in that as some. I'd like for you to address why we should pick you based on your research experience. The other thing I think you need to, or I'd like for you to talk about, is 16% of our revenue comes from the legislature. You understand the politics, and as someone who's been here for many, many years, explain why you bring that to the table, why is that such an important part of it? And last but not least, day one, what's this place going to look like when you become president? What is the structure that you're going to create? I should have started by telling you, eight years ago, I'm the only one on this board who's gone into two searches. I made a terrible mistake eight years ago because I didn't dwell into conversation. This time, I'm not going to do that, and that's why I'm asking you so many questions. So if you could address that, I'd be very appreciative.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mallett, I appreciate those conversations. Yes, I do not have a PhD. I have a doctor in management. But my work as a doctor in pursuit of that degree was a research-based dissertation, case study of leadership models at institutions that we know and love. I'm very proud of my doctorate. I am what is called a scholarly practitioner of my work in the theory of management. And the results that I've been able to produce are a direct application of that scholarly work. Second, you're correct. I have not done a great deal of research, especially in the last 10 years, as I've been leading organizations through a cataclysmic disinvestment in their work and helping them grow and helping them thrive and helping them reach innovations like the Boja Parish Community College Open Campus, which is now accessed in 194 countries and territories around the world, like the groundbreaking compete Louisiana program that is focused on meeting the needs of 653,000 adults in Louisiana that have some college and no degree. I could have taken the time to research and write about those things, but I thought it was more important to implement them. Third, you asked about the legislature. I have testified at committee in the last 10 years well over 100 times. This may sway your opinion of me, and I apologize if it does, and I will regret it, but my most comfortable place in the world is sitting at a committee table and answering questions and providing advocacy for the work of faculty and staff and the lives of the students that we serve. I thrive on that. And we've achieved some remarkable successes there. When I was handed the 42 campuses of technical colleges in Louisiana, I went to Winfield, Louisiana, to the Huey P. Long Campus. It was aptly named because I think the last governor that had been there was Huey P. Long. When I walked around that building, inside that building, there were roles of visqueen in every office and in every classroom. And I said, what is with all the visqueen? They said, well, when it starts to rain, we come on the intercom and we say code blue, and everyone runs to their assigned role of visqueen, and they cover up the computer equipment and the lab equipment and as much of the reading materials as they can. I left with a pit in my stomach. A year later, as the legislative session began, we passed what became Act 391, which was the first of two bills, each resulting in a $250 million capital improvement, the largest capital improvement in educational facilities in the state in recorded history. That came because of our willingness to engage legislators in our process, to showcase them the impact of our work, and to get them to invest in that work. Louisiana Community Technical College System, now headed by one of my closest friends, Monty Sullivan, is one of the most politically influential higher ed entities in the country. I was very proud to be a part of building that apparatus from its earliest days. And your last question dealt with the structure here. So many times, we can get fixated on structure, and structure is an important part of the equation. But it's really about the leadership apparatus that you put in place and the leadership culture that you put in place. I will tell you that the performance of organizations is directly attributable to the characteristics of the top management team. You've got some extraordinary leaders on this campus. I was delighted to get to meet them and have conversations with them. But ensuring that those extraordinary leaders actually become a functioning team is the largest challenge that you have. And when I say a functioning team, I mean a team that has clarity on their purpose, that understands that their work and their success is inextricably tied to every other member of that team. And the collective outcomes for the enterprise are the sole judge of our individual performance. We will probably have to address some structural issues, but day one, the work begins on the leadership culture, because that's what's going to carry the day for LSU. Mr. Mallett, did you have anything further?
He can go and go. I'll think about it.
Mr. Temple?
I too would like to commend you and congratulate you for being a homegrown journalistic product. You have a lot of talent.
Thank you, sir.
You've got a lot of leadership skills. You could have been a preacher, or you could be the governor, in my opinion, just based on what I'm hearing and how I observe you communicate. And I have maybe a relatively sensitive question. I know through all of your educational experiences, you understand the concept of the Peter Principle.
Yes, sir.
I know you understand that. You know, you can take a great high school coach, winning a bunch of state championships in football. You can make him the athletic director, and he may get crossed up with some of the other coaches, and he may not be able to be as effective as athletic director as he was as the head coach. You understand?
Yes, sir.
How that works? My question is, with all of your talents and all the things that you've managed, 91,000 students to some extent, nine campuses, that are far different and probably have a different set of roles than Louisiana State University does, it would be really challenging, in my opinion, to lose you in the common vernacular of managing all of these fine institutions across this great state. So if we lose you at those universities and put you at the main spot with so-called a flagship, what happens, in your opinion, to those universities? And secondly, what will be your attitude if you just so happen to not be selected to run this place? What will be your attitude towards this university and its apparatus?
Mr. Temple, thank you for the question, and I have to tell you, it has been a distinct honor to get to know you and your son over the years, and I appreciate your friendship. I don't believe that to be a sensitive question at all. I think it's actually a very pertinent question. And it's interesting, in 1948, after my dad graduated from Louisiana Tech, he was hired to replace Roy Wilson as the head football coach at Fair Park High School in Shreveport. Roy was a championship-winning high school football coach who had been hired to come coach at LSU. He got into the college environment and quickly determined after about a week and a half that that was not for him. And he returned to Fair Park High School. So my dad became a basketball coach, won a number of state championships, but it was an adjustment. That's an example of what you're talking about, I think.
Correct.
Right. And so I will tell you that my approach to leadership is really, it's meaningless about what the organization does. And I can show you this in research, that the approach to leadership is one about being purposeful about the mission of your institution or your organization, regardless of what it is, being a clear, compelling advocate of that and building the team that is totally focused on its success. You don't have to be the expert in every aspect of your operation. You could imagine being the CEO of General Electric Corporation, where you have everything from media to electronics to aerospace. Nobody has that vast level of expertise. But what they do is they put a team in place that does have that expertise, and they provide a model of leadership that maximizes the performance of that team. That's what I bring to the table, and a track record of doing that from everything, from the hospitality industry to technical colleges, to community colleges, to an individual university, to now a system that includes three phenomenal research universities, five regional universities, and an iconic, historically black university that is experiencing a renaissance under a leader named Rick Gallo. Over these last four and a half years, we came to a loose confederation of institutions, and we set about creating this notion of system. And it's a very difficult thing to do, especially there, because not all of the institutions carry the same name. You see, everything here begins with the same three letters, L-S-U. In my system, they start with Louisiana Tech. In my system, they start with Louisiana Tech and Grambling and Nichols and ULM and McNeese and UNO and Southeastern and the University of Louisiana at Lafayette, and of course, Northwestern State. When you have a loose confederation of independent institutions that have their own specific needs and their own specific identities and their own specific culture and heritage and their own student body, bringing them together and showing them the power of system is a very difficult proposition. But when I saw eight university presidents advocate for the ninth university president who had a pharmacy program at ULM and said that it is a strategic imperative of the state of Louisiana that we fully support the only pharmacy program in the nation, even though it didn't provide anything directly to their institutions, I said, we've achieved systemness. And that culture of systemness is now in place and creates the perfect foundation for a leader to come in and continue to advance the work. I'm very proud that every time I have left an organization, I left it not only better than I found it, but it got better after I left, because we put in place the systems and the culture that led to continued advance. I have no doubt that the UL system would continue to thrive. And listen, they have an engaged board, and we did immense work with the board from the very first days, talking about fiduciary leadership, fiduciary governance, that most boards, they get that, because it's easy, it's tangible, it's something right in our face. And we started talking about strategic governance, which is a little bit harder, because you're starting to predict the future. Then we moved into the mode that's really hard to get to for boards, and it's generative governance, where you're not talking about where we can go or where we are going to go. You talk about where is it possible to even imagine we can go. That board is so heavily engaged, it's so high performing, the culture we have put in place, the UL system will be quite fine, and I would look forward, as president of LSU, with increasing the partnerships with that system, just like the one that exists between Louisiana Tech and LSU Shreveport and LSU Health Science Center Shreveport that's studying brain injuries, where they can take the data science that is being led by Louisiana Tech and the neuroscience that's occurring at LSU Shreveport and the healthcare expertise of LSU Health Science Center Shreveport and create a single center that crosses institutions, crosses systems to do extraordinarily meaningful work.
All right. Thank you so very much. Questions, please. Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Henderson.
Good morning, sir.
I have a few just sort of technical questions. The first one is your doctorate of management.
Yes.
Is that, I looked it up a little bit, is it in community college policy and administration?
Yes. That is the title of the program. That's correct.
Director of Management in Community College Policy and Administration.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, right now, you are enrolled part-time in Southern Law School. Is that right?
That's correct.
Can you talk with the board about how you're going to balance being in law school part-time with all the responsibilities of being president of LSU?
Yes, sir. I will tell you that my pursuit of law school is solely to satiate my desire to continue learning. It is not a practice that I intend to pursue, and the reason that I am pursuing it is because I hired a person named Ashley Mitchell Carter. Memorial Day two years ago, I got a phone call. Ashley was getting ready to come back to our office the next week and do a gender reveal, because she was pregnant. I got a phone call that Memorial Day that Ashley had passed away. Now, Ashley had been a product of Southern University Law Center. She had introduced me to Chancellor Pierre, and together, they were constantly on me. You need to go to law school. You need to go to law school. You need to go to law school. I said, I have zero time to go to law school, and it was kind of just a back and forth. After Ashley passed, her mother, Gail Mitchell, said, you know, it was Ashley's wish that you go to law school. I'm pursuing it solely as a passion. If I would, if, you know, by the way, Governor Foster was governor of the state and pursued a law degree, but it would not be a distraction in the least from this work. I will tell you that I did take the LSAT and scored in the 98th percentile without preparation and with about two weeks' notice that I was going to be able to take the test. So just want to brag it a little bit, if I could, about that. And also, on my doctorate.
I think I took mine in the morning before a football game here at LSU. I was not as prepared.
No, I understand.
As you were.
But I will tell you, back on the original question on the discipline, see, you know, my undergraduate degree is in journalism, and my master's degree is in human performance, which was the euphemism at the time for organizational behavior. My doctorate of management in community college policy and administration does not make you limit what you do with that. It's just like we have university presidents that have law degrees, we have university presidents that have degrees in physics, that have degrees in English, right? The discipline of your degree is not the relevant part, because you have very few that have a PhD in flagship university. That's the distinction. The discipline is not the relevant piece. The quality of the degree is, and again, I stand for the quality of my degree.
Sure, and I just wanted to know, make sure it was in community college. And back to my original question, though, you intend to keep going in law school while you're president of the LSU system, and you are advising us that you don't think your being in law school, and I'm sure your law professors don't want to hear this, but your being in law school is not going to interfere or conflict or take you away from being president of the LSU system.
I will tell you that I had not considered that question yet. If it would be the slightest distraction, I would suspend my pursuit of a law degree, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Brown.
Dr. Henderson, I know you personally, so you know, my background as being in business in Louisiana for 50 years, graduated LSU in engineering, so I, and I happen to be Finance Committee Chairman on Ford, so the finances of this LSU system are dear to me, and I know I share that with the board, and we have been underfunded for years now, haven't been able to give faculty adequate raises, haven't been able to bring new programs in that we need. So in this presidential responsibilities, I'm not on search committee, but I've read this document, which you referred to. It is numerous mentions and listing of chief executive in several places. It talks about fiscal matters for LSU, that this, our new president would need to be able to handle our fiscal matters. And LSU is really, from the system, certainly our academics, our research, our, you know, our students are lifeblood, but as a system, we have to be run as a business, and we need to be able to have the revenue to come in so that our leader may not be the best academic person in a certain field, but if we can get the revenues in, then we can get the top people in those fields that will in turn filter down to our students' education. So how do you feel like you're best prepared to handle the fiscal business matters of our university so we can grow our financial resources?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Brown. It is a, you know what, when I started in higher ed leadership in Louisiana, it was two months before Hurricane Katrina, which created a tremendous challenge for us. But immediately after Katrina, we enjoyed the reconstruction economy, and we saw the highest state investment in higher education possibly ever. We rose all the way up to the stellar heights of Number 12 in the 16 Southern Region Education Board states, which was our highest piece. Since then, we have amongst the lowest resources per student in the country. So my entire career has been leading institutions in periods of scarcity, where you have unlimited demands on very limited resources. The first thing you have to do is establish what your priorities are in your organization, right? And that's what you have to fund first and foremost. You have to decide, what do these priorities for us to adequately meet? What are the resource requirements for that? And then you create your resource model around that. I mentioned that the pharmacy program at ULM, it's absolutely essential that they have a pharmacy program there. It's the only public pharmacy program we have. But we calculate cost in institutions based on a cost per credit hour by discipline. And if you think about a freshman-level undergraduate liberal arts course, and you assign that a factor of one, and then you look at every other type of course you have in various disciplines, and you put a relative factor on them, that's how you determine the cost of the academic functions of an institution. So at ULM, the pharmacy program contributes 6% of the total student credit hour production at that institution, but 47% of the calculated academic cost at that institution. It's hard to even wrap your mind around that. But it was the analysis of that and the presentation of that that led to the appropriation for that. See, once you know that you have non-negotiable principles or priorities, then that's when you build the case for the resource model. It also means that you have to get very innovative in generating revenues, and we've done that as we've shifted from approximately a 30% reliance on student-provided resources and a 70% reliance on state resources to almost exactly the opposite. We have become self-sufficient enterprises. The UL system, we get about $215 million in a direct state appropriation for our institutions that goes directly to them. $151 million of that goes to retire unfunded accrued liabilities, and I'm talking about the legacy part, not the normal cost of retirement, but the legacy unfunded accrued liabilities and post-employment benefits. So you start with $215 million from the state, and then you give $151 million back for state liabilities. When you look at our almost $900 million operating budget, that tells you, everything else we do is self-generated. Now, here's the problem with that issue, is that those two liabilities that I mentioned are state liabilities. If you closed every one of these institutions, those liabilities don't go away. The state has to continue to fund that. That should give you some illustration of just how, of the dearth of state support for our institutions. And I want you to think about this. In Alabama, they spend $130 more per capita, per citizen of state of Alabama, in state support of higher education. In Mississippi and Arkansas, it's about $85 more per capita, not per student, per citizen of that state. In Texas, it's $35 more per capita. And Florida, who we've always been a little bit ahead of Florida, Florida has now surpassed this in state funding per capita. Oh, and guess what? Florida does not spend a dime on unfunded accrued liabilities at their institutions, because they recognize that that's a state liability, right? So you have to have an in-depth understanding of the financial operations around your system and your institutions, and then you have to be able to articulate a case for the state investment, knowing that the state cannot be the savior. It is not a panacea. You have to be very innovative in pursuing public-private partnerships. You have to be very aggressive in the philanthropic circles, and then you have to pursue every other source of revenue that you can, because we cannot keep funding Louisiana State budget on the backs of students, and that's what we've done for the last 10 years.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
I think that's an excellent.
Questions.
I think that's an excellent segue, since we talked about students for my question. So I've gotten the pleasure to know Olivia Bailey, who is the, for the supervisors that don't know, she's the ULM Student Body President and the student member on the UL Board of Supervisors. We've gotten the pleasure to know each other recently, and she speaks very highly of you, Dr. Henderson. And so my question was and is, obviously, right now in your position, you only have one student that you report to, and while you still be reporting to a student member on this Board of Supervisors, if you get this position, you'll also be the chancellor of the main campus, and then you'll also be interacting with other systems students as well. So how do you interact with your system students now, and then how do you plan on interacting with the main campus students if you were to get the position?
Listen, that's one of the, that is one of my own personal reasons for pursuing this, is to get more directly re-engaged with students. After Monday's interview with the student leaders, my energy level was through the roof, because there's just significant intrinsic value that comes from that. And Olivia Bailey, I'm glad that she said great things about me, because I would just, I could extol her virtues ad nauseam. She is an extraordinary student leader and representative of what we are. I love to work with students. I think that a large part of that is presence. There needs to be formal channels to work with student governments, and we have those in our system. We have a council of student body presidents. We bring students to the table as often as possible. We showcase students. And having those formal interactions with students on a scheduled basis is very important, but nothing can compare to presence. Those ad hoc, those circumstantial engagements with students that allow you to learn more about your organization than you possibly could through formal processes, those conversations that are serendipitous, that help you really get the pulse of what's going on with students, and then finding ways to engage students. You know, Tanya, I mentioned she's from Gaedon, and if you didn't know this, everybody from Gaedon learns how to cook a gumbo before they can walk. And when she and I, I have 140-quart crawfish pot. When she and I cooked a shrimp gumbo for the 325 members of the Spirit of Northwestern marching band, and I stood at the front door of the house, giving these kids, these students, these student leaders, some of them their first taste of an authentic Cajun gumbo, I didn't sleep, because I was just smiling and laughing and watched, you know, they would come back for seconds. And 140 quarts of gumbo is a big pot, in case you didn't know. When we boiled crawfish for the 115 international students and watched Nepalese and Japanese and Eastern European students get their first taste of crawfish, that was fun, right? It's exciting to watch that. But what was really important was the conversations then that led to us, as we engaged those students, about their experience on our university campus. I say this quite often, the current population of traditional students is remarkably more thoughtful, more mature, more forward-focused, more community-oriented than we were when I was in school, without question. It makes me bullish about the future, but that future can only become reality if we engage those students actively throughout their journey through our institutions and prepare them for life and career success. There's absolutely nothing that's more important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Next question, Mr. Mallon.
Dr. Henderson, we're in a horse race here, and I am neutral, and I'm trying to get to the bottom of this, and I'm going to interview all three people and listen very well. You need to get me over this PhD thing. It's the big issue that they bring up when they bring your name, and you addressed it a little bit a while ago, but I can tell you that it's very important that you, why you have a, was it a?
A doctorate of management.
Doctor of management. You've got to tell me why everybody thinks that's not as good as a PhD, and why you're still qualified, and why do they think that? Because, you know, I'm struggling with that, because that's the one issue that seems to be, needs to be defined more by you.
Oh, sure.
And the other thing is academics, you know, when we talk about this, because we talk and we're trying to pick the best president, is they say, you know, you've got great experience around the company, there's no question about that, great political savvy, no question about that. All the positive things I can sit here and keep talking about, but the one thing I keep talking, they keep going back to academics. So as a horse in the race, I assure you, it's very important that you cross this hurdle very, very well, if you can.
I will try. That is the degree that I possess. It's a degree that makes me an extraordinarily effective leader. It's a degree that makes me an extraordinarily effective leader. If you were hiring me to lead research at LIGO, you would want someone with a different degree. But you're not hiring the researcher at LIGO because you already have the best in the world leading that work. You're hiring someone to elevate this organization to its highest levels. Now, I have been very successful in engaging faculty at all levels and from all disciplines, whether it's the Nobel caliber researcher that runs the Accelerator Center at the University of Louisiana-Lafayette, whether it is the learned professors of the Louisiana Scholars College at Northwestern State, whether it's the researchers that exist at any one of our campuses, the data, the gentleman has a PhD in data at Louisiana Tech that provided the COVID-19 data to the Air Force Global Strike Command that informed their work on 69 bases around the world. He got access to that because of the relationships that we have built, and that's the role of the president. I will tell you that the faculty that I've worked with, I have had no challenges whatsoever in earning their respect for my ability to engage in the conversation and the leadership of their work. If that is a disqualifier for this body, I accept that, but I don't apologize for it. And the qualifications that you put forth on your paper said an earned terminal degree, and that's what I have that makes me an effective scholarly practitioner of the art of management.
Thank you, sir. Further questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Temple, yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mr. Temple.
So you, clearly you're a great communicator, a great communicator, and that's understandable because you probably did very well in the journalism lane. You did well, probably. And you enjoy learning, studying, learning. You have this thirst. You probably are a voracious reader.
Yes, sir.
So now, attorneys have a difficult time following folk who are not attorneys in terms of their plight to solve legal issues. They have a difficult time with people who have experience, a lot of experience. It doesn't match up with the legal profession in terms of motivating, managing, getting them to listen. Academic folk from a standpoint of PhDs in all of the different academic disciplines at a university, they have a difficult time giving absolute full respect to this board that's sitting around managing this university because they don't feel that we know what the hell we're doing in certain instances and can't match it up with what their needs are and where they're trying to lead things from an academic perspective. So it's difficult for a person to have a management degree and really garner the respect that allows for people to be motivated in their lanes as they perform this academic work as doctor, chancellor, so-and-so. So you're good enough, in your opinion, to manage and guide this entity. That's what you're saying. And before you answer that, I need to know your response as it relates to how you're going to feel if you don't get this job about LSU.
Oh, that's right. Because you asked me that earlier.
I asked you that earlier.
I would address that. Let me start with this in this way. Today, you're interviewing three qualified candidates for this position. If we weren't qualified, we wouldn't be here.
Okay.
And all, I'll be honest, I have not watched any of the other interviews, but I have read the credentials and the experiences of the other candidates. And this committee did a great job bringing good candidates here. You're not going to hire an unqualified president from LSU regardless of the three, of which one you hire. You have to discern what are the characteristics that are most aligned with the immediate needs here. And certainly, the types of degrees that we have is a very objective point of consideration for you.
Correct.
I will tell you that my experience and my track record has shown that it has not been an obstacle for me working in academic circles in the least.
All right.
And that I think that my ability to consume large amounts of information, to process even very technical documents that are far outside of my discipline are one of the reasons why it has not been a problem for me, but it is certainly a point of consideration for you. How I will feel about LSU? LSU is the university for the state of Louisiana. People may have a spectrum of opinions about LSU that evolve over time, or they change over time, but you can't love the state of Louisiana if you don't love LSU. And I will tell you this, regardless of what it means for my own destiny today, regardless of who you pick, if it's not me, it is incumbent upon me, as one, as a citizen of state of Louisiana, but also as a fellow leader in higher education in Louisiana, to ensure that that person is successful because nobody in higher education in Louisiana can really reach its full potential if LSU doesn't reach its full potential.
That's right.
So I would, the disappointment would be real. You can't help personal disappointment when you pour your energy into pursuit of something like this. You can't help that, but that's short-lived and it's self-focused.
That's right.
I'm anything but a self-focused individual.
Question.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Henderson, first, thank you for the work you've done for our state. As I travel and speak with business associates around the state, as well as elected officials, I can't find a person to say a negative thing about you, and that's a testament for somebody who's been in this industry as long as you have. So thank you for offering yourself to LSU. My question deals with the UL system. Currently, there aren't any female chancellors in the system. At a time where we are as a country, where diversity and inclusion is so important, can you speak to what the work you've done as it relates to female executive-level staffing as well as minorities?
Yes, sir. The diversity of our university presidents is a very big concern for me. My role as the system president is to bring a pool of qualified applicants to our board, and just as you have to do, the board has to make a determination. And that's where it gets very challenging because we all, I believe most of us in this room subscribe to the moral imperative of diversity and inclusion. And we know that we can't achieve our potential unless we have executive teams that are reflective of the communities that we serve. So what do we do about it? Well, first, you make it a priority. You make it a strategic priority. And in my first year as University of Louisiana System President, our board unanimously approved a statement, a commitment to diversity and inclusion. And then I pursued building out a plan around that. We brought in Dr. Claire Norris, who is one of the most gifted intellectuals, LSU grad, by the way, sociology, to lead our diversity and inclusion office. We established diversity and inclusion offices at all nine of our universities. We have made it a focus of our presentations to boards. We have made it a measurement, a metric in our evaluations of university presidents. We created the Management and Leadership Institute because if you can't, if you've been unsuccessful in bringing diverse candidates to the table when you recruit, then you better invest your resources in developing your own. And so we have graduated 80 participants in a very rigorous Management and Leadership Institute, half of whom have already been promoted into better jobs. We now have three African-American athletic directors at predominantly white institutions. In fact, three of the last four that we've hired, J.T. Terrell at Nichols State, Tim Duncan at UNO, Dr. Eric Woods at Louisiana Tech, who, by the way, has already been elevated to the role of vice president. That would not have happened without a systemic focus on diversity and inclusion. It's why we created the Reginald F. Lewis Educational Equity Initiative to ensure that we are targeting the needs of underserved populations in our institutions. It's why in the second week of June, we will have the first annual black male summit for our system, where we're going to purposely focus on the needs of a segment of the population Sometimes people will use as a pejorative the title "Social Justice Warrior." They'll label any work that you're trying to do to address historic equities in that way and dismiss it. I will tell you that LSU is the flagship for all Louisianans, and it should be a stated purpose that the student body at this institution is reflective of the state of Louisiana and at all of our institutions, reflective of the regions that they serve. And the faculty, the staff, and the leadership at each of these universities should be reflective of those student bodies. That's the ultimate goal. I would work with this board and with the leadership that's behind me in creating a plan and metrics to achieve that level of representation across our institutions. Qualified diversity on our campuses is essential to our success.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morrow, yes, sir.
Yes. Dr. Henderson, as you know, LSU is facing several issues presently, including Title IX. What steps would you take to address these problems, these issues, other than the steps that have already been taken by this administration to hopefully alleviate some of the Title, all of the Title IX problems?
I will tell you that we've watched the testimony, we've read the news stories that have come up associated with this. I have seen President Galligan bear the brunt of a lot of criticism from people that preceded him, and we're going to owe him a debt of gratitude that possibly could never be repaid for that. I will tell you with Title IX issues, there's a cultural aspect of this about compliance. We have an obligation at all state agencies that every employee completes an annual sexual harassment training. It's a one-hour video. You've all probably done it. When our first report came in this year, that 92% of our employees had completed that training, I was livid. Because anything less than 100% on a mandatory issue that is significant but is such an easy thing to complete, anything less than 100% is unacceptable. So you establish an expectation that in terms of compliance, nothing short of 100% is acceptable, and you hold people accountable for that. But compliance is just what you must do. To be successful, you have to engage every person within your organization to start asking the questions, what should we do, and then what could we do? You have to approach Title IX not from a risk management perspective, protective of the institution, but to a student-centered and a faculty-centered and a victim or claimant-centered perspective, to ensure that you're eradicating and you're reducing, or at a minimum, you're reducing the occurrence of sexual violence on campuses. And look, the statistics haven't changed over 30 years. 30 years ago, I read the first report that one out of four, one out of five college women experienced some level of sexual violence during their time at a college/university. It's exactly the same statistic now, despite of all the work and all the money we've put into compliance, right? It's that culture work that has to happen, and everybody has to be engaged with that. There are significant challenges at every college and university in the United States, right? One of the challenges that has occurred with LSU is the event that happens, and again, these events happen at every college and university. But what determines the ultimate outcome is the response to that event. And we would put a great deal of effort in ensuring that the response to that event leads to the best possible outcome for the student. That would be my approach.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I piggyback his question? How long have you, how long have you been president of the system?
Four and a half years.
How many complaints have you all had in the system?
We've had a number of complaints, and this is an interesting area to go into. For Title IX complaints come up, the institution that, in our system, that has the largest number of complaints over the last two years happens to be the institution that has the largest number of confidential advisors for Title IX. You see, the reported incidents of sexual trauma, or sexual violence, or power-based violence are the tip of the iceberg to what actually is occurring. And so the institutions have to expand access points to really get a handle on the level of occurrences at their institutions. I will tell you that we have had instances that have risen to my office. We took demonstrative substantive action.
Such as?
Termination, immediate suspension, 30 days later termination, very high profile. I would not like to go further in the detail. And then began the restorative work with those who have been victimized. We are enterprises of human beings, flawed human beings. We do the best we can to employ the best we possibly can, people of great character, and sometimes they prove us wrong. And when they prove us wrong, then we have to act.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Temple.
This is probably going to be a strange question, and this is leading to a real important issue for the body of people who are sitting in this place. Okay. You mentioned something about taking on an initiative as it relates to black men.
Yes, sir.
And what is, address, enlighten us on that?
Yes, sir. So two of the graduates from our Management and Leadership Institute, Gabe Willis from Southeastern and Kedrick Nicholas from Agnes, are both black men. And they called me and said, listen, we have an annual systemic conference, right? It's a system conference. All nine universities come together, faculty and staff in these universities do presentations. They said, we would like, in association with the conference, to have a summit that targets the needs and the issues surrounding the blackmail experience on our campuses. I said, I think it's an outstanding idea. Let's bring Claire, who I mentioned, to the table, and let's have a conversation about this. And as we started talking about it, we realized it was an issue of such significant import, it didn't belong as a pre-conference issue. And Claire took over with these two gentlemen, and they created, I believe it's a 46-person council now, representation from all nine of our universities. person council now, representation from all nine of our universities, that divided the program up into four different components, to create a world-class educational experience that is not a summit and is defined by the moments of the day, but lead to actionable results, actionable plans as a result of the conference.
You know why you're doing that? You know why that's necessary?
I believe I do.
Why?
Because when we start talking about advancing Louisiana and advancing populations, the population of Louisiana, we talk about it in the aggregate. And when you look at our outcomes on the aggregate, they're pretty dismal. But when you go into sub-populations and you look at numbers, objective numbers, you see the results of a history that denied access, that systemically did not offer opportunity to all of our population.
Let me give it to you in simple terms. And so, as you move forward in whatever endeavor you move forward in, I want you to remember There are more black men in Angola than there are in all of our nine institutions that you manage and LSU combined. It's a travesty. It's our job as leaders in higher education to encourage people to move in an area so they can be assets to everybody and not liabilities to anybody. So it's your charge. So if you get this job, that's an important direction to go in. If you stay where you are, that's an important direction to go in. We need all of our assets to pool together to make this deal work, called Louisiana. And we have wasted too many resources and neglected too many resources. And so I just want you to carry that with you as you move forward in your professional endeavors.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Temple. Questions? Any further questions? Go ahead, Mr. Armentor. Yes, sir.
Dr. Henderson, I have a question, following up on Pat Morrow's question about Title IX. Mine is much more specific. You have a facility and an effectiveness with the legislature that I have not seen with many officials and leaders. What would you do to cure or improve LSU's relationship with the legislature on Title IX issues? And I'd like you to name names and committees and lobbying strategy, and specifically tell us what your plan would be. I know that's unfair, but that's what we need, and that's what you're presenting. I'd also like to hear why you could do it better than the other people that are running for president of LSU right now. And I'd like the same set of answers with reference to how you can improve budgetary issues with the legislature. As you know, we've had budget problems with the legislature since the beginning of the general administration. I'd like to know what you would do to get us the kind of budget from the legislature that we actually need and can use. I'd like specific names, committees, and lobbying strategy in that regard as well. And how you could do it better than the other people running for president of LSU. So lobbying for budget and Title IX curative issues.
Mr. Armentor, we all have our strengths and our weaknesses. One of my weaknesses is comparing myself to others, and I think a lot of us would have a challenge with that. And I would not want to say anything that diminished any of the other two candidates. I will tell you that, over the last primarily fifteen years, I have worked with multiple governors, and because of term limits now, hundreds of legislators, and to develop the reputation as a voice that can be trusted, as a voice that can, as a leader that will find solutions, and that works collaboratively with legislators, regardless of party, regardless of ideology, regardless of demographics. I can walk over to the legislature today and ask to visit with Regina Barrow, who chairs the Senate Select Committee on Women and Children. And we will talk at length about issues of Title IX, but about issues of our kids and our life in the Baton Rouge area. I can go and sit down with Cleo Fields, with Clay Schechter, with Paige Cortez, with Bret I could sit here and likely name a hundred legislators that know me by face and name when I walk into that building. I'm not suggesting that either of the other two candidates cannot achieve that level of familiarity and credibility and effectiveness at the legislature. Because, in fact, I dare say they probably can. I will tell you that if the selection is made for me today, you achieve that tomorrow morning, without question. You've got a powerful story to tell around LSU, and you've got an audience there that's ready to receive it. If it's delivered in an authentic way, that engages legislators as part of the solution, rather than labeling them as the opposition and approaching solutions in an adversarial manner, that's what we've done wrong in higher education for far too long. But when you approach them and say, listen, here's the piece of the solution I need you to provide, and here are the things that I'm bringing to the table to control our own destiny, the response has been overwhelming. I think that my experience, my track record, will help us with that, again, starting tomorrow morning.
Thank you, I accept that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Armentor. Thank you, Dr. Henderson.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
I got one thing to ask.
Yes, sir.
Look, Dr. Henderson, I'll say one thing, that I went to Southern Law School, and my freshman year, I could not imagine going through anything more, I guess, on a rollercoaster ride, from the highs to the lows, and some of the best times I've ever had in my whole life, as far as the experience. So I know what that's like. So if you get this job and you put that on the side, we can, maybe one day you can go back. But I tell you what, it was interesting, and I probably am where I am today because of that. So when it comes to LSU and what we've done in the past, and some of the headaches we're experiencing right now, is from, you know, I kind of want to blame it on a few things. One, we don't have a lot of money. And there's not a lot of places to get money in the university's level. You either get it from the legislature, or the federal government, or from donations or tuition. Tuition is a hard thing to raise in Louisiana, because we're just not a real rich state. And, but to become a great university, you need the funds. Some of the best universities in the country are not poor universities. They're very expensive to attend. That's not the case at any Louisiana school, much less at LSU. So how do you balance keeping students and getting more students with the ever need for money and not wanting to raise tuition? So answer that for me, on how, what is some strategy? Because that's what we grapple with over here. I mean, we had to raise fees my first year on the board. And then the next year, they came back to us, wanted more fees. We couldn't raise them. We said, no. But we don't have the power to raise tuition. So what do we do?
So you know, during the days of the Grad Act, right, and the Granting Resources and Autonomy for Diplomas Act, that allowed institutions to increase tuition and fees based on achieving certain metrics. Now, these metrics were not exhausting, because I believe that every institution in the state achieved a hundred percent of the metrics every year. That suggests to me that perhaps the metrics weren't as challenging as they probably should have been. But as part of that, that was, the idea behind that was to give us the resources per student to elevate our organizations to the level where they should be. Problem with that is, whatever amount we were allowed to raise as a result of the Grad Act, that same amount was reduced in net state investment. The problem is, tuition and fees are a gross revenue number. You take the twenty to twenty-five percent discount factor on that, you're losing money every time you raise tuition. At the same time, we repriced a number of students out of our markets, right? Now, LSU has seen some remarkable growth in the last two years, and that's a help. But overall, we have seen students incur more debt, and that's not as big a problem for those that complete a degree. Student debt for those that don't complete the degree is just an albatross we've just draped around them, holds them down forever. We cannot continue to go back to students' tuition and fees. But I will tell you, when that's available to you, it's so easy that you stop thinking about the rest of your enterprise, because it's hard to make reductions. It's hard to shift your resource allocation. And if all I have to do, I can just get approval to raise three million dollars in fees? Man, that's so much easier. Yeah, I'm going to get a hit at first. And students, some students are going to complain, but I can manage that, right? And that's what institutions have done. But if you take that off of the table, and you say, okay, we're not coming back to students, that forces you then to get into your budget and start ripping it apart, and saying, does this budget reflect the priorities we have in the institution? So I was interviewing for the president at Northwestern State, my alma mater, and at a faculty interview, a guy named Ben Rushin got up. Now, Ben had been there a long time. He taught me math. I think he gave Tanya her only C at Northwestern. He got up and he went on an epic Level Five rant about budgeting at that university. And his first question to me is, will you rescind the raises that were just given to the athletic department on your first day? I didn't know about the raises, because raises at Northwestern in athletics don't make the headlines at Advocate like they do at LSU. He says, and I said, well, I said, you know, I said, I don't think that's really a fair question to ask at this point. That's a very transactional answer that we need to get to the bottom of it. He says, well, then at least let us see the budget. I said, the budget's a public document. Well, these budgets we use in higher education can obfuscate so many different aspects of the number. So I decided to create a task force, a Strategic Budgeting Transparency Task Force, that would be used every year in the build-out of the budget of that university. And the task force that was going to study it, I named the chair, Ben Rushin, the faculty member. Now, the CFO was on that committee, but he was a member, he was a soldier. Ben was in charge of that committee. Marcus Jones, who is now going into the interim president at NSU when Chris Maggio retires, was on that committee. We had, in the Scholars College, an economics professor who had been on the World Bank Board, an intellect, superior caliber. He was at the table. A retired colonel, who now does institutional effectiveness for the institution, he was at the table. And several others. I think it was after the third meeting that Marcus came to me and he said, Doc, this is not working. These people are yelling at each other, they're fighting, this is a disaster. I said, give it a little bit more time, have a couple more meetings. About three meetings after that, they came forward with what I think is one of the most innovative, most strategic budgeting processes that exist in higher education today, and is still in use today. So we solved that issue. And guess what? When you're strategic and transparent in the budgeting process, you can identify some resources. It means you don't have to go back to the student and say, you've got to pay us more. That would be my approach.
I like it. We got money issues, but we have money around if we can find it.
Yes, sir.
You can find it. I got to tell you, Dr. Henderson, you are one very impressive person. And you know some more impressive people around LSU? Coach O, Louisiana guy we brought in here, wins a national championship. Scott Woodward, brought home, Louisiana guy, one of the best ADs in the country. And we just brought home Kim Mulkey. So you know what? I'm for Louisiana people that can qualify for the job. And I'm proud that you're from here. And I hope we can hire you.
I appreciate that very much.
Robin. Thank you, sir.
Quick.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Quick question, and first, let me say this, I didn't say it earlier. I join everybody else in congratulating you on doing a tremendous job. Grambling State University is special to me, because my mother graduated from there, and wonderful things have happened at Grambling, because of the work Rick Gallo has done, but also because of your leadership and support. So thank you for everything you've done for Louisiana.
Thank you for that.
I have a quick question about your degree. Was that at a physical campus, or did you earn it online?
That is a degree where there is a residency each semester, so three times a year, and the rest of it is online, in synchronous and asynchronous delivery.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Further questions? Mr. Mallon. Yes, sir.
Is that the normal way for that degree? I mean, you need to address this.
Well, it's a way that we have, that we're offering degrees now.
So is there something negative to that? I mean, is there something wrong with the fact you took it on the internet? I mean, tell me.
There's a traditional predisposition that that is, that's different than a traditional residency research degree. Absolutely, that sentiment exists. I think that sentiment is going to be going away in short order. And certainly, I get it, that's my degree. And I'm very proud of that degree.
I will say, I took all of my classes online this year, so I'm right there with you.
Mr. Koch, you are not recognized for this program.
Listen, I will tell you, that those of you that haven't taken an online course, an online course that is delivered by a faculty member that is well-versed is one of the most challenging things that you will ever go through. Because it is, you can sit in the back of the room in an in-person course and kind of sink back into the shadows, but when you've got an electronic log of your participation in every conversation that comes up, you're held to account. And in many ways, there's no skating in a lot of those programs. But I do get, I do understand the question.
I think it's good that you explained that.
And I want to, if I could come back to Mr. Williams. I appreciate your recognition of Grambling, because Grambling went through, I believe, six presidents in eleven years before they got to Rick Gallo. And what Rick has done, with a law degree, by the way, is a remarkable testament to what leadership can mean for an organization. And I will tell you, as you go through this election process, I'm invested in the success of LSU, regardless of your decision. I want you, I want you all to take that to heart. This university and this university system must succeed. And I'm committed to helping you do that, formally or informally.
And I'm quite certain you didn't mean anything negative about people with a law degree.
No, sir.
And I want to address that, because I talked about these lawyers. I talked about the lawyers. And I have to, I have to admit, okay, the only thing I really know about online is how to hang clothes.
All right, we're getting a little far afield, and we have a lot of work left to do. Do we have any further questions for Dr. Henderson, please? It's been, we've been going a while, and we're going to need a recess here pretty quickly, but I don't want to rush anybody. Any further questions for Dr. Henderson? Hearing none, I'll add my personal two cents. Dr. Henderson, it's been great having you here, it's very impressive. As you- As you know, we are 16 volunteers who give literally thousands of hours to higher education. And so we salute anybody that has certainly achieved and accomplished what you have had and accomplished for higher education. So it's been a great honor to have you here regardless of how this process works out. It's been wonderful. We thank you very, very, very much.
Mr. Chairman, the honor has been mine. And I thank you for that.
We're going to take, before we do, we have, well, they may have left. We have, well, we had some representatives I was going to recognize, but we'll wait on that. We'll take a 15-minute recess. Thank you again, Dr. Henderson. As I said, I just like doing that.
Jay, nice to see you. Thank you.
I think I said, thank you. Thank you so much. All right.
Gather everybody up.
Okay. Yeah, I hear you.
No, really. I'm not going to eat that.
Okay, folks, I think we have a quorum, and we are back. I will, before we turn it over to our guests, who we're delighted to have, I want to recognize Representative John Illig, Representative Troy Romero, Representative Chuck Owen, and I'm not supposed to play favorites, but my favorite is Representative Amy Freeman, if she would stand as well. And I will tell you that Ms. Freeman grilled me for a mere four hours. So Ms. Freeman, we're going to ask you to come forward so I can grill you for four hours. And I'm going to, and I'm going to tell you, Ms. Freeman, that I have my national championship ring that I paid $435 for, and I just had a delightful 20-minute visit with Ms. Freeman. So she's now my new favorite best friend. So we're really glad to have all of you and especially my new friend, Ms. Freeman. So thank y'all for being here.
She doesn't need, she doesn't need one.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here. We appreciate it very much. Thank you, folks. Okay, where are we? We are back in order. Our next candidate is Dr. Kelvin Drogemeyer. I have a special affection for Dr. Drogemeyer because I've spent my whole life having to spell my last name, which is a bit of a challenge. My last name is a walk in the park compared to Dr. Drogemeyer. So welcome, Dr. Drogemeyer. We'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. I am absolutely delighted and honored to be here. It's such a privilege to be one of the three finalists for the presidency of this incredible institution. I want to thank you all for the work that you've done. I know it's a very challenging task. It's a lot of work that goes into this, into this sort of thing, and so I really want to thank you for that. It shows the dedication and the passion that you have for this institution. It's something that I've seen since I've been here. It's palpable. It's something that I knew existed because I've collaborated with folks here before in years past. But actually, coming to campus, visiting Shreveport, talking to folks about all the parts of the system, it's become ever more clear how incredible of an organization this is. So I want to thank you for all that, but also want to sort of step back and look at this from a broader perspective, a national perspective. When you think about the work that you're doing and the importance that it has for higher education, you are sowing your time into the future of this country, into the future lives of many, many individuals who are coming to university not only to develop their career paths, but also to become lifelong citizens of this country, lifelong engaged, civically engaged, responsible citizens. And that's extremely important. So I hope you do see that you're not just supporting LSU, you're not just supporting this great institution, but what you're doing is sowing into the lifeblood of countless individuals who are going to continue to make this country be extraordinary, and all the wonderful things that we enjoy today for tomorrow will be even better. So with that, I just want to thank you and tell you that I've been so impressed with everything that I've seen here. Mr. Chairman, as I've visited with folks, talked with various individuals on campus, there are three points that sort of stand out in my mind. I think the first one is the quality of the leadership. Your provost, who is an extraordinary leader, I've got to know her in a short time and appreciate her talents. Across the board, you have folks who are extremely capable and talented. They're extremely passionate, and they're extremely dedicated to their jobs, and it shows in everything that they do. One data point is Larry, where is Larry? Larry is somewhere here, visiting LSU S the other day. Amazing, amazing campus. It's palpable, the work that he's done, the transformation, the students, the engagement that they have. So the leadership team, as Stacy said, is really the strongest in the 30-plus years she's been here, and I certainly, that's very, very evident. The second thing I would say is that I came in with a view of this multi-sector, multi-dimensional entity called the LSU system, which really is the thing that attracts me here. First and foremost, I think, because it goes all the way from pre-K to laboratory school. You've got the two-year, you've got the four-year, LSU E, you've got LSU A, you've got all these various components. You have the Ag Center, you have the two medical campuses, you have online, you have the LSU A&amp;M flagship campus. You also have an innovation park, which I think is extraordinary. I can't wait to learn more about that, and then also LSU Online. I don't know of any other institution in the country that has that multi-dimensional framework, and that provides incredible opportunity for LSU going forward, for the state of Louisiana, for the citizens of Louisiana, to be really the national role model. No question about it. And the third thing that struck me in this visit, short though it was, was the intense honesty, the intense openness of the leadership and all the folks I talked to, the student leadership about the wonderful things happening on the campus, but some of the challenges. And I really, really, really appreciate that because unless you really understand the nature of the challenges, you're destined to stay where you're at. And so that with a strong desire to go to the next level, to think big, to think transformably, to send a strong message that LSU is looking to develop a vision, a bold vision going forward that folks have never seen before, but it truly is consummate with what LSU is and LSU will be. Telling that story, but also saying, you know, this is not the LSU of the past, this is the LSU of the future. And I look forward to having an opportunity to maybe share more about that, but to thank you all for how much you've invested in this institution and just to reflect a little bit on what I've seen since I've been here. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for the opportunity to give a few opening remarks, and I really appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it very much. We have questions for Dr. Drogemeyer.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Drogemeyer, thank you again for being here. It's been a pleasure getting to know you this week, and we appreciate your time spent here in Louisiana. My question this morning is regarding research. The missions of LSU's Ag Center, Pennington Biomedical, and our two health science centers, as well as the flagship A&amp;M campus include research, as you are aware. What is your vision for research across all of the LSU system?
As you say, research is really an important foundational component of the higher education enterprise, but especially in this system. And you look at, as you say, the medical campuses, you look at Pennington, you look at the Ag Center, you look at others, you look at undergraduate students who are performing research as well. And so it really is foundational, and not just for the sake of doing research and creative activity, which I think discovery research, basic research, whatever you want to call it, that curiosity-driven research is extremely important. But one of the things I think is extraordinary about this system is the ability not only to grow research in its own right, but to look at how one transitions that research into outcomes that benefit society in very practical ways. So when I look at the research numbers, and I haven't looked at a lot of statistics, but I know they're out there, and I've talked to the vice president for research here on the A&amp;M campus, I think there's great unmet opportunity and great potential to be seized to grow the research enterprise, not to pick some arbitrary number and say, we want to hit this target, but to look at what research is really about, why it's meaningful, and understand, I think, why we're punching below our weight here at LSU. And look at what strategic areas could be invested in, especially things like the coast and the environment, the Mississippi area. But I do not discount arts, humanities, fine arts. They're part of the scholarly enterprise. So when I look at research, and that's what I've spent my whole career doing as a vice president for research at the University of Oklahoma, we were able to identify areas of growth and strength and invest in those strategically, but that rising tide truly did lift all boats of the university. So this is something I think that here at LSU is really a great opportunity to do more and to identify strengths that LSU uniquely has. And in fact, I just have to say that in the strategic plan, I see a lot of really good things, but frankly, a lot of what is in there could have been written by any university. What I want to do is to craft a strategic vision for the future of LSU, and I'm talking about the system as well as the flagship campus, that is bold and transformative and uniquely LSU. When people look at that, they say, oh, that's not KU, that's not Florida State, that's not Penn State. I see that as distinctly LSU. We have to look at what our strengths are, invest in those strengths, and focus, and then, of course, look at how we transition those research outcomes into benefits, whether it's agriculture, whether it's technology. Diversifying the state's economy, I think, is extremely important. We talk about that. It's a throwaway phrase a lot of times. LSU is ideally positioned to do that here, leveraging the strength of the Ag Campus, leveraging the strength of the extension system that has an office in all 64 parishes, to really look at helping, you know, lift those areas up, helping them get into new areas in addition to agriculture, into technology and economic development that does not forsake their sort of fundamental DNA of being rural areas. Because I'm from a rural area, and rural areas, rightly so, don't want to change. They are the heart and soul of our country, but they do want to survive and they want to grow. And I think LSU is super well-positioned to do that, not only through its educational framework, but also through research. So lots of ways to become more competitive. I've worked at this at the national level. I've worked at the university. I've worked with the legislature in Oklahoma to strengthen the research of our institutions across the state of Oklahoma, and it's certainly one of the passions that I have and one of the priorities that I would give as president here. So thank you so much for the great question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Good morning, Doctor.
Good morning.
Dr. Drogemeyer, did I say it correctly?
Perfect. Thank you.
I want you to address something for me, please. There's been a suggestion that LSU, Louisiana University, should only be led by someone from Louisiana. Now, we do have a history here with people who come from out of state and do great things for us. You may not have heard of this guy, but Joe Burrow came from out of state, and he was here. There's another gentleman who came from out of state and made an impact at LSU, Pete Maravich, you may recall him.
Think I heard of him.
There's another guy who actually was in school with me here, Shaquille O'Neal, came from out of state and did well here. Vice Chair of the Presidential Research Committee, Gabriella Gonzalez, part of a team that won the Nobel Prize, not from here, made a great impact. And certainly, perhaps the greatest of them all, Board of Supervisor member Randy Morris, not from here, has made a tremendous impact on the state of Louisiana.
Can, is that, I didn't mean to interrupt, is that subject to debate?
It's a positive impact, right?
I think so, certainly. And so, but would you address those who think we need to sort of lock down the border and not let anybody else in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
No, thank you for the question. It's a very, very good, a very important question. You know, I've spent my entire life, my professional life, at one university. And so you might wonder, well, why would somebody seek to go someplace else where they say, well, he's not, he's not one of us, he's not LSU? It's a very, very legitimate question. I think a couple of things. First of all, just so you all know, I'm not looking for a job at all. I'm looking for a place where I can pour in my passion, my energy, my, everything that I have to take an institution to another level. And I have to say that when I was walking down the hall every day in my hotel, I passed the Sugar Bowl trophy of 2004, where LSU pretty much handed OU a pretty good defeat. And so for me, being a part of university is not simply a job, it's a passionate thing, it's a heart connection. And so I think sometimes, you know, people coming from the outside see things that others don't. And I have to tell you, I think talking with folks around at the various campuses and the leadership, I think folks coming from the outside, they see things others don't. I think I see things in the sort of system structure that perhaps others don't. I don't think that's completely unique. I think there are some disadvantages if somebody comes from the outside. I think the potential of folks saying, well, this person does not have their heart and soul entrusted to LSU. They don't have that heart tie. And I don't think that's a false statement. I think that's a very, very fair statement. But I think for me, again, being part of the higher education enterprise, and when my wife and I go to various places, we always visit campuses because that's our heartbeat. We love, we love the university enterprise. I think that being at LSU, I would absolutely embrace everything that is LSU, the culture, the people, the history, and the football program as well. Because I went to the University of Oklahoma for two reasons as an undergrad. One was the football team, and the other one was because of their meteorology program. So I would hope that I would bring an external perspective, but I am all about bringing folks together, all about listening, all about building consensus and building teams, being broadly engaging and being accessible. So it's not that somebody coming from the outside has all the answers, that somebody coming outside has maybe a different perspective, but everyone's perspective is important. Students, faculty, staff, the leadership here, alumni, donors, the state legislature, the governor, we're all a family. We're all a family. And, you know, if I were to come here, I would very much take that approach, and it is now my new family.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Mr. Storrs, yes, sir.
Dr. Drogemeyer?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. And I was very interested and enjoyed hearing you speak about your background in research and how important that is. You know, at LSU, we're a research institution, and that's a strong part of our mission. And I'd like for you to talk about some things related to, and you rattled off some pretty good numbers about we have, as an Ag Extension, we have 64 parish outreach. In terms of things like rural health and access to healthcare and things of that nature, combined with our research function here at the main campus, throughout all of the parishes of Louisiana, could you talk about how you could integrate all those things in with, as a, you know, a research and practical component to either promote better outcomes for health and everything in Louisiana and to the benefit, for the benefit of the students at LSU?
Sure, absolutely.
How come you asked my question? I'm sorry.
The gentleman from Georgia was not recognized at that point.
No, it's another really, really good question. So there are, of course, two medical centers, and the reach there is extraordinary. They operate various hospitals, teaching hospitals, and so on. The thing that I think is so important is that you have clinical care, you have education, and you have research intertwined. And we tend to sometimes talk about research here, we talk about classroom education and other things here, we talk about practice here. I think that the key thing is to see them as an integrated whole. And I think the health system is the best example, frankly, of that. In fact, we emulated that in Oklahoma when we created our National Weather Center of putting operational forecasting together with research, together with the academic enterprise, all in one big building that kind of looks like a hospital. So that's really the key there. I think looking at research that really focuses on, to some extent, the health issues of the state of Louisiana, right? I mean, there's certainly health disparities, there's Native American populations, there's diabetes, there's obesity. Of course, this is something that the Pennington Center is focused on a lot. There's all kinds of other things that really could be, you know, they are the focus now, but then the extension out into the community is critically important. So this is where I see the Ag Center playing a very great role. You talk about telehealth, for example. Traditionally, the land-grant university has, as you say, have all these extension offices everywhere, and has been focused on empowering and strengthening agriculture through extension and education and providing services and things like that. We don't ever want to give that up. In fact, if anything, we want to strengthen it dramatically. But on the other hand, that's a conduit out to all those parishes for other things like, for example, telehealth, and making sure that rural broadband connectivity actually happens there. So this is the beauty, again, of LSU and the land-grant system here is you've got that connective tissue, so that is one mechanism to bring telehealth to those communities, working with the state legislature, working with the congressional delegation here to make sure that those dollars that are going to flow in terms of creating the broadband, your rural broadband are actually, you know, developed here and actually are put in place here to enable those kinds of things. So the one thing that I've seen is there's a lot of research that happens at LSU that a lot of folks don't understand really how it does connect to the rural communities. And so that story needs to be told, but we also need to listen to the other direction to say, okay. We talk a lot about great statistics, you know, expenditures and papers published and R01 grants and things like that, but at the end of the day, what does that mean to a mom who's a single mom with two kids who's struggling to make ends meet, and she herself has some health problems? You know, are we really thinking about how we connect to those individuals? And so I think the health system here is extremely strong. I think one of the things we've talked about is going after an NCI cancer designation so folks in Louisiana don't have to leave the state. I know that's been tried a couple of times. We need to get over the finish line, pure and simple. And there are ways to do that, where we bring together the resources and assets that we have. It sounds easier said than done, but that's kind of what I've spent my whole career doing, is bringing people together, building coalitions of like-minded individuals, getting focused on a single goal, and then putting in place the resources that are needed to actually make that happen. I saw it happen in Oklahoma. We got an NCI designation for a cancer center that started something like 10 years ago, so it can absolutely be done. So I think the key thing is to make sure that we are attentive to the needs of Louisiana, we understand what those needs are, but we have a mechanism to deliver health we understand what those needs are, but we have a mechanism to deliver health care to the entire state, partly through telehealth, but also partly through things like an NCI cancer center that makes available those resources to citizens where they don't have to drive to MD Anderson, or to Oklahoma, or other places. They drive a far, far smaller distance, shorter distance to actually get there.
Thank you. And I'm glad you brought up the cancer designation. I don't, and this may be where your out-of-state perspective could really benefit us, but is it common for states to have a flagship university that has a hospital system, two medical schools, world-class research facility like Pennington? As a land-grant university, have ag extension in every parish, I guess we'll be counting other places, but every parish in the state? Is that, one, is that a common thing for other states to have, that amount of assets and advantages? And you've spoken pretty well about how you would integrate some of that, but it doesn't seem, I mean, it seems like it's something that's very achievable, that we should be able to achieve that NCI cancer designation?
Yeah. Actually, some states do have it, but what the other states don't have is, you know, again, the pre-K, the K-12, the two-year, the four-year pathway for folks coming in. This plays very importantly, I think, into diversity, into the system. And all the way through, say for example, the Innovation Campus, the Innovation Park, and the online. So you put all that together. That's why I say, I think LSU in a lot of respects, again, with total respect to the current leadership, is somewhat punching below its weight. And the beauty of the conversations I have with leadership is they all agree with that. And the question is, what do we do about it? And what do we do is, we come up with a bold plan, a really bold, and it's easy to say that, but we can do that. There's things we can do that are uniquely LSU. An NCI designation is absolutely within our reach. It absolutely is. If Oklahoma can do it, and Oklahoma sure has a lot of characteristics with LSU, the economy very similar, right? It's got an energy-driven economy, agriculture, we have military bases, we have a lot of health disparities, challenges with health and Native American populations, very, very similar. Oklahoma did it, LSU, excuse me, Louisiana can absolutely do it. And LSU needs to lead the way in making that happen. And if I come here, we're going to get that across the finish line. We will make that happen.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Dr., oh, I'm sorry, Lee, go ahead.
You called me doctor now?
Well, I was going to ask my question, but I'll let you go. Dr. Drogomire, there's an ongoing conversation sometimes about things like US News World Report rankings. And sometimes there's a balance as to how important that is versus erring on the side. If there's five kids from a rural place that didn't have the opportunity to take some prep courses, and those five kids get into LSU, and four of them become great LSU Tigers, but that kind of thing lowers your rankings, and it kind of speaks to whatever your mission is. And I have some personal views about that, but I'd like for you to address that issue.
No, it's a really great point. And I think fundamentally, it gets to the heart of, you know, what are we about at LSU? What is our mission? What is our focus? When we wear a lapel pin, or you wear a shirt that says LSU, what does that mean to you? And do we worry so much about rankings that in many ways are controversial, or are we going to take care of folks, you know, and do what we were basically established to do? I think both are important, because a lot of folks do look at rankings. But here's where I think national level engagement is extremely important. In professional societies, Association of American Medical Colleges, Association of Public and Land Grant Universities, things like that, they have a very powerful voice. And some of these rankings are very controversial, especially with things like graduation rates and stuff. For minority-serving institutions, they're not what they need to be in terms of characterizing the graduation. They're really kind of off the mark. And this is true at the federal level, plus things like US News and World Report. So I think part of it is, you don't pay enough, so much homage to those rankings that you let them control you. But on the other hand, you're aware that a lot of folks look at those, and that those are sometimes determinants of people enrolling, and parents look at those, and so on. But if they're not accurately reflecting the value of what higher education is, then at the national level, you need to go look to have a voice to change those, and build coalitions of like-minded folks to say, look, look at all the great things we're doing, but the rankings don't recognize that. So go change the rankings and make sure they reflect it. So I think you have to really do both.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mallon?
Mr. Drogomire, Dr. Drogomire. I have to be honest with you. I read your resume again this morning, and I'll tell you, you're much more impressive in person than I was on the TV, because I watched you on TV. And I'm so glad that I get this chance to talk to you.
Thank you.
Of the people that are applying, you seem to have management experience, as well as academia. You have it all, when I look at the resumes. But for some reason, either you hadn't excited me or somebody in this room, I need for you to get me excited about you, because I'm really impressed with what I'm seeing today, and your resume. And I really want to give you an opportunity to, because it seems like you're very qualified, in my opinion so far. I have a lot of other questions, but that's, since you started talking, I really had to, really want to dig more into you. Because I was here the last time there was a Presidential Research, and I didn't do that. And I promised myself I would not do this again. So, tell me, give me a little bit about you to get me excited a little bit, because I'm happy right now, I'm looking good.
Yep.
And when Mr. Mallon's happy, we're all happy.
Well, thank you so much for that opportunity, sir. First and foremost, I just love life. I love working with people, I love being around people, I love big ideas, I love investing our time in helping others succeed, of going after things that people say, you know what, I don't think that's possible. I say, watch us, it's possible. We've got to get together, we've got to do that. So my whole, I guess my character has been shaped by growing up in a small town where I form my values. I respect people, I love people, I'm honest, I'm open. I try to completely operate with integrity. I own my mistakes if I do something wrong. I try to be all-inclusive and bring a lot of folks to the table. I don't have all the answers. In fact, as a meteorologist, I think you all would expect it. I'm wrong most of the time, about a lot of things. So I don't have all the answers. But I think, that sort of character of really respecting and being inclusive and honoring people, and saying, look, together we can figure things out that we can't do on our own. And so that's part of it. Then of course, the experience for me has really helped, I think, reinforce those values, especially as a researcher, the integrity, honesty, openness, trust that you need to place in other people. And the trust frankly, that I would work very hard to build here with everyone. I think there's, you know, there's been some challenge obviously at LSU. And the new leadership has got to build the trust in a deserved way of the students, of the faculty, of the staff, of the governor, of the legislature, and do it in a way to where they see the value of what this institution means to the state. And that's just sort of how I am. I kind of wear my heart on my sleeve. I'm who you see me right now is really who I am. And so, the leadership part for me is really about identifying challenges and saying, you know, we can fix those kinds of things. We can work together, we can address these problems. When I was at the White House, you know, that's a tough place to be. And I have to tell you, I grew a lot by being there two years. It's like 10 years anywhere else. But, you know, I think it prepared me more than anything for something like this. I have to be honest, I think three or four years, I probably wasn't prepared to do this. Being a VPR is important, Vice President for Research, Cabinet Member in Governor's Cabinet, that's great. But when you're at the White House, you're in a whole different environment where leadership is something that is, it means something very, very different. So I think I grew a lot there, to be perfectly honest. And I learned how, you know, as I say, I went around the country, I engaged folks. A lot of times, people didn't want to do that, you know. And I would give my business card out, because I want to be accessible. I don't want to live in some corner office. And it kind of freaked my comm staff out when I'd go hand my business card out to 100 students that we were visiting down in Houston, or around the country, at some university or some company. And they say, you know, they're going to contact you. I'm like, yeah. I'm a servant of the people, I'm on taxpayer dollars, my heart is to serve. I'm not here to sit in some office and make decisions. And so I want to engage everybody, I want their ideas, I want them to know who I am, I want to be around with them. And when I was VPR at OU, I told the faculty, you know, I have this title, this position, but I'm still one of you. And honestly, if I came here as president, I want people to know me as a professor first and foremost. I want to hang out with faculty, I want to go visit labs. And I'll tell you what I learned at the White House, is if you do that, and Tom and I talked about this the other day, people say, oh my God, the president's here. Well, I get that, I get that. But on the other hand, I think it's important for folks to get to know me as a person, not see me only as, you know, having some title, sitting in some office somewhere. Because being part of the LSU family means you're part of the LSU family. And the only way that I can do that, the only way people can know me and trust me, is to really get to know me and be with me. I want to hang out with students, I want to go have pizza, and do those kinds of things. And that's just who I am. And that's just how I'm wired together. So I don't know if that sort of answers your questions, or gives you some insight.
Let me ask you. What would you do, or how would you make, how would you bring LSU to the next level? To the next level where this university needs to be. I mean, I'm very impressed, and I want to get into the political question too, because I hadn't thought about it. The fact you're up there, you're probably in tune to politics, like this is serious politics in Louisiana, you are aware of that.
Right.
Very serious. They'll knife you here, I'm telling you. I'm being honest with you. I don't want you to come here and think, they don't do that here. It's a tough game up here.
It is, it is.
But if you've been at the White House, you're probably familiar with that too. But tell me, on the, I forget my, I got carried away there. The question I asked you, could you respond to that? Or did you forget it too?
[laughing]
I forgot it.
So you were asking specifically what I would do, right?
What would you do to take LSU to the next level?
Take LSU to the next level, right. So I think one of the first things is, we have to think holistically about LSU as a system. You know, and the beauty of LSU, in addition to the fact that it's got all these pieces, is each of those components, Larry's campus in Shreveport, it's got a personality and identity. It's not just a satellite, I hate that term. These are all fundamentally part of an important whole. And you take LSU, Shreveport, Alexandria, Humus, you take any of these things out, LSU becomes much weaker because of that. So we want to not in any way forsake the identity, and the strength, and the capability, and the value of each of those components. But those components, I think, are not woven together in the totality in the way that they could be, in the sense of a completely seamless framework from pre-K all the way to lifelong learning, frankly, online and lifelong learning, plus the Innovation Park. So what that means is, we first and foremost have to see ourselves as who we are, and then ask the tough questions about, okay, who do we really want to be? And I'll tell you what, I think a five-year plan is frankly, not what we want. We need a quarter-century plan. We need a 25-year plan, because presidents come and go, provosts come and go, boards come and go. This institution lives on, and it's an extraordinary institution. But if we only look five years down the road, we're missing the opportunities, we're missing the information, the arcs of demographics, the arcs of where the country is going in areas like artificial intelligence, quantum information science, and things like that. We don't know the details, and as a meteorologist saying, you got a 25-year forecast, that should freak you out, right? But I'm not saying that. I'm saying we're really looking at those broad contours and saying, okay, if we're thinking about the coast, the coast and climate change, thinking about coastal inundation, eutrophication in the Mississippi and things like that, what uniquely could LSU contribute to those areas? Because if you only look five years, those curves look flat, okay? You look at the whole thing, you see the arc of the curve. So we've got to look 25 years down the road. Get everyone at the table. We don't want to create a vision and a plan and a bold transformative set of ideas. With the alumni over here, with the donors over here, with other folks over here, we have to bring the whole family together and say, where are we going? So that then we go to the donor base, and we say, okay, here's our plan. They say, you know what, yeah, I know, I helped write that plan, that's my idea there, and I'm all in. I'm all in on that thing. So we can't do everything. We have to focus and decide what our strengths are, decide what we want to be, and decide that there's not a fancy tagline out there, there's an ethos, there's a fundamental characteristic of this institution. When people see that purple and gold, and they see that LSU, it means something to them. It means something beyond the incredible football program and the athletics, which I embraced completely. But there's other things. I think if you ask folks today, they're not sure. And that not sure part is the part that's missing, as well as a bold plan. So I would begin by getting folks together and really starting the conversation, but having it be broadly engaging, and not taking two years to do it, but frankly, a very rapid four to six months, and then start executing on that plan. That would be sort of the strategy. But it's not for me to do, it's for the family to do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Temple?
Doc, as you endeavor to undertake this LSU job, you certainly saw all of the swirling national ag stuff that's going on here. What would make you want to really take this on? And what was your opinion, what was your initial opinion? And what was the motivator to get you to want to get out of the clouds, and this astronomy and all that stuff? What made you want to come, maybe come here?
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's a great question. Universities go into, have experienced difficult times, okay? My own university did that, when I was there as a student, and also early in my time as faculty member. But they use that as a learning opportunity to come back a whole lot stronger than they were before. And I'm talking specifically about our athletic program. We now have an AD that's been there for 23 years, Joe Castiglione, and he and the president, President Boren, and the current president have done extraordinary jobs to create high bars of expectation for our athletes, create a program that has no systemic problems. You have issues occasionally, right? But you have no systemic problems. That's really, really important. I'm fully aware of the challenges that LSU is going through. And believe me, I think the last thing you need is somebody to come in and say, okay, I'm going to go fix it all. I don't like people who do that, because it makes it seem like they're devaluing the institution. This is a great institution, it's got a great history, but it's got some challenges. I think that the joy that I find in helping folks get beyond challenges, think big, and think about an identity coming forward, means that this institution can go forward in a much stronger way, in a way that there's greater trust, greater respect, greater reverence for that purple and gold than there ever has been before. So I think it's a huge opportunity that's been put before the institution. I'm very comfortable, I love this part of the country, sir. I love the South. I don't see how I could be, I mean, living in Washington two years, wonderful people up there, but that part of the country is not for me. The West Coast, there's not enough weather there. It's just, I can't deal with clear skies every day, I just can't. But I really can't. What I love about this part of the country though, is the quality of the people, the values that they have. Those Midwestern, Southern values of, we support each other, we love one another, we help one another. We're not resource as well as other places, but boy, you give us a dollar, we'll turn it into $15. That work ethic, that hard notion of work is what really attracts me. So Louisiana is very much in that characteristic for me. And being from Oklahoma, I couldn't see myself ever going to Texas. I mean, come on, right? I mean, holy cow.
Careful, Dr. Drogomire.
Oh wait, this is being livestreamed. Okay, I'll take that back. Texas is a great state, except for that one Saturday in October. But I'm really attracted by the people, by the opportunities. I see challenges through the lens of opportunities. And I've seen institutions go through tough times and come out stronger. The other thing about LSU is, it's so broad in its diversity of institutions and organizations, and this is true for budgets and other things. If one part falls on hard times, the rest of it remains strong, and it builds resiliency. And I don't think that resiliency is there to the extent it could be. And so this is again, where I think strengthening the connective tissue across the organizations without forsaking their identity and their individuality is one of the great opportunities before us now. So.
Thank you, Dr. Drogomire.
I'm sorry?
What do you think about the water campus?
You know, I would love to visit that campus. I've only heard a little bit about it. It sounds extraordinary. It's USDA, and USGS, and all these federal groups. And you know, I've talked to Dean Chris Delia about this a long time ago, not the water campus, but about the work he's doing in the College of Coast and the environment. And one of the things is, you know, getting federal agencies physically involved, you know, moving organizations, which we did in Oklahoma. And there's nothing like that. And I think there's huge opportunity there for coastal work, for water work, and things like that. The National Water Center is located in Alabama. But this could be a center of excellence, no question about it, in that arena. In fact, not to prolong my answer, but when I was VPR at OU, I created a very grassroots group of folks, vice presidents and vice chancellors for research, all the way from the Dakotas to the Gulf Coast. And LSU was a big part of that. And we got together and we said, you know, we're kind of overlooked a lot of times, but we have tremendous capabilities, we have tremendous assets, we have a lot of incredible companies, ag and food production and so on. We have a tremendous congressional delegation. So what are the problems that are really regional for us, that if we join forces that are beyond an individual institution or few institutions, like the Ogallala Aquifer, that is being recharged at an unsustainable rate? How do we get together and do those kinds of things? And so, that's kind of building that coalition of, hey, we're stronger together, but it's that Midwestern work ethic, that, hey, let's get together. We're not fighting against each other, we compete in a lot of ways, but we're working together. And I would see that sort of being a bigger example of what I'm talking about here in Louisiana.
Would you consider yourself a foremost expert at gaining and accessing resources? resources on a national level to help with, help with obtaining resources for, for universities like this?
Yeah, that's, that's what I spent most of my career doing actually, is, is going and getting money either through direct fundraising, private funds, which I started very early in my career and an early grant that I had, or, you know, in other ways through, through research. So the, the National Weather Center we have in Oklahoma, as I mentioned, it's got about 800 people in it and it's got several federal agencies. The Bureau of Land Management came there just a few years ago, I was heavily involved in, in getting them to establish their, their presence on campus. The National Severe Storms Lab is there. We moved the Severe Storms Prediction Center from, from Kansas City to Norman. We moved the Weather Service Forecast Office from the airport in Oklahoma City down to Norman. Again, the teaching hospital concept, let's bring together all these, these operational folks to, to be in the same physical place as the, the research and the, and the teaching. In other ways through, through major grants of, of activity, investing in our radar strategic enterprise, teaching our faculty who traditionally had gotten money from the National Science Foundation and stuff to understand how to work with mission agencies, three-letter agencies, DOD and CIA and things like that. Going after that money is very, very different than going after NSF or National Institutes of Health money. So we had to teach our faculty how to do that. It was, it was training them to think about how to go after that money and to talk to program officers and things like that. So I helped teach the people who, who were doing it, but also myself going out and getting, you know, big grants from typically from federal agencies and then also from private companies as well, like Williams Energy Marketing and Trading, a big $10 million grant from then to do work in, in weather forecasting and research for, for energy trading and marketing, which is very important for the state of Oklahoma. So yeah, I've, I've spent a lot of time doing, going out and getting, getting money in various forms and it's, it's enjoyable. It really is because you got to have that if you're going to excel.
Would you be better being the President or would you be better going out and getting research grants?
I, you know, I've done the research. I've been at OU for 36 years. I was an active researcher for about 25 years and got more into administration. I really enjoyed doing that, but I've kind of been there and done that. And I think it's better that I spend time helping other people through that experience, knowing how to grow their research enterprises, mentoring faculty, you know, helping grow rather than me doing it myself, which I enjoy, but I've kind of been there and done that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I turn it over to Mr. Brown, there was a hint of disparagement of the state of Texas and I'm a lifelong Louisianian, but my favorite provost is a Texan and my fa-
Oh, I forgot about that.
And my favorite wife is a Texan. And sir, I'm a lawyer, I don't mind grilling people with difficult cross-examination questions, but isn't it true, sir, that you have a Harley that's burnt orange?
Oh, boy. He's got me on this one.
Okay.
Now, now, you know, you can go look this up on the web. It's 105th Anniversary Edition, it's copper and black.
Okay.
And I'm going to do something unthinkable.
My wife was very excited to see his-
How's this, Stacy? Is this good?
His burnt, and I'm not a Texas guy, for heaven's sakes. I'm an LSU guy. Mr. Brown has the floor.
I had the pleasure of spending afternoon and evening with you, Dr. Drogomire, and thank you for being very gracious and being, I got to meet you and spend time with you on a personal basis. I'm so glad you were able to come to Shreveport. That's my hometown and to see the wonderful things that LSU has to offer. Dr. Lewis and Dr. Fox are here and our visit to both LSU and to the med school there were very interesting to hear you interact with, with our leaders and, and, and added a lot of good comments and to what we were doing. So I, I really see the value of, of your expertise and experience in, in the research field and in the technical field. And I'm, have an engineering background along with business background, so I can, I can relate to your communications maybe better than some of the attorneys, but I, but I, but being in business, and one, one of the things that I, that's, that's a real need and a concern for me is that we have a leader, President, that can bring in the resources to, so we can take our university to the higher level. I serve on the, I serve the board as the Finance Committee Chairman, so I'm trying to get involved with the finances of our system as, as best I can. And we're certainly have been underfunded from the state for years. Limited resources are, we really, I think, do need to seek more research also. From a business point of view, how do you feel like that your experiences and your expertise can serve our university to help us raise without the financial levels that we need that we can't hire, can't pay our staff, professors, can't have the programs, can't hire the top? So that's critical for our students is that we have the finances to make this work.
Yeah.
How can you, how can you help us in that area?
Sure, absolutely. So there, yeah, I know you all have been through very severe budget cuts and, and looked, I know extensively at, at cost-cutting measures, things like, you know, getting involved with national purchasing programs and so on. Then there's on the revenue side, of course, you know, raising tuition, which completely undermines accessibility for students. You don't really want to do that and, and so on. Then of course there's philanthropy, but there's also partnerships. And sometimes we overlook partnerships. This is something, when I was at the White House, I pushed very, very, so one of the three pillars of, of my work there was multi-sector partnerships. Not that private companies are banks, they're certainly not. And frankly, one of the things that we, we found and not surprisingly so, when we had national summits, that private companies would say, you know, universities and others folks will come to us at the, sort of the end of the line when they've got, the program already decided and we have no input on it all in, in terms of the direction of the program and so on. And so what, what we were suggesting is getting the private companies involved, and I'm talking about this in terms of a strategic plan as well, so that they have a voice and there's an understanding of where, and they have a role in helping shape where the university goes. And then that way they're fundamentally bought into it and the university then becomes a, a great asset for them. So, you know, you, you can think of leveraging dollars from the state against the private sector dollars to do things like fund lab renovations, buy equipment, fund, fund graduate research fellowships and things, or even doing cost matching for that sort of thing. But when I was in Oklahoma in the governor's cabinet, I created something called Access for Success. The idea there was that if you look at what universities have and what they do, it's beyond graduating students and writing journal articles and things like that. We have a lot of capabilities and assets that are of value, especially to small and medium-sized businesses. So for example, we have clean rooms, we have lab, we have machine shops, we have folks who are experts in data analytics. So if you've got a small 20 or 30-person company and they say, you know, I want to be more productive, I want to, to really look at efficiencies and things, they, they're collecting the data, but they don't know how to analyze it. So there's the ability for, for folks in the university to work with those companies to help them and that, that, you know, helps them grow the economy, helps them build, you know, greater, greater employment base, the tax base and so on. We also have a lot of data sets of great value to private companies, especially those along the coast. There's, there's huge value there as well. So one of the things that we also did was create a program where faculty could consult with the private companies instead of having their own little companies or doing it on a one-to-one basis. We said, okay, if you want to consult in whatever area your expertise is in, raise your hand, we'll put you in a pool of people. And then we will go out and, and say, the university is very interested in working with private sector companies to help them in their business lines, whatever that means. And then if they, the companies say, okay, I want to have this faculty member work with me, we ran that money through the university, we paid the faculty above their salary. So it wasn't just, oh, I'm getting my summer support if I'm on a nine-month contract. It actually valued them at building the linkage, the connective tissue with the private companies. The company said, this is fantastic, I'm getting this great expertise. And it wasn't always just about funding a research project. And then guess what? That would build the relationship and then pretty soon, maybe they're, they're giving money to the university or whatever. It's not like it's, it's the hidden goal, but it really is a, a natural outcome of that sort of thing. So we always think about the big wins for universities, but, you know, talking about weather here, it's, it's a lot like hurricanes. You know, hurricanes that make landfall are, they're, they're what make the news. They, they're very devastating in their own right, but if you look at what really impacts the economy across the country, it's the additive effects of all the small things that fly under the radar. So you look at what is the foundation of our economy in the U.S., it's the small and medium-sized businesses. Universities are really well-poised, especially LSU with, with its various campuses, with the ag system connectivity, to provide a lot of resources to those, to those companies. And it, it improves the educational experience, it helps faculty bring private sector ideas and examples into the classroom. You get internships, you get externships. I mean, it, it's a beautiful thing and it doesn't take a whole lot of work because universities already have it, it's just a question of making it available and doing it. And so those are, those are some ways, in addition to the standard sort of philanthropic giving. People have always called me a bit of a salesman and I've always been a little troubled by that in the sense that, well, is he, is he selling me the truth or is he selling me not? Well, I, I don't ever not speak the truth, but I get so excited that people get juiced about it. And so after a while I said, okay, I'll wear that as a badge of pride. People would say I'm a salesman, but at the end of the day, if we get a $10 million gift out of that, hey, that's fine with me, you know? So I, I do get excited. I love telling stories, I love fundraising because I like people getting excited about the direction and the vision and the big goals and thinking of a university. That's why coming here, I see huge opportunity to do that from the foundation, from the fundraising point of view and getting the alumni engaged and the donors engaged in helping set the direction so they're a part of it from day one. So I don't know, Mr. Brown, if that answers your question, but, but I had a great time with you as well. Thanks so much for your graciousness in chatting with me and it was, it was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions? No, Lee. Dr. Drogomire. Title IX.
If you'd have been here in what happened to LSU, what would you have done?
If I'd been here, sorry, when?
If you'd been President.
You say, when it happened?
No. If you would have been President, what actions would you take under those circumstances and what, what happened at LSU? If you're familiar with it. If not, I'll explain.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I think the first thing is, I talked about the culture, but ultimately I think, I think what, what President Gallagher did was exactly right. Do a real deep dive, a causal analysis of what actually is the situation here. You, and it's a very, very complicated environment, as you well know. So you, you really have to understand what the circumstances are. And certainly there's all kinds of issues of what was reported when and who knew what when and all this kind of thing. And so that for cause analysis, I think is so important. And that report to me that the, the law firm put together, I thought was very impressive because I thought they were open and honest and they said, there are some decisions that were made maybe two years ago or whatever that had a different context then. So, you know, they appeared appropriate at that time, but they weren't sort of appropriate with the, looking through the lens of history. So the first thing I would have done would, would have been, first of all, to commission that study. But the second thing, and actually probably the first thing would have been to say, okay, what do we need to do immediately to stop the, the issues that are out there? You got to stop the bleeding. If there are things that are out there that are a problem, you have, you can do a study, that's great, but if there are problems that are happening right now, we've got to stop it and we've got to, we've got to clarify the messaging. We have to make it clear and unequivocal that this is a problem. I've had students tell me during my time here, student leadership, said, we don't feel safe on campus. That is not what LSU is about. That is not what this quality institution is about, but yet that's how students feel. And so there is a disconnect and frankly, that, that is a reality, right? So, so what I, you know, I guess ultimately I would have done everything I could to prevent to happen from the, prevent happening from, from the very beginning because there's a lot of mechanistic things you can do. And so, you know, sort of if I could just build on that going forward, I think the first thing is that office needs to be in the President's office. And I had also talked to Stacy about the diversity office being in the President's office. I think those are high priorities because they represent the ethos of the campus. When you walk on campus, if people, students, they say, you know, students talk to one and if they don't feel safe, the rest of it doesn't matter. The rest of it doesn't matter. It's not the culture and not the image of the institution and the reality that, that you want, those of us who, who, you know, part of the LSU family. So that's the first thing. Then you need all the other mechanistic kinds of things and training and so on, but I can tell you that my own experience is if somebody is given to harassing behavior, they're given to covering things up, whether it's in the faculty, the staff, the student ranks, it's whatever, watching a video is not going to change them really fundamentally. So you have to then, thirdly, have a reinforcing culture that says, you know, this is unacceptable, it's got to be messaged very clearly, not only from the President, but the provost, the chancellors, the deans, the chairs, the directors and the students. Everybody, this isn't just a job for the administration. This sort of culture that we're needing to develop has to be everyone's job. And that's why when you create an office of diversity and inclusion and equity or create some other office, I don't want people to think that, okay, they're taking care of it. It's everyone's responsibility. The messaging has to be there, the training, the resources have to be there, have to be serious about it, the President has to be serious about it, it has to be done right. And then you have to, you know, reinforce that culture continuously. So again, I think it's an opportunity, it's, it's, it's a tough situation to be in, but LSU can come out of this much stronger. We saw, you know, what happened with Penn State and that Penn State has brought in a really good leader, a good friend of mine, and I've talked to him about this a lot, of what, you know, what they did. And, and Penn State has come out stronger than before.
Well, not, not to change the subject, LSU receives about 16% of its funding from the state. How do, what do you think about that? Is it a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, the number that I saw originally, the percentage was 22%.
You know more than me.
Yeah, so I thought, wow, that's-
But either way.
That's pretty darn good.
What do you think about it? You think we should try to change that? We, we can't raise tuition, we can raise fees. If we get in the financial bind here, what, if you were President, what, what are you going to do to prepare for that not to happen? Because it happens.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I think a lot of people would say, forget it. It is not going to change. And I understand that. I, you know, I, I was involved with a, a major reporter in the National Science Board, gosh, it was, I don't know, five, six, seven years ago, about, about public funding for higher edu, for public higher education. And it was a very dismal outcome in the report of, of the way funding was going. When you bring in a new President, you have a singular opportunity to do some things new. And I, I wouldn't necessarily always call it a honeymoon, but with somebody new, especially coming from the outside, you have an opportunity to, I wouldn't write off, you know, potentially getting additional support from the state, but you can't keep going back and telling the same story. There has to be a bold transformative new vision where people say, wow, that's LSU? Man, I've been here, I've been in the legislature 15 years, I've never seen anything like that. It's got to be something new and different because they won't simply give you money because you say, well, we used to be at 22, we're now at 16. That doesn't sell. Nobody's convinced by that. I saw it at federal government, I saw it at state universities. So we have to have a different story to tell. And that's, the, the beauty of it is that LSU is poised to tell that story and to begin down that pathway. So I, as a President, would be strongly engaged with the Governor, with the state legislature, with others in the state, with business leaders, to look at what really the future of LSU means for the state. And that would help create that compelling narrative that would be told then to the citizens, to everybody, and hopefully start to redress that. But we can't count on that at all. We absolutely cannot count on state support going back to where it was.
You entertain raising fees?
I think, you know, I haven't looked at the history of tuition and fees here, but I think, you know, if we want to really look at accessibility, you know, there's a couple of ways to do that. You can, you can raise tuition and fees, but then you can offset those raises with private funding, fundraising. A lot of times, folks will do that, but all money is green, so you really want to increase the number of students coming in potentially. So that's, that's one mechanism. There are other ways in terms of funding folks through, through other scholarships that perhaps we haven't availed ourself of. So there's a lot of, lot of opportunities to look at there, and I need to look at that more, more deeply. But, but raising tuition and fees is, is, if you look at the growth of those relative to GDP
We can't raise, we can't raise tuition, we can only raise fees.
You can only raise fees. So, you know, it doesn't send a good message to parents and students unless they see, like on the Shreveport campus, that direct reinvestment, the students walk in that building and say, you know, we agreed to raise the fees, we voted unanimously to raise the fees, and here's the fruit of that, of that investment. That's a different story. So there are opportunities like that as well. So I think it's, you know, multiple, multiple opportunities there.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You got here in '58. You've been here a while, you're a wise guy, right? '58, so '62? '62.
You mean in terms of when I was born?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, 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 you know, we're, we're at a, we're at a time and place and space where things are really challenging in a variety of ways. And one, one of the major challenges that we face across the country, you know, this diversity inclusion thing is like, it's like a hot button. It's almost like nobody really realized that it was, hell, it's been like that. I mean, it's like it's something new, right? Now, my question is, we have a wonderful group of individuals that run this university. And, and we think that they all do a good job, all right? So, so, so if you, if you look behind you, the first two rows of people are white folks. They're in charge. Real white man, you want to be in charge. They all do a good job and have been here a while. How do you tackle this real popular notion of diversity and inclusion at the highest level and engage it? How do you do that? And, and do you have a, like a, a magic wand to make that work? Because these people don't want to leave their jobs, so you figure out a new one, you add to, you mix it? I mean, how do you do that?
Yep, yep. No, it's, it's a really, thank you for the good question. So I think, first of all, I've had a lot of, a lot of experience with working with diversity and trying to improve diversity over, over the years. I think the first thing you have to do, to your point, it's almost been around for, for so long that we, we need to stop and define what we're talking about. And I see diversity in, at least in the context of, of an institution like this, but even more broadly, is in a very broad sense. You know, sex, gender, race, ethnicity, your perspective, your geography, where are you from, international diversity, you know, veterans, you name it. I mean, that's diversity. Diversity is, in fact, this, the whole LSU system is a diverse system because of its institutions, a very unique diversity there. I think part of it is, okay, let's make sure that we all understand what we mean when we use the words diversity and equity inclusion, and also belonging. I think belonging is another important word. So once you sort of have that and you say, okay, well, what is, what is the value of that? If we really understand the meaning, what is the value of that? You know, we talk about it, why do we talk about, what is valuable about that? And make clear what the value is. There's lots of ways to portray that value, but, but, okay, what is the value? So that really has to happen. Then you think about, okay, well, then how do we, how do we increase the diversity? And I'm going to come at this from sort of two directions here. One is increasing the diversity. Now, the student body here is quite diverse, it's really impressive, but the faculty, I think, as I understand from folks, has kind of gone backwards, and the numbers are far lower than what, what we would want. Well, how do you change that? Well, first of all, again, understanding and valuing diversity, but then helping people understand how to build diversity in, in search pools and things like that. My own experience is, people go through a lot of training, but I've been in a lot of faculty searches and watched them happen, and, you know, people really, they struggle with that, they really struggle with it. And so what needs to happen is, once you value it and once you message it strongly, the importance of diversity, you have to help people understand how to go do that. But this is where the institutional responsibility, I think, comes in, of not just looking at minority-serving institutions, HBCUs, tribal colleges and universities, all those, those groups. When you're looking to hire diverse people, you say, look, we, we want to have continuous relationships with those, with those, plus national organizations, not just come to them when it's time that we're having a search for a dean or whatever. You build continuous engagement with those, with those organizations by having people on their boards, by engaging in research that involves the folks that are, you know, there as students. So you really have to understand, you know, how to build the pools because you have to understand where those, those folks are. And so who is, who is graduating, you know, various universities, HBCUs, for example, who is, who's graduating the next crop of students and somehow maybe have joint projects that involve them in research? And you start to cultivate that talent, you get to know them. And then it becomes sort of a little bit easier when you, when you have a search to say, oh, I know a whole bunch of people. See, the environmental scan is really important, but a lot of times, people don't know where to look for that talent. The other part of it is, how do we actually bring people into the system? How do we bring them in? Well, the systemic structure that is here, you know, through the laboratory school is one mechanism. I don't know how diverse it is, but, you know, if they have like 100 students in the senior class, maybe, say, 20 of them are diverse students, well, that's 20 people, that's not very many people. So this system itself could, could help, but how about working with other, other systems, other organizations throughout the country in terms of education to, to build diverse pools of students, finding where they're at, and I kind of call this finding our bench strength. There are a lot of kids that I know who never have an opportunity to realize their goals and their dreams because they go undiscovered. It's talent that's out there, but because of socioeconomic conditions, because of all kinds of things, nobody ever knows where they're at. And so it's, it's a horrible thing in this country to not be able to provide opportunity for those folks to come forward and be known because they might have a whole life that is lived in a way that is completely not realizing the potential they have. And I think that's, that's awful. It really is awful. So we have to know what that bench strength is. So then the other piece is, that's, that's all sort of inward-looking, right? How do we improve the diversity here? How do we help create diverse pipelines? But the other part is national engagement. Engagement by LSU in terms of the NSF Committee on Equal Opportunity in Science Engineering. It's a national committee at NSF, it works with Congress, it directs Congress. Helping direct the national conversation about diversity, not just focusing on LSU, but, you know, the broader, the broader spectrum of diversity in the country and engaging in a lot of things. But research is a wonderful way to build diversity because then you're cultivating folks, you're bringing them in, into the system, whereas you're not just, you know, hiring people that already have their degrees, you're actually increasing the numbers and bringing them in.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other questions, please?
Yeah, one more. Mr. Drag, Doc, if you become president, how, how many people you think you need to bring on board with you to be successful? We know we have a lot of good people here, but what do you think you need? What would you anticipate you would need? And what kind of, what would that look like? What kind of structure you're looking for? Will you be successful president? Because you have, you're the president and the chancellor, the main cabinet.
Right.
How many people do you think you need to be successful, in your opinion?
Well, that's, that's a really good question, and as I sit here, I don't think I could probably answer it. I think
I know that, I'm just, I'm just trying to, what do you think? I mean, you need, you need two, three people for sure?
I've thought about
Let me help you.
Yeah.
Let me help you. What he's saying is, you've got three and a half billion dollar operation, 50,000 or so students
Right.
And, and six, 10,000 employees
Twenty.
20,000. And one president, and everybody's running to him.
Yeah.
Including football people, athletics
Legislators.
Legislators.
Yep.
He's, he's just, he's, he's swamped. Now, does he need a, a senior vice president, a chancellor? What's he need? Somebody waving a wand on you and saying, hey, man, you're coming to do this work? What, what, what's your optimal, what's your perfect world in terms of making this work? Do you need a chancellor?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good question. So there's a balance between, you know, accessibility and having enough folks that are going to be taking a lot of the incoming from a lot of different places. Now, when I was at the White House, I had 600 university faculty, I had the entire Congress coming at me, I had lots and lots and lots of things, and we had a staff of, in the whole, in the whole organization, 80 people.
How many?
Eighty. Eight zero.
Eighty?
Eight zero. Eighty, eighty, eighty people.
We can't afford that. Cut it back a bit.
So I think, I think part of it is, is how many, and part of it is the right people who don't insulate you, which is, I think, exactly the wrong thing to have happen. That's where problems really arise, when the president is out of touch. That is not me. I want to know what's going on. I want to know not every detail, but, but the worst thing people could do in trying, with their intention of being helpful, is say, well, he doesn't need to know that yet. That is a recipe for trouble. So, you know, as I look at the organization, you know, we have the executive vice president and provost, various EVPs, we have a chief of staff, as I look at this. I think, I've given thought to people that I would perhaps look to bring in, people that I know and trust, that they're really, really good and they, they share my philosophy here, and it's a handful of people.
What would those positions be? What would, what, okay, those people, that's where I'm
Yeah.
Okay, what would those positions be? What would we call, what would there be their title, these five people that you may bring in?
So I would say, again, I have to be a little careful here because I know other people in that position.
No, 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 we're just talking out loud. I'm just trying to get a feel for you.
We're real down.
I mean, I just met you, I'm just trying to get a feel for you, what you think, how you think.
Sure.
I'm not trying to pin you down.
No, no, that's, no, absolutely, no problem. So there is a chief of staff now, and I don't completely understand her role. I know what chief, I had a chief of staff in the White House, I never had one before, but, but that was very, very helpful. I think, you know, an executive vice president over the system, that basically is, you know, the provost has that title, executive vice president and, and the provost, so I need to understand what her, what her purview is. I know she works with the provost at all the campuses and so on. And I think those two positions, I think, having a, have a really outstanding chief of staff and an executive vice president for the campus and probably for the system, who really function as sort of the, the second in command from the president and the chancellor in another case, that they really can, can, you know, do a lot of the work before it comes to the president, before it comes to the chancellor. So I could envision, you know, three, five, six people like that. But again, I, I don't want to make people nervous by, by saying certain things and then saying, well, we already have that structure, so I'm, I'm speaking a little bit out of ignorance. But what I do want, or I could talk about the principles, okay? I don't want to be isolated, I want to be accessible, but I don't want to deal with all the minutia. There's a great leadership team here, the president needs to empower them, resource them, support them, get behind them, provide air cover for them, and, and stay out of their way, but also stay very, very connected with them. And so whatever structure I would bring in would have to achieve those principles. And I can't imagine it being 10 or 20 people, I'm talking about, you know, a handful.
Yeah. And so who would deal with the other chancellors, the other, other satellites? You directly?
Yeah.
You directly, or you're going to, or you're going to delegate that to?
No, me directly, absolutely. No, no, that's, that's a given.
So that's mainly main camp, what you're telling us, main campus personnel working under you to manage this system?
Right, right, yes, yeah. I think, you know, the president working with the chancellors very closely, Title IX very closely, and the AD very closely, and, and of course, legal counsel and, and all those folks. So I don't know, again, it's a little confusing in the org charts and knowing what reports directly to the president because there was a lot of stuff under other people, but, so I want to get clarity on that. But certainly, legal counsel, AD, the provost, certainly, student affairs, those kinds of folks, having a cabinet plus all the chancellors, absolutely, yeah.
Further questions? Anybody else?
Going once, going twice.
Dr. Drogomire, I got the privilege of talking with you the other night.
Yeah, good to see you.
Yes, and we, we get to talk about students in your class, and you get to talk about collaborative projects there.
Yeah.
Part of your job would be collaborating with students. How do you plan on doing that from an administrative role? How much of that did you do as the head of research for Oklahoma? And do you think that'll be a transitional thing that you'll have to get used to with this position?
Yeah. No, I live from working with students. In fact, when I was at the White House, I chaired the President's Council of Advisors on Science Technology, which is a, a group of anywhere from, oh, 16, 18 to, you know, 24 people drawn from all across the country. They're, they're experts in, in science technology, they're leaders in their field, they're fairly senior people. And I did something at the White House that had never been done before. I said, I want to have students in this organization because they own the future, they're creative individuals, they have tremendous intellectual energy. And so I created something called the Student Postdoc and Early Career Spec Committee on PCAS. And they had undergrad students, graduate students, postdocs, and early career non-academic professionals like, you know, entrepreneurs and things like that. And they absolutely hit the ball out of the park. And I have to tell you, there was some significant fear in me doing this because, well, these people are going to be tweeting out things and so on and so forth, and we're not going to be able to control. I mean, like, no, I trust, I trust the next generation, and I know these folks. And we got incredible folks, and they made an enormous contribution. So that gives you an example of, I'm willing to, to face some very serious headwinds a lot of times to do what I know needs to be done, and that is to get students at the table. That's why I still teach, you know, I, students feed me, they feed me this, this wonderful intellectual energy. So how would I work with students? There's very formal ways to do it, right? Through student government, making sure that the students are there not after the decisions are made, but when decisions are in the early stages, when the problems are being discussed. Their input is extremely important. I found that to be valuable my entire career, to also engage with them in an informal way. I know the Greek system is always a challenge, and if you're not, you know, as part of the Greek system, which I've not been, then I couldn't possibly understand it. Well, that's a fair question, right? So how can I, I've not been in the military either, but I certainly feel I understand the military. So I think I just want people to give me a chance and say, look, let's hang out together, let me understand where you're coming from because I need your input. I need you to be part of the, part of the solution and part of the process of, of discussion. So to me, it's a, it's a continuous engagement, and it's not just a one-off kind of thing. When students are developing legislature, legislation in the student government, I'd like to know about that. I'd like to know what, what the forcing functions are, what are they thinking, you know, things like that. And maybe there are some things that I could offer in terms of perspective they don't have, where they might say, oh, hey, now that we know that, well, let's, let's think about it from this point of view. So I'm, I'm, that's why I'm at a university of students. We're all, you know, that's, that's why universities even exist. And so, yeah, I've included students up and down the line, and, and that would be very, very important to me here.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mallon.
Doc, we get back to politics and everything that goes on over here. This place is, it's a fight every day.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to tell you, a major fight every day. It's a battle.
Right.
I hope you have the tenacity to tackle this because it will, I've seen it, the last president took a toll, I seen it take a toll on the interim. This is a tough place, especially with everything that's going on, not counting everything else that goes on in this place. Are you ready for that? Are you ready for this day-to-day grind? And I mean, they're going to knock you to your knees, you're going to have to get up, and I mean, it's just a battle royale. I'm being very honest with you, I'm not trying to scare you, I'm just being very truthful because I've been here for a while. And I, I just want you to know, this is no cakewalk here.
Right.
It's very serious, and it can really bring a person down. And I want you to know that.
I appreciate that very much. And, and Mr. Brown, I had part of that conversation the other night, and, and actually, President Gallagher and I talked about that day before yesterday. Going in with your eyes open is always a good thing. And I guess, I guess ultimately, for me, you do have to have really thick skin. Like I said, as a vice president for research, I think I would have been okay prepared, but I wouldn't have been ready. Being at the White House helped a heck of a lot in terms of that sort of thing. But I know I'm not alone in this, and that, I think, is the important point that I would make, that, yes, you are the president, but you have around you some extraordinary people who can help you. And what is wonderful about the ethos of the South is, we're here to support one another, help one another, lift one another up when you go through tough times. It gets, gets pretty lonely, it gets pretty tough. And at the end of the day, people need to be encouraged, they need to be resourced and supported. So I would know that I was not in alone, but I would not be going in with my eyes closed. I know it's tough stuff. And, and I, I could tell you that I'm sure that a year from now, I'd be sitting here and say, you know what, you said it was going to be tough, I didn't realize how tough it was. And I, I'm quite certain that's going to be the case. And I'm quite certain that's going to be the case.
As long as you don't quit, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll get on the ship with you, just don't jump off the ship.
There's far too much at stake. You know, when you think about what LSU does, you know, people come and drop their kids off here, I say that figuratively, but sort of real, and they entrust them to our care. They entrust their health, they entrust their mental well-being, their mental health, they entrust their safety, and they entrust their intellectual development. And those are high stakes. And so when the times get tough, not taking your eye off the ball is what really helps get me through the tough times, is making sure you never lose sight of why you're here.
Thank you, sir.
I've got one last question.
Mr. Temple has said he has one last question. Good, Mr. Temple.
He's going to ask me if it's going to rain tomorrow, right?
Almost. Almost. So like, so you fool around with Bush, you fool around with Barack, you fool around with Trump. I want to know how many times you met either of the gentlemen, if ever? What was your engagement?
Yep.
How tough was it to work for a guy who doesn't believe in global warming, and you're a space guy yourself? So how was that? I'm just curious.
Yep.
How'd you manage that? How'd you get to? You're obviously a brilliant man because you don't get to touch the president.
You're giving me too much credit.
No, no, seriously, you can't get there if you're not smart as hell. No, you can't get there to the presidency, so.
No, you know, I take it really as a point of pride to having been nominated for a presidential appointment by President George W. Bush, and by Barack Obama, and by Trump as well. Because it shows that, you know, the world that I lived in, the world of science and technology, was nonpartisan, and that I myself, in that regard, am nonpartisan. And so that was really powerful to me, and it said a lot because sometimes you can tell people something, but when you see that happen, you know, you realize it. So with President George W. Bush, I never met with him or President Obama because during those appointments, I was on the National Science Board. And even though, I think President Johnson might have been the last, I'd be careful here, I'm pretty sure he met with the Science Board, but neither of them did to my knowledge. Now, when I was in the White House the last two years, I was with the president quite a bit. I was in the Oval Office a lot, I was in the Situation Room a lot with him, we were making various decisions and so on. And yeah, it's tough. I also worked closely with the vice president, I flew with him multiple times on Air Force Two. And, you know, you never lose your sense of the importance of the job that you're at when you're at the White House. You never walk down the steps, you never walk into the White House without saying, "Oh, my God, I'm at the White House, I've got to, you know, I've got to have my full-on game face on today, the stakes are super high." And it was an extraordinary, extraordinary privilege and opportunity, but it was also tough. It was also tough. You know, I mean, tough in the sense of, these people ask very tough questions. I'm not smart, they're connected, and they're smart. And so, yeah, but it was, it developed me. You know, I'm 62, but I learned a heck of a lot by being there. And like I said, I think it prepared me for this five years ago, four years ago. I wouldn't be sitting here before you, I don't think I was ready. But that helped me get ready, it really did.
Couple more questions before we break.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Drogomire, I've really appreciated your comments on students and engagement and all those things. As a mother of a graduating student and incoming student, it really touches me to hear someone speak so passionately about the importance of our students' experience, taking care of them, around all the conversations we've had today. But I'd like to circle back and ask you a little bit more, I'm looking back at my notes from your interview with the search committee, and to go back to research, touch on research just a moment. And I've looked through this, and I see, and I wrote it down here, "vision and bold." And we know that research is one of our greatest opportunities for not just our students and our faculty, but really putting LSU back in the national conversation as it well should be. Would you talk about, you made a comment in the search committee interview about bringing all diversity together, especially our marginalized and rural communities, and then how to make tangible change? And I'd really like you to expand on that a little bit today, if you don't mind.
In the context of research?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So, thank you for the really good question. So, research is about creating new knowledge, right? I mean, fundamentally, it's about, the very early-stage research is about discovering new things, about chasing your curiosity. And it's not just about so-called STEM fields, but it's about arts and fine arts and humanities and social and behavioral sciences. And a comprehensive university, some people don't think of themselves as researchers. Folks in art history oftentimes don't, but I say, "Look, you're scholars, you're really scholars." So I think one of the things that I find most important about a scholarship in a university is engaging the entirety of the university. I think we need to take a hard look at why we're where we're at right now, and this is one of the things I did as vice president for research. When I came into that office, I started looking at a lot of data that no one had ever looked before, looked at before, and the story that we were telling the board was completely opposite of what the reality was. And so that helped me understand what we needed to do to actually go to the next level. And it was partly getting folks engaged in research that hadn't been, where there was an expectation of them doing research. And frankly, to be honest, the deans didn't know this. And so we did a lot of analysis that opened the eyes of deans a great deal about how their college and how their faculty were underperforming. Now, we didn't do that to beat the faculty up. We said, "Look, this is a challenge, this is a problem." So we asked the question, "What did you come to this university to do? Are you not wanting to go set the world on fire in your own field and things like that?" So we started to have those conversations to really kind of crawl into minds of faculty. This is a bit in the weeds, but it's important because these are the folks that are really the ones who are driving the research enterprise. So you really have to kind of think about where they're coming from. And then the question is, did we have the resources and the tools necessary to achieve the goals that we wanted to achieve, to go where we thought we needed to be as a university? And the answer was absolutely not. And fundamentally, we found out that faculty were afraid to think bigger. Because if they landed a big fish, they didn't think they could haul it in the boat and skin the thing. And so we started a leadership academy to help faculty understand how to not be afraid, how to not be afraid of the administration, but how to not be afraid of success. And that was very, very helpful in unlocking a lot of the potential that was resonant within the faculty. Now, that's down in the weeds. So then the question is, institutionally, what are our priorities? Where do we want to go? So we could say, "We want to, you know, improve health outcomes and stuff like that." That's kind of a, it's a great statement, but it's sort of meaningless at the end of the day when somebody says, "Well, what does that mean for me?" So we tried to bring it to the level of an individual faculty, and then start to look around and say, "Okay, what are our strengths?" And so we had various areas of strengths, but then we said, "Okay, suppose you take human health, you take environment and meteorology, what we have at OU, and then we take maybe one other thing, we put them together, say biomedical engineering, and we have a cluster that is like, wow, we didn't see that because we never looked at the university in that manner. We only looked at these centers of capability." But when you put them together, and these folks oftentimes didn't talk to one another. So when you start that conversation, then they start to brainstorm and think, "Wow, we could be doing this, this, and this." So it gets beyond their own narrow field, their own particular areas of interest, but you help them see the broader aspects of the institution of where we're going. And then we strategically invested in those areas. And we didn't pick 20 areas, we picked like four or five, and we, in almost all cases, one exception, but we really owned that, in one case, we owned it in the world, in about 10, 12 years. And so this is opportunity for students. We tend to think of research as being, you know, research, but remember, students are the foundation of it. Undergraduate students perform a huge amount of research, and they're doing typically, in some cases, master's-level work. And undergraduate students, you know, we don't need grants to fund them. So, you know, we want graduate students, we want to get them funded on grants and so on, but we have to have the support, the framework, we have to have the mentality as an institution. And I'll tell you what, one thing I've learned, and a colleague of mine and I talk about this a lot, faculty are the same everywhere. They really are. I've talked to faculty at Berkeley, and Caltech, and Yale, and Harvard, and Oklahoma, and Oklahoma State, and, you know, here. And you'd think that, wow, other places have it going on. These are problems that are common across all institutions. Some institutions are better resourced than others. So moving the research enterprise forward, it's not a mystery of how to do that. You just have to go in and have the process of doing it. And then you look at LSU and all the capabilities across all the organizations, you're not just talking about one university and one health center campus, you've got Ag, you've got all these areas that when you bring them together, and you start looking at the grand problems that we could address that are uniquely LSU, they're not something that Mississippi could do, or Oklahoma or Texas, they belong in our wheelhouse, so let's go figure out what those are, and let's go after them big, big time. And that's what I think we need to be doing. And I think that will get donors excited, it gets the faculty excited, and it will move the institution forward to the level where it deserves to be. And it's not where it should be right now. Based on everything I see here, there's a lot of unrealized potential. But on the other hand, let me say, folks are doing really good stuff here. There's a, one of the deans told me, there's an experiment that's going to be landing on the moon, we planted the American flag, and there's the LSU logo right there on the moon as well. That is just amazing, right? So those stories need to be told, and as Mr. Brown and I talked about the other night, it's the environment here, political, right? Some people don't want those stories to be told, they're not really supportive like they should be. That ends, that ends now. Those stories are going to get told, we're going to build that trust, that relationship to where people say, "LSU is helping me individually, they're doing research that makes a difference." Those, you know, $500 million, $350 million expenditures, that's all well and good, but that doesn't resonate with folks, you know, down in the trenches. That's the connective tissue that we want to build and will build, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir. Your credentials, your experience, and your interest in LSU are very impressive, and I'm enjoying getting to know you. What do you feel like is your, and I hope this hasn't been asked on the phone, what do you think you're, based on what you have to offer versus the other two candidates, I'm assuming you may have read about them. What do you feel like you uniquely have to offer LSU that's different from other candidates?
To be perfectly honest, I didn't look at them. And that was intentional on my part because I feel like I want to be competing against myself. I think, I know that whoever you brought in, they've got to be really amazing. And me being able to sit here and be in the company of two who I know are extraordinary individuals is just, you know, it's a huge honor. I think what I bring is the fact that I've been a professor for 36 years, I've gone up through the ranks, but I've done a lot of things that are a little bit different than a traditional professor in terms of running a lot of large research centers. I founded a private company, I've worked a lot of bringing money in from private companies, I helped build the research, what we call the Research Campus at OU, which is the counterpart of your innovation park. We built a million square feet in less than 10 years, and there's academic buildings, there's private sector buildings. So part of it is building the campus, but part of it is populating the campus and incentivizing and getting people excited about what it means to be on our campus. And so having that professorial experience, the fact that students are my lifeblood, they're the heartbeat of why I'm in academia, I would never want to be in anyplace else. But then also, I would say, the experience in the governor's cabinet, working a lot with the legislature, which I did before, I worked with the legislature a lot before I went in the cabinet, but that experience, and then of course, at the national level, the National Science Board, working there, being the OSTP director at the White House, and then acting director of the National Science Foundation. So I have that perspective, and I think the connectivity and the knowledge of how the federal government works, testifying before Congress 12 times, you know, when you do that, you gain a lot of experience and hopefully some wisdom. I don't know that I have great wisdom, but I know a lot of people that are my mentors who I turn to in times when I say, "You're really wise, I have experience, but you're really wise." So I try to always keep that in mind. So those are kind of the attributes, I think, that I bring. And I'm just a regular guy, I really am. You know, you describe me as brilliant, I don't see myself as brilliant, I see myself as somebody who's been so fortunate, growing up in a small town and a very low-middle-class family, who was able, through various ways, to be here today, and, you know, that is such a thing for me that I love. If I don't get this job, I want to stay connected to you all. Like I said, I'm not looking for a job, I'm looking for a place to pour in my passion. This is probably the last thing that I'm going to do, it's not a stepping stone or anything like that. And that's just, you know, I love universities, I've come to really have a great affection for LSU in the short time I've been here, despite walking past that trophy every day. So I, you know, I hope that helps, Mr. Brown, to answer your question, but, yeah, you bet.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Dr. Drogomire, I thank you very much. Did you have a comment?
If there's one thing I could do just quickly here, and this is probably a non-issue, but there's some sort of stuff swirling out there about me being a climate denier, okay? And I welcome any kind of debate, that's what universities are about, I like this stuff. But I want to make sure that you all know what the truth is, okay? I welcome debate, sometimes debate gets really emotional, but it always ought to be based on facts, okay? So if I might, just for a quick second, just make sure you all understand, in case you become aware of this and you're not sure, just a few data points, including articles, a few excerpts from articles in the Washington Examiner, the Washington Post, and the New York Times. And I understand people's sense of this, but I could cite a lot of things, a lot of stuff before I went to the White House, like co-chairing a report on hurricane science and engineering, which we had Mary Landru, who was a strong supporter of this back in this, like, 2007, where we talked in that report, it's on the National Science Board, I co-chaired this, about the importance of climate change and hurricanes. When I was VPR, I put $1 million into climate research to fund several things, but also a South Central Climate Science Center, of which LSU is a key component. And that parlayed into $50 million for LSU, excuse me, for Louisiana, New Mexico, Texas, Oklahoma. And so that's an indication as well. But I wanted specifically to read a couple of things here that I hope will be beyond whatever I tell you, that you'll see that this is the truth, that I support, I understand, believe climate change and so on. There was a question.
Fifty million apiece or?
What's that? No, 50, no, wouldn't that be great?
I understand, yeah.
No, it was 50 million total.
How much did Louisiana get of that?
How much did?
How much did Louisiana get?
I'd have to find out for you.
I'm just curious. Numbers, I catch numbers, I just.
Yeah, it was, to be honest, it was $1 million, $50,000 invested from the VPR office, money that I put in, and it was around $50 million apparently that, you know, was, but I can get you that number if you want, because I'm actually curious now that you mention that myself. So there was a question about that I should have prevented the last administration pulling out of the Paris Climate Accord. That happened 18 months before I went to the White House, so it's hard to prevent something from happening if that happens 18 months before you go there. But I mostly wanted to read to you these excerpts from these news places. First of all, Vice News, "Drogomire said he does believe climate change is occurring and humans play a significant role in it." Washington Examiner, "Climate change is happening, there's no question about it," he said, referring to me. "The question is, what are we doing about it?" This is also in the Washington Examiner. "Drogomire, in his former roles," this is before I went to the White House, "has criticized efforts by congressional Republicans to cut funding for climate research." Another article says, "According to several sources, Drogomire played a significant role in arguing against the creation of a White House panel in 2019 that would have served as a major platform for climate denial." That was New York Times. Then finally, the Washington Post. "It came as a surprise when this person who we brought into the White House was selected to lead the National Climate Assessment in November because she is considered a mainstream climate scientist, does not question the seriousness of climate change like other scientists who were installed by the Trump administration to work on the issue. She accepts that human-induced climate change is happening and that it is a substantial physical, ecological, and economic threat. She was picked by Kelvin Drogomire, the director of OSTP. Although a Trump appointee, Drogomire was on the record as accepting climate change is real." So if you all hear these rumors or whatever, I wanted you to know factually what the record actually says and know where I stand on climate, because it's important to Louisiana.
We're from Louisiana, we hear stuff all the time.
What's that? Yeah, I mean, this is so important to the state of Louisiana, there's so much opportunity here for the College of Coastal Environment and other things to work on a lot of these issues. So I didn't want any ambiguity in your minds about this issue. So I hope that was appropriate, Mr. Chairman, that I brought that up. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
And Dr. Drogomire, let me say this on behalf of everyone, it has been an honor to have you participate in this process.
Thank you.
I obviously have no idea how it will end up. You're an outstanding candidate, you're an amazingly impressive person, and we are all richer for having met you, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We will now, we will now take as brief as we can lunch break, and then we'll come back for our third candidate. Thank you, everyone. We'll go to recess.
I'll put it to you this way.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will return to order. I think we've got everybody. Our next candidate is Dr. William Bill Tate. Dr. Tate, welcome, we're very happy to have you here, sir. And the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you all for your tremendous hospitality. My wife and I really enjoyed our experiences here. A special treat was going to Shreveport, never been to Shreveport before despite living in Dallas for many years. It was an outstanding experience with an amazing institution doing great things, and it was also special yesterday spending time with this group. I'd just like to say a couple of things to you. First of all, I'd like to ask you to imagine you started this search some time ago, and while you were searching, you found someone who had leadership experiences at a flagship institution, had been an effective leader at a public land grant, sea grant, and sea space, space grant institution, had direct responsibility for not one, but two academic medical centers, just like LSU, had been responsible for a school of law, very similar to the one here, had nearly a decade of experience in the biomedical sciences, had direct oversight for colleges and schools that mirror the LSU system schools, in terms of the teaching and learning mission, had 30-plus years' experience at two-year, four-year graduate and professional education environments, was actually the epidemiologist to help manage through a pandemic, had trained in prevention and prevention science and trauma-informed work, so to bring oversight to ongoing efforts to advance Title IX and move the institution in a positive fashion in that front. Had been an award-winning researcher that values scholarship and its relationship to community and workforce, someone who deeply cared about the American South and the people of the South, and actually knew something about sports, had been a coach, mentor, FAR, and been involved with championship athletics for many, many years. What would you have said if that person was sitting right before you? Well, that's what's happening right now. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and spend time with you, answer any questions you have. And let me begin this, or my remarks, by saying, you should ask me anything you want. Don't be politically correct, keep it as real as you possibly can, because I'm ready to be as transparent as you need me to be in this process. And I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. We will open it up for questions.
He's giving me the signal that I can go.
Mr. Mallett, you have the floor, sir.
Well, Dr. Tate, it's good to see you here, I heard a lot about you. And I'm impressed with your academia. But you need to tell me, after only years' provo, which is your management experience, correct? This is a big institution. Tell me, if you can, why you're the man. Tell me, if you can, why you're the man.
Well, in my introduction remarks, which I was hoping to take off your question off the table, bottom line is, every single entity that you have in this system, I have direct and successful management experience dealing with it. So let's start. We'll start, first of all, with flagship environment. Currently doing that, spent ten years at Madison before my current experience at a flagship institution, very similar to this, University of Wisconsin-Madison. In terms of medicine, I'm directly responsible for two medical schools, at Washington University in St. Louis, which is one of the top academic medical centers in the United States of America. I was responsible and had direct oversight for biomedical science, which is aligned with your current situation in the biomedical sciences, sir. In terms of two-year schools, I'm probably one of the few people here who actually spent many years teaching in two-year schools, teaching mathematical sciences, and have a great passion for those institutions in terms of creating opportunity. And if you look at the portfolio of a provost or a graduate dean, we're completely responsible for the totality of the academic enterprise in comprehensive environments, and the curriculum, the faculty oversight, et cetera. So if you think about it in some, after thirty-plus years, every single piece of this organization that the president/chancellor is responsible for, I have had effective and successful oversight of those types of entities.
I'm not arguing that you're very experienced in academia, but you've only been a provo for how long?
For this academic year, sir.
How long?
For this academic year.
One year. That's what you got to convince me, that just one year gives you the experience to manhandle this big thing. Because let me tell you something about this place. Every day's a battle here. It's, I'm one of the, I'm the only board member who was here for the last presidential search. And I've seen what it does, this thing's mean. Besides the dated activities you're going to be exposed to, we have our Title IX issues, which you're familiar with, where you're coming from. Y'all have had some issues there, too. But the legislature's across the street, and it ain't gonna be fun. I'm gonna tell you before you get here. The only question is, are you ready to tackle this? Because, you know, I don't, I don't mind getting on that ship with you. I just want you to assure me that if you get on this ship, you're not gonna quit on me. That's a concern, because this thing eats people up. It is a vicious thing that goes on. Day in, day out, the battle here will wear you down. And they are going to wear you down. I promise you. That being said, if we choose you, I'll be there with you. But tell me you're not gonna quit on me. Tell me why I should go with you, after I just told you what, you know, and I assure you that I understand that you've been up against a lot in your life already. So have I. I've experienced a lot. So tell me, convince me.
Well, sir, because in essence, you're asking about my fortitude and less about my experience. So let's talk about fortitude. I have matriculated to this point through many, many challenges. But I always go back to athletics, and we were talking a bit about that before the cameras started rolling. So I'm a cross-country guy, track guy, basketball guy. You never quit. You're in pain, you don't quit. You don't quit on your teammates, you don't quit on the process. This is just how I've been trained. You fall down, you get up, and you keep going. In terms of the General Assembly, which is what I deal with in South Carolina and the legislative groups, I was told the exact same thing you're saying before I went to South Carolina. They're tough, they're gonna run you out, it's gonna be difficult, it's a supermajority Republican, there are only a few Democrats, as if that mattered to me, because everybody's foundationally interested in opportunity. And since I've been there, I have built a unique and positive relationship with that group. So much so, sir, people text me and saying, come on back, don't stay there. But I'm here with you because I believe you need someone, just like I described in my earlier remarks. And would I quit? I have never quit anything in my life that I've started. And if you ask anyone about me, they will say, that guy's gonna persevere. And I'm not just gonna persevere, I'm gonna be successful. I have no fear at all of this, none. I'm 100% committed to being successful. This is an outstanding institution. You deserve somebody who is going to fight for it and to give opportunities in this state, and will not back down in any form or fashion. That is who I am, because the question is really about fortitude. And I have no doubt in my mind that it will be challenging, but fear, retreat, not possible.
Well, wait, wait, let me finish. Please, let me finish.
Sure.
Well, I've been in business since I was fifteen, and I agree with fortitude. But my experiences is what's made me tough, just like a piece of steel. The more you beat on it, the stronger it becomes. So I agree with you about the fortitude, but I assure you, your experience is very important to me, and I'm talking from my own experiences, okay? So I see a lot of experience with you, Dr. Tate, and I compliment you for that. But once again, a year is good, two is better, three is better, so and so. But, and I do appreciate the passion I just seen. That does make me feel good, that you won't quit, because I'm the same way. And so I want to tell you that, I'm gonna let him ask a question, because I want to comment that, and I'm gonna come back to you.
Whoa, 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 Mr. Temple. I wanted to follow up on, because I thought there was a hint of a disconnect there, talking about the one year at South Carolina in-
As a provo.
As provost and the management, but clarify, at Wash U, you had a great deal of administrative experience as well, is that correct?
So let's walk through administrative experience, and let's not even start at Wash U. Let's start with the fact that when I was about twenty-five years old, I assumed responsibility in, as an administrator, in one of the largest school districts in the United States with over a billion-dollar budget. I'm twenty-five, and I'm managing the mathematical sciences in the Dallas Independent School District. They asked me to come back to be Assistant Superintendent while I was responsible for thousands of teachers and hundreds of thousands of students in a billion-dollar organization, successfully implementing a strategic plan, implemented in such a way that our test scores went up. That's just my public service part. Now we get to Wash U, and we're looking at an organization with over $816 million of research expenditure, sir. Juxtapose that to this complexity, that is actually a war. And I'm being really honest with you about it, in the sense that that's a hugely complex environment, with a major academic medical center, and hundreds of programs linked now to, and this is the one part I think that really needs to be talked about. This year in American higher education was the most difficult year probably in its history. We had to manage and keep the doors open during the middle of a pandemic and offer high-quality academic programs. So when we talk about my one year as provost, I made it one year as provost, we had not one case of COVID happening in a structural environment. We followed the CDC rules. We laid out a plan that was absolutely masterful to get through this year, with tremendous success on tuition revenue, and laid a groundwork for the future of that university. So I'm extremely proud of that one year, because it actually was a game-changing year. And that kind of skill set is what I bring to this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Temple, now.
So your professional and academic skill set is stellar, and so the socialization that you will have to deal with is gonna be challenging, to say the least. You grew up in Chicago, you went to somewhere, Milwaukee, and then you came south, you came to Dallas. You came to Dallas and you did secondary education in Dallas, starting at some age, twenty, early twenties, twenty-five, you got a pretty big break to do some major stuff. And I'm trying to take you through your travels to this place. So now, a couple of questions. The people, the people that manage, control, have the most influence at this institution, which is directly connected to this state, are their age ranges from what to what? You understand my question? What's the age, what's the age range, in your opinion? The folk that control the financial institutions, control the political environments, manage, what's the age range?
That would be speculative on my part, but if I were speculating-
Speculate.
Historically, in most places, the individuals who have accrued longer periods of life-
Okay.
-tend to have more power and influence and money.
Okay.
And therefore, I would imagine they would be fifty-five or older.
I say fifty, I'm just, you say fifty-five, older, that makes sense. I say fifty to eighty-five. They're still pretty active in terms of making stuff happen. And their gender, the agenda, majority, the agenda, what's the gender?
Well, I don't know the agenda of every individual-
Not a gender, gender.
Oh, gender. I would imagine they would be male.
Male. And their race?
In light of the demographics, I would probably say-
Demographically, the race.
Uh, white.
So white men between fifty, eighty-five. In this environment, under these circumstances, under these conditions, under this, all of the social trauma we're faced, have faced recently and face it now, so how do you operate in that system as an African-American man, taking that issue on in the deep south, the deepest of the deep south? How do you handle that? Can you handle that?
Well, absolutely. I'm in South Carolina, and I was in the Show Me State of Missouri for eighteen years, successful. While Missouri is not the deep south, it is most definitely a border-south state.
On that line, Missouri, on that line, not below the line.
But let's talk a little bit about background. So yes, I am from Chicago, which, if I'm from Chicago, what does that really mean if I'm from the south side of Chicago?
You tell us.
That really means I'm from Mississippi. Because everybody who lives on the south side of Chicago, or most blacks who live on the south side of Chicago, migrated from Mississippi. My grandparents, my grandfather's from Oxford, Mississippi.
Illinois Central Railroad.
And my grandmother was from Mount Bayou in the Delta of Mississippi. So I spent my youth going back south on a regular basis. When I finished undergraduate school, I moved to Dallas, Texas, and had a successful career in Dallas. Demographically, it's not much different than here. And then I moved on to Maryland, where it was not very much different than here. And then I moved to Wisconsin, which was a little different than here. And subsequently moved back to Dallas again, and I do consider myself a naturalized Texan, no offense to you all in Louisiana, but that's the first love I have in terms of a state. And from there, I moved to Missouri and spent many years, and now in South Carolina. And let's talk about South Carolina, where I've been for one year, and the experiences I've had there. It's been extremely positive. I've been able to work with the General Assembly, with the governor's office, and do it in an effective way that we're able to generate revenue for the institution and advance the institution in a positive way. So much so, that people feel very comfortable with me, and quite frankly, don't want me to be here. That should be a sign. It's not like they're pushing me out. People like what I've been able to get done and feel very comfortable with the leadership I provided in a context that I don't think is much different than here. It's an SEC school in the heart of the south. Very comfortable working with people across the aisle, because I have never found a situation where folks aren't interested in creating opportunity for their neighbors. And if you ask me how I make it here, I live by one question. Who is my neighbor? That's my foundational question as a researcher as well. And let me say this, sir. Most people who ask that question in the social sciences only want to describe their neighbor. But I take a full biblical perspective on it. I don't want to just describe you, I want to help you. That's the twofold process in which I've lived and operated in my career. It's foundational to who I am. I will not deviate from that in any setting. And if I'm here under duress, sir, that question still will drive who I am as a leader.
Thank you, sir. Next question.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Warner.
Dr. Tate, it's good to see you again, and thank you for spending some time with us in Louisiana this week. I'm gonna ask a question that I've asked all the candidates today, and it goes back to research. So I'd like to kind of pivot back to academics and research here. The missions of LSU's Ag Center, Pennington Biomedical, and our two health science centers, as well as the flagship A&amp;M campus, include research. What is your vision for research across the entire LSU system?
Love the question. Based upon my assessment over the last forty-eight hours of the institution, there's a unique opportunity to create alignment with respects to the health sciences more broadly. I'm gonna be frank with you here on the air, I don't see them connected, I see them disjointed. There's an opportunity to actually build out a scale in the health sciences. And if we want to think about it, what's foundational to a state's educational attainment? It's actually being successful in health, because a healthy brain is a successful student. And you have to start there. It's foundational to whatever you do. So linking the medical schools in a broader biomedical sciences and population science in a really powerful way, I think is low-hanging fruit here at LSU and a unique opportunity. I have that kind of background. That's what I did at Wash U, that's what I'm doing now at the University of South Carolina. That's one. Number two, if we don't want the state of Mississippi to be the new border for the United States of America, it's important to take care of the ocean and the border around it. Louisiana is that. So in my opinion, we've got to be really, really strong in terms of looking at the ecology around the border and the ocean and the sea grant mission of this institution. It's got to be foundational for whatever happens going forward. I also think there's a unique opportunity here, over and above the health sciences and the work around Earth and planetary, is the way I would describe it, to actually build out very strong investment in faculty in specific disciplines. When I looked at the strategic plan, you know, you mentioned the arts, you mentioned culture, that's foundational here in Louisiana when you think about tourism as workforce development. Those areas you want to be very strong in. That means getting great faculty. And I just want to speak a little bit about faculty when you talk about research. It's foundational to what needs to happen. And I think that, right now, just in talking to faculty, the morale is a bit low. What does that mean? That means you're gonna lose your stars, because the people who are most likely to leave are the ones who have the greatest skill set. It's incumbent upon the system to actually invest in and make sure that you can retain both your junior-level stars and those who have really made the highest level accomplishments. And so for me, it would be a priority to invest in the faculty, to make sure they have the resources they need to be successful across disciplines. But I still would hold up the pillars of the health and the actual Earth and planetary science focus, because that's missions critical to this organization. If folks think I'm ignoring Ag, it's not, because food is related to what? Health. And so food is related to what? The actual Earth and planetary context. And so the agriculture part of it is linked in both ways, and I think that's what needs to happen here. And if that's strengthened, you have an opportunity here to be one of the very, very most prominent research entities in this country.
Could I have a quick follow-up?
Sure.
Some of my colleagues are gonna ask some of these questions, but you talked about junior faculty and our more senior faculty and our researchers. And so one of the challenges that we've, you know, come to really look at and discuss many times, and I'd like to get your thoughts on it, is how we, in this institution and across all the arms of LSU, work to diversify our faculty. It's a big challenge we have, and, you know, we want our faculty to reflect our population and our students. And it's something that this board is very, very committed to. So I'd like to get your thoughts on, you know, how we begin, in your thoughts on how we would begin to address that and continue the work that's been started already.
Well, I can offer you an example from my experiences at the University of South Carolina, because within one year, sir, this is what we accomplished. We built out a program to partner with our historically black colleges in the state, and it's a developmental pipeline to make sure we can, because the big excuse is, there's nobody in the pipeline. You'll hear that over and over again. So I said to our colleagues, let's build our own pipeline. So we are working with HBCUs in the state with three-two and four-one programs, making sure students in those institutions have an opportunity to come to the University of South Carolina, can enter into our environment, finish their undergraduate degrees at the HBCU, and get a graduate degree right there with us. We expanded what we, our professor development program, which is called the Grace McFadden Program, it historically only admitted PhD students. We added money through our strategic planning process to admit students who are degree-seeking, they've already completed their degrees, and they're either post-bac's and need to scaffold into a master's program. We're also funding them at the master's level and the PhD level. We increased the amount there. I also established a postdoctoral program for scholars who are traditionally underrepresented. So now we have a full way for you to enter into the University of South Carolina, either as an undergraduate, a post-bac, a master's student, a PhD student, or as a post-doc. The post-docs are partly funded by my office or by the school. The school has to make a commitment, if they're gonna bring a person in as a post-doc, that they will consider them for a faculty position. So we now have developed internally our own pipeline, which will allow us to address the question you described. We're not waiting on the marketplace to produce those individuals, we're gonna produce them ourselves. There is no reason that could not be replicated in this environment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
Dr. Tate, I had the privilege of spending several hours with you and your lovely wife, Kim. And I know, I know the good woman behind you has helped you what you are, because she's such a lovely person. And congratulations on your two children graduating from college next week, so I know that's a proud time for you. And our visit, I really appreciate and glad you could come to Shreveport, and I was able to travel up, back, and forth with you.
It was a highlight, sir.
Well, and I was, it was so interesting to hear your interaction with the faculty, the guests there, and how you viewed the programs that are going on at LSU, Larry Clark, and then we have Dr. Lewis and Dr. Fox here, and- And then we have Dr. Lewis and Dr. Fox here, and, uh, you, you were really engaged with them on the med schools. I, I was very, um, pleased to be part of that and, uh, thank you for that. And I, I, and I gave you one of my business cards showing a fifty-year in, in business. So I, I just, I've asked the same question to the other candidates and, and, uh, and that related to the fiscal, uh, matters of LSU, our system. And that's, and that's also on the, uh, on the, um, search committee's presidential responsibility, mentioned several times. And so, and that's been a, a real, uh, concern of mine and our, and, and share that with others at the board and, and our faculty and all, is getting enough funds in, in here to our system to be able to provide the, uh, salaries that we need to, to keep these stars and bring in more and, and to take, have the programs for our students and so forth. So, uh, and it is a, uh, big system to manage. And so how, how would you, uh, tell us how you would, uh, approach, uh, getting additional revenue sources, uh, for, for our system so we can grow this university to be the, be the outstanding university that we all want it to be?
It's a great question, sir. And, uh, I've learned over the last forty-eight hours just studying and talking to each of you. One, one of the unique challenges, I believe, is that unlike the rest, you know, you compete in a way for dollars with, uh, University of Louisiana system. And the way, uh, Louisiana is financing higher education is a people, it's like a people accounting system. It's very similar to what we did in K-12 education in Texas. And you know, how many heads you have in a room dictates how much the allocation is. When you're in a context of a research environment like LSU, especially one with a place like Pennington and, and other environments where the value added is because they're going to solve the cancer problem, or they're going to deal with diabetes and all these other things, but they're not, they don't have head count, um, you're disadvantaged even though what you're doing is actually flagshipping for, for the state and making a difference. And so one of the first things that needs to be tackled, in my opinion, is that what, what is the politics around just using a people accounting strategy for funding higher education when in fact LSU is adding tremendous value in many other ways and it's not being funded? You're actually being penalized for being great at research. And so the big question about research is, was important. I didn't mention it there. I was hoping somebody asked me about money. And, and I think that's really foundational, having conversations about changing that because that, that model is detrimental to actually having an elite flagship institution. Secondly, um, when you're talking about, uh, philanthropy and, and things of that sort, um, which I hope is part of your question about finance, I think it, it undergirds what has to happen here. Um, key to that, and, and let me say how I would begin. You have a strategic plan, which I had mentioned in my early interviews, that I couldn't tell whether it's for the system, for the, for, for the, this Baton Rouge campus. I, I couldn't, I couldn't make heads or tails of it. Here's how it normally works. You create a strategic plan with the idea of a capital campaign. And I know you're in the midst of one, but generally speaking, you do that and you have the big ideas in that strategic plan. And in the silent phase, you go in after the money for the big ideas. You announce when you're halfway done and then you drive it home, right? So I still think that needs to happen here because you've had a pause, perhaps because you had a change in, in leadership. And that strategic plan per se doesn't necessarily deal with the big things you might want to get after. I think that's a huge part of it. And then finally, um, sir, a big part of managing a system like this is really having to make hard decisions and being disciplined about strategic priorities. And in my opinion, if you don't have a real strategic plan that everyone buys into, then you're just democratizing mediocrity because you're going to spend money on all kinds of things that have nothing to do with advancing the agenda that is agreed upon by the board of supervisors and the leadership of the entity. And in point of fact, I, I, I'm going to say, that's a concern for me because that's a lack of discipline. And if you lack discipline, you're never going to be great. And a big part of what has to happen is that strategic plan has to be agreed upon by this body and used as the anchor for the decisions that are made from a financial perspective. The yes and no's happen with that document. And so, so that's how I would go about this and, and take the challenge on. And that would be the day one, actually, having a conversation with this body about what do we want to actually get done and then align our budget appropriately. You have great people dealing with finance here, and I would team with them to make sure I understood, um, the nuances of the Louisiana version. But I will say this, as I, as my economics professor used to tell me when I was young, arithmetic is arithmetic. We're adding numbers. And it's just a matter of the decision-making that has to happen after that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Morris.
Dr. Tate, how are you doing?
Doing well. How about you, sir?
A lot, a follow-up on, on Mr. Brown's question. What experience have you had with, uh, fundraising for universities experienced in the past?
Well, it started when I was at University of Wisconsin-Madison. As an assistant professor, I chaired our development for our department. How many assistant professors chair the development? I like it, so that's why I volunteered and I did it. Um, subsequently, I moved to Dallas as a assistant superintendent for math and science where I was engaged in fundraising for the school district with the different foundations that existed there in the city and was very successful at generating revenue, uh, for mathematics and science, uh, in D-I-S-D. Then I moved to what I consider to be the fundraising juggernaut that I, Washington University, where we completed a three-point-eight-five-billion-dollar, uh, campaign while I was dean. But it started before I was dean. In, in an environment like that, everyone is responsible for raising money. And so my show was on the road from the beginning when I took over as a department chair. I went around on tours across the country to talk to our alumni. Um, it was a regular part of what I did to describe what we had going. And even as a department chair, um, I, I got a grant from NSF, I'm going to give you an example, from NSF for ten million dollars. Fifty-three percent of that money goes to indirects. That's about five-point-three million. Um, I leveraged that to get a building, or I thought. And then we had a great idea. Why not get a building for social science more broadly? I already had five-point-three million indirect, and then we went to a benefactor. My job was to explain why we needed a social science building. That building stands today as one of the really, uh, starward buildings on that campus, Segal Hall. Beautiful edifice, and largely because of relationship with Mr. Segal, we were able to pull that off. Many, many examples of that sort exist. And I, my current, uh, role has been, I've been identified as the individual who has to come up with the big ideas and shop them around, um, with our alums with the University of South Carolina. We had an outside evaluator, just, just, you know, not bragging, an outside evaluator to come in to the University of South Carolina, point-blank, blank said in the evaluation, that's the guy you want on the road talking to people about money.
I have one follow-up.
Yes, sir.
Money is important, but equally important to me is my business is rural healthcare. In a small community, the parish is twelve thousand people. This community center of Oak Grove is twenty-five hundred people. We have an organization made up of fifty such rural hospitals throughout the state that serve and worry about the food interests you were talking about and the healthcare basis. How do you see, if you were president, LSU could help in that area to maintain those good health outcomes and partner with the rural community?
Well, in, in the, in my response, um, to your colleague about the strategic plan related to the science, a big part of what I said was health science. And I also talked about, um, you know, the agriculture part of it, that's food security and things of that sort. Um, I think it's foundational when you look at the state, I mean, it's, it's largely rural. Um, and I want to be deeply personal with this. I was, I consider myself an urbanist in my research. And something happened to me, um, about fifteen years ago. I do geospatial analysis, uh, Missouri, that was the work I was doing. And as I began to juxtapose in those maps, um, Kansas City and St. Louis juxtaposed it to the boot hill of South, of, of Missouri, I began to see that there were commonalities, uh, in terms of the, the way I would describe the factors that were influencing life course in some of the urban areas and the rural areas. And I'll tell you, sir, I, I went to a conference and I told my colleagues, I said, you know, I've been coming to you talking about St. Louis and Kansas City for a long time. I literally say I repent because I haven't looked at the data the way I should have. I was so focused on one entity that I wasn't noticing that my data actually was telling me about the boot hill and the challenges that were there. It changed me forever. Those maps, back to my question about who is my neighbor, it brought me alive. And as we talked in our earlier, um, conversations about the importance of, uh, health, rural health to me is foundational. Um, I, I told you, I'm really committed to the American South. I understand the American South is largely rural. And I would never want to have any entity that, that's a flagship institution and system not deeply engaged in advancing human health in rural environments. So how do you get there? It's important to have population science help that's really describing the problems. But you also have to make sure the clinical practices that are in those environments are accessible and affordable so that people have, uh, an opportunity to be healthy and whole. And I, and I would, I would work with you directly to make sure we could do that and team, um, to talk to our government officials more broadly for that to happen.
Well, thank you for that comment because a lot of times, uh, it, not only in Louisiana but other states, the urban areas always come first. And being in a rural environment, that's what I like to advocate and speak up because that's the backbone. You know, there's, if you take the, I don't know the statistics of the student body we have, but I would have bet more than fifty percent come from rural areas that come to school here. And some of those people need to be educated and returned, both as physicians, lawyers, nurses, et cetera, back to those rural communities. So I appreciate your comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ormentor.
Dr. Tate, I too have some financial questions. The Louisiana, uh, LSU's relationship with the Louisiana legislature has not been good or effective in the last fourteen, fifteen years. In fact, since the first year of the Bobby Jindal administration, and Bobby Jindal was the governor before the current John Bill Edwards. As a result, fees have gone up, up, up on families and students, limiting access to higher education. How would that change under your leadership? Can you give us a specific lobbying strategy? Have you lobbied state legislatures in the past? And if you have, can you give us examples? And how would your effort be better than the two other individuals that we're, we're reviewing as potential candidates for, uh, for the presidency of LSU?
Well, I happen to enjoy it. So it starts with that, but let's talk about more recently in South Carolina. And when I arrived as provost in South Carolina, there was a law that, um, the university had been out of compliance with for decades. And the law was very simple. It asked the university to teach the founding documents of the United States of America to every student who matriculated at the University of South Carolina. We were out of compliance and had been for some time, which, as you might imagine, caused great strife with the relationship with the General Assembly as they were the ones who passed the law. And they also are the ones who appropriate. When I arrived, I went immediately to the faculty senator, chair, who was the person, the president of our faculty senate, and said, look, we need to get in compliance with that law. So I had to work on two faculty senate, senate fronts, if you will, one internally and one with an external body. We worked to pass, uh, a, a document, a curriculum change to be in line with the founding documents of the United States. That would be the Constitution, um, and, uh, the Federalist Papers. And there were several other really important papers, Emancipation Proclamation, many others. And we passed that as a faculty group. And then I went over and talked to, uh, the General Assembly members about what we had done and how they might shape the bill. I thought it was over, sir. We were in good stead. I get a phone call from the sponsor of the bill, member of the Republican Party. He said he wanted to pass the bill in unanimous fashion with bipartisan support. I thought that was commendable. He said, we need you to come over and talk to us about how you got that done at the University of South Carolina. I go into a room, Democrats and Republicans, and talk them through how to frame the particular bill. They amended, passed the bill unanimously. My point is, I had already established a relationship with that group, so much so that they were willing to call upon me to help them resolve a, a matter in bipartisan fashion. I'm extremely comfortable with that. I spent an inordinate amount of my time as provost and, and, and executive vice president, dealing with the General Assembly, meeting with them regularly, talking to them about their issues. I started off my first month having lunches with them and really building the bond and relationships so that when you're in trouble, they can see it and don't have to say, we don't know the guy. It's literally important to be in relationships on the front end. I'm extremely comfortable with that. It's what I am, it's what I do. I've, I've been president of these kinds of things since I was a boy. So I understand that you literally have to be in a relationship with people who are appropriating. And you have to listen and understand what they care about. I am not concerned about them being Republicans, Democrats, independents, whatever you want to call them in Louisiana. They are people who I am extremely comfortable talking to about adding opportunity to people who they represent in this state. It's what I do. It's what I care about and it's what my passion is. And I think people see it and understand it and they can relate to it.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, sir. Next question.
How, how, how important, speak to this group about how important or, or African-American studies at a place of higher learning?
Well, they just became extremely important at the University of South Carolina because in that amended bill I just described for you about, they talked about adding documents that deal with African-American life in the totality of, in, in the totality of the history of the United States of America. Thus, um, the Department of African-American Studies, Political Science and History are going to be teaching courses that relate to African-American life as it relates to the founding of this country. I think that's really extremely important. I do not think it's impossible to understand the United States of America without understanding African-American life. You can try, but I don't think you will really fully understand the United States of America. And so to me, I think it's a foundational part of what has to happen in studies related to both politics, history, law, et cetera.
Follow-up question. Um, if you could just like, okay, you're in South Carolina, we're all in SEC. If you could ma- wave a magic wand, what would be your ideal structure from an administrative perspective as you are selected to be president? Sort of what would be your hierarchy of, 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 of help? Or maybe you, you know, you sound like you might be Superman sometime. You just run every, everything.
Well, I'll be biblically.
You've got a lot of confidence. That's good.
As I, I say, I, I take a, a perspective like Moses. You need some help.
Yeah.
And so he, here we go. If, if I'm lining this out, I mentioned health sciences from the beginning. You have two medical centers. You have Penning, Pennington here, and you have biomedical sciences happening all over and population science. You need someone who's basically the point person for that. That's your point guard. They're managing that. They need an outstanding communications person because there needs to be a singular message coming from the, the health sciences more broadly. Right now, it's all over the place. They each have their own storyline. There needs to be a single message. And related to that, you also need the university advancement group. Here's where we'll be in that. Clearly, you would want to have in that group economic development. You would want to have in that group wherever, whatever you want to call it in terms of the folks who raise money. We call them development, A&amp;D, whatever you want to call it, alumni affairs and government relations. That group, they're responsible for helping you get money. We've been talking about money. They're either raising money in terms of development, they're bringing money in because of business partnerships, and they're working with the General Assembly or the general legislative body to bring in appropriations. They have to be singularly focused and with the same message. These groups interact, and then there's another group that deals with academic affairs and research. These three big groups, if you think about them, if they have unified communication, point guard running each one of them, I'm the, the big point guard in this, in a sense. Now we're all communicating about the same thing. We're not running over each other. We literally have an advancement group who's going out to help us get money. They're linked to the folks who might be dealing with the health sciences, which is its own world. They're also linked to the broader academic and research infrastructure. In that kind of context, you have a chance to be successful, elite, in, in, on the same message. That's really what I think would need to happen because you've got sixteen reports or so to the president. I don't know, the interim might want to talk to you about that, but that's absolutely not the way to be successful. And so I think you have to organize and synthesize and bring together very talented people at the top of each one of those organizational designs because all we control are time, quality and design. And design is nothing but time and quality factors. And so you've got to figure out how, how you're going to design this so you can drive quality and maximize, maximize how you're using everyone's time toward, uh, the, the common goals that are laid out in the strategic plan.
Thank you, sir. Next question. Any more questions?
Yeah, right here.
Yes, sir.
You just don't know where I'm at anymore.
Well, I was, I was describing.
But you just described, how many, how many people are you talking about adding to the staff to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, Dr. Tate? Sounds good. Sounds good. Everything sounds good. I'm just trying to see, you seem to have digested it quite well.
It's a really good question, and I've been pondering that because the design has been coming to me after being here with you for 48 hours. But the thing that's interesting is that these entities already exist in your org chart. It's just a matter of how you align it, how you line them up, and then who's going to be responsible for managing each one of the pieces. It's feasible that one of the leaders in one of those pieces might be the head of the totality of that particular component. And therefore, you might not be adding anyone, you might just be having a title change, and they're going to be fundamentally responsible for that functionality. The same for each, but you might want to have a national search and bring somebody in. It just depends, you know, I haven't been here long enough to assess talent, and I would not want to put anybody on the spot on that front. But clearly, you want very talented people over each one of those three, whether it's internal or external is the key. So you know you need three.
Okay, so you come in, you're president, you're initial or your immediate staff to help you. You do believe this is a pretty big job, you need some help, right?
Moses.
Okay. I agree with you. So, you come in, your main go-to team that you got to bring with you to accomplish, how many people are you talking about initially bringing in to help you build this, what you're trying to build? You're going to need some power, some people, executive vice president, whatever you want to call them. How big a staff do you envision that being? And how many of them? I mean, how many people do you think you need? I know you need them. I'm just trying to get my head around what you would try to do in that, in that respect. Because then I suggest that group's going to go out, check out everybody, go out and try to attain who you, who you have faith in, who you think can do the job, in that overall plan that you have. What do you think you need?
Well, I need three people who are ready to take on that alignment if we're going to go that way, but that would take some time to even realign and get organized in that way. One of the things I want to say to you, and really I want to be careful about it, is that you have to assess the talent around you. And there are talented people here, I've met them over the last 48 hours. They are no longer websites to me. They are real people who've demonstrated some skill and talent. So I really would want to find out what they can do and understand their skill set, passions, and ability to persevere, as we talked about a little earlier. And once you, once you know that, you know which one of them may be able to handle what you want to get done.
Are you going to, you going to do that first? Are you going to bring in people? You're immediately going to bring in a couple of, whatever you want to call it, running backs that are going to help you run this deal? Or are you going to go look at the talent? And how long do you proceed? What's your process? Is this going to take you a month or two? I'm just trying to get my head around what you're trying to do.
So today is May 5?
6.
6. My watch is off. No. You need a month, month and a half? How many times are you going to fly me back down here? I mean, in other words, you really have to assess the people. And I'm not being, I don't want to be flip. I mean, I really want to be direct with you about it as best I can. I would want to understand the talent and assess it, have conversations with people who've been here, who know what's around, and get after it that way. And then at that point, you would come up with a number in terms of, you know, I need somebody to help me here or there. Some folks might walk away if I'm picked. You don't know, I mean, I have no idea what people will do once you make your selection. So it's just very difficult to ascertain.
I'm going to change gears on you and go back to that year that we talked about. When you was at USC, what was y'all's on Title IX? Did y'all have a practice, some type of training practice that everybody at the school did or not?
No, training was not mandated at the University of South Carolina when I arrived. And we're currently in the process of, very similar to you, with a group looking at our current practices to ascertain what should be done in terms of the development of the Title IX function. And we did have a change in leadership in Title IX. Over the last year, a new individual came in as interim. There's also a current search to find a permanent individual in Title IX. And the chair or the incoming chair of the faculty senate is leading the charge to evaluate our current practice.
And Title IX, which you know we have issues.
Yes, sir.
It's very prevalent over here. If you become president, we already have the Hush Report with a lot of things we're going to do. Have you reviewed that?
I read the executive summary of the report, yes.
Not to hold you down too tight, but is there anything that you saw after reading that that you would add to the Title IX problem if you were president? That you would come to the board or put in place as president? That would, that you, after reading what we're going to do, what else would you do?
Well, I, you know, in my opinion, and I have great respect for third-party evaluations, but in the end, what I'm interested in seeing in terms of Title IX is, one, a culture in which when someone reports, the assumption is they have been traumatized in some form or fashion. You see, that's not in a report. That's actually a cultural change. You have to assume that the individual has been traumatized. And then you design prevention, where you, then you design a trauma-informed approach from that assumption. That's not a legal approach, which is Title IX is, that's actually a public health approach. And my, my idea is that it should be a student-centered, public health approach that assumes if a person reports that they have been traumatized, and we're going to treat them as such. Now, that's separate from the investigations and all the legal issues, but it's what you do with a human being who tells you something that's happened to them. And if any process is put together that does not start with that, sir, as epidemiologist and someone who deals with trauma-informed work, I would tell you that it's an absolute fail. And so, that's, that's where I would start. And anything that's going to be designed, if it works that way, it's probably going to be a lot better than the current practice. And then you've got to add on investigators so these things can be done in a timely fashion, and that the person who's been accused, as well as the person who has been traumatized, has belief and trust in the process, that this thing is being thoroughly investigated and being done in such a way that names are either cleared or trauma is documented, and those individuals are dealt with in a timely fashion.
On the issue of the Ag Department, which is a big issue, a big part of LSU, have you had a chance to look at, look at that?
Yes, they gave, they did give me.
It's an impressive system that we've created here for the rural areas.
Yes, sir.
Do you see anything that you would do differently in the process of what we do at Ag?
Well, I asked one of your boy professors that exact question yesterday because I was very curious about, you know, hearing from someone who actually had expertise there. He actually felt like they were doing really well. And I didn't get any insight from him as to that there were any things that were problematic. But one of the first things you have to do is to do an environmental scan and take a look at what's going on in each one of these academic areas, as well as in the Ag area, and ascertain whether or not it's really a best practice.
In South Carolina, you also, y'all have an Ag department similar to what we do, or it's different, totally different?
Well, you just hit me in my heart. That's called Clemson. That's painful, man. God, can't believe you did that to me. I can't believe this is happening. I'm in Louisiana and I'm being abused. I want, I mean, come on now.
Dr. Tate, we played them in a football game, and everybody in, everybody in Louisiana and every South Carolina fan was pulling for LSU in that, in that big game. Next question for Dr. Tate. Yes, sir.
So, Dr. Tate, what time, what time do you get up on average?
What time do I get up?
On average?
The real question is, how much do I sleep?
I'm listening.
Maybe five hours. It's not good from a neurological perspective because I'm adding too much inflammation to my brain. But I try to work out so that, you know, I get a little out of it, and you slam some blueberries and hope you can eliminate the inflammation. I'm just being real with you, I'm a psychiatric epidemiologist. You should sleep seven hours, but I don't. Yeah.
I'm at, yeah. So you, so you start work when you get up? You, I mean, that's.
I hate to tell you this, but since I was assistant professor, I, I just kind of worked 24/7. I have a witness in the back, my wife. It's really kind of ridiculous because I just go. Yeah. I'm just always working. I, you have to understand, I absolutely love what I do. When I was a professor, I loved it. When I was a department chair, I loved it. When I was a dean, I loved it. And I loved being provost. It's just, you just, you just live and breathe it. And people would sort of say, "How do you do it?" And you seem natural. And I said, "It's because I'm doing what I love." So I don't, the sleep compared to what I love. I don't love sleep, but I love what I'm doing. So the things that I do tend to wind out, went out over the sleep.
So, so, so you saw, so on the internet, whatever, on the cloud, you saw this job open, potential job open, and you decided to say, "I want to pursue that job." When was that and why was that? Why did you make that decision?
So.
Because you said these people want you back too now, or don't want you to leave.
I can go back, you know, I can.
I'm just asking.
Can I tell you honestly how it all happened? Honestly, you're part of this story. So I came down here last fall for a football game, and I actually met you.
Yeah.
At the governor's mansion. And I met many other people, including the interim president.
Who'd you sit next to at dinner if you could?
I sat next to you, sir.
Oh, okay, just checking.
Yeah, and, you know, we were just chit-chatting. I literally just started the job I was in, I was talking about how much I loved it. I loved working with the president I had, President Kasnen, who is an outstanding man.
He's a West Point man or something?
Yeah, yes, sir, a former general and just an outstanding leader. Learned a ton from him, he's a great man. And we were just having a good time, you know, talking about it and mentioned, folks mentioned there was going to be a presidential search here. I said, "Yeah, I wish you all well, you have a good, you have a great man in place right now, and I wish, I wish you the absolute best." And I moved on with my life. And as it would happen, I must have been nominated for the position because I, I saw it, but I didn't apply. So you get nominated. And someone says, "You've been nominated for the LSU position." I smiled a little bit and said, "That's a great honor. I really appreciate it, I'm really happy where I am." A search firm reached out, said, "Are you interested?" I said, "No, I'm happy where I am. I really, I feel like we're doing great things where I am, and momentum is extremely strong." They reached back out again, you know, "Are you interested?" And I took a look at it. I have great respect for the leadership currently in place and many other names I saw mentioned. I thought that those are fine individuals as well, including those other two that you just talked to. I have great respect for the things that they have accomplished. And in my mind, I thought, well, you know, I think they'll be fine. And then, I'll be frank with you, sir, I read more newspaper accounts and everything that was going on, looked at it, and you know, I'm kind of crazy like this. I said, I said, "They actually need somebody who's not afraid, who understands the kinds of things that you have to do to be successful at a research university, but is willing to hop into a fire and help them get out of it and bring out the greatness of the institution." And that's kind of what, the way I think about my life. And I'm very comfortable with that. So I decided to take a chance here and talk to my folks in South Carolina. I want them to know I really care for them if they're listening right now. These people mean a lot to me. And it's a big, sort of a risk professionally to come down here and have a conversation with you about it. But they encouraged me because they saw the leadership ability that I had, and I thought I owed it to them to come down and have a conversation with you. And that's the end of the story.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions for Dr. Tate?
I got a quick one, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Dr. Tate, thank you very much. It's been an honor to sit here and listen to you guys all day, but you today and going through all of your accomplishments and things that you've done. And we really are getting, I guess, kicked around a little bit on this Title IX issue. And a lot of it is, it happened recently, but more in particular, it really raised a lot of issues with some things where, something had happened years ago, in 2013. And it seems like you guys have some of those problems going on too. One of your art professors or something has, was stretched out over time, and finally, you guys done, did something about it. Can you kind of walk me through that? Because I know y'all, you, look, you're in it right now in the fire, and you're, I mean, you, if you get this job, you come right into the same type of fire.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I'd like to just let you explain that, kind of walk me through some of these issues that I've been hearing about.
We, all of us, LSU, University of South Carolina, we are a product of our history. It's archaeological dig. And in my case, we had two professors who had Title IX accusations in 2016, 2017 time period. Those cases were adjudicated through Title IX and found not to have merited any kind of action. Subsequently, last semester, a civil lawsuit was filed for those, against those two professors. And when the civil lawsuit emerged, one of the concerns I have as a chief academic officer is, can the individual who has been accused be effective as a instructor while they are in the middle of a civil litigation related to sexual harassment, sexual assault? The answer to that question for a rational person is no. And so, I went to the president because I'm in charge of academic affairs, even though those cases had already been adjudicated in terms of the Title IX, and made a recommendation to him that we suspend those individuals from campus activities and ask them not to be on our campus. Ruler of law is extremely important, that we could not fire them at that juncture during the middle of a civil law case. We would have to pay them while they were off our campus. But we did ban them from our campus once we were made aware of the civil litigation that was happening related to them. This past semester, there is another professor, a third one, who, again, never really went through a Title IX process. To be frank with you, I was at the General Assembly having lunch with individuals in the General Assembly when a blog post manifested itself that described one of the professors and his actions. And embedded in the blog post was the civil case. I looked at the civil case at dinner that evening, and the next day came in and talked to the president and said, "We should operate in the same fashion that we did with the others in terms of removing this individual from campus." We removed him from campus, but he also had administrative duties. I fired him from his administrative duties the next day. Now there, I want to say something. If you're listening to Twitter and Facebook and all these other places, you need to call me because I'm the only one who knows when I found out, and I'm the only one who knows that it happened within a 24-hour period. Because who knows when I read something? I read it, and I, and I had the person fired.
That, I'm not on Twitter or Facebook.
So I'm inundated with all this, you know, it's the world I live in. But can I, can I say one other thing?
I'm close to that, but.
I just want to say one thing, and it's extremely important to me because it's happening during this process. I have remained silent about all of the cases we've dealt with in Title IX, even though I'm inundated with people saying things on Twitter and other places. The reason I stay silent is because I said something to you about what you needed to do. I am not interested in traumatizing anyone else who has been through a trauma. And if it means that I have to remain silent while they express themselves either in protest or in any other form or fashion to keep from re-traumatizing an individual, I'll walk away from any job in America because it's more important that they not experience that again. And I really mean that deeply. I cannot be epidemiologist and a public health person and not have that as a core value.
I agree to that to some extent, but you certainly can't not address something based on you don't want anybody to relive it while maybe new people are living it today.
Correct.
Right? Okay. Just, I mean, maybe I was just missed what you said, but if, I know I feel for the victim, and you don't want to re-traumatize them by doing something about it, but you, you can't do something, you got to do something and not let the perpetrator continue to act.
Well, in my cases, I had three, and I'm three for three. They're all gone.
Yeah, well, that's good. I'm just making sure that, because we have, I mean, like I said, we're dealing with things that happened in 2013 today. And because there's some he said, she said going on. And I would hate to get in something like that. I mean, like I said, you guys have some old cases too that are currently coming up to light right in front of you. So I just wanted to ask that.
I just want everyone to know, I'm fully committed to removing individuals who harass, commit assault, or in the middle of litigation related to them from campus life. I think it's imperative. And you cannot actually be effective as an instructor while you're going through those litigations. And ultimately, if you're found guilty in any form or fashion, I think you should be removed, whether you have tenure or not. Gone. End of story.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Morris.
Doc, I wanted you to touch on, when you, I listened to your interview online with the search committee. And one thing that struck me was how important you thought athletics was equal to academia. Would you mind addressing that?
Yeah, I want to win national championships. I mean, in the end, this is what you're trying to get done. You want to have a student-athlete experience, and as I said earlier, where those student athletes are accomplished in the classroom, but similarly and equally accomplished at the highest level. You should be wanting to win SEC championship and national championships in every single sport you invest in at a place like LSU. And, and you should add on that those individuals should be graduated and great citizens when they complete their degrees and adding value to this, this state or wherever they decide to reside afterwards. That's critically important. Athletics is, is, for me, it's, it's, you know, it was interesting hearing people, you know, sort of question who you are in the interview process, because if you really knew who I was, I would take, I mean, like, I'm, like, it's a fierceness that was developed in me through athletics. And I really, really appreciate the fact that I had great coaches who taught me how to be, you know, be a point guard, or run, or finish, whatever you do, get up and keep fighting. That's a big part of who I am as an individual today, even though my knee won't let me do what I want it to do. And, and, but I, when I see young people who are engaged in it, whether, no matter what sport they're in, it just, it just brings me to life to see them fight and compete. And then, I'll tell you the experiences I had, and I just, I really want you to know. We took the licking down here at South Carolina when we played you at LSU. I had to get back on the plane with those, with those young people in the middle of COVID. And I watched them, you know, after a loss, get off the plane, and then because of COVID protocols, we had to be up early in the morning to actually take another test. And then those folks were going ice bath, and then they were headed out to do study. And I thought to myself, this is the discipline that's required to be successful in whatever you do. And I hope they translate what they're learning here, even though they lost. Everything about what they had to do, get up, keep going, test, prepare yourself for the next battle, is exactly what you want to have in athletics. I mean, that, that's what life is about. That's what being a leader is about. That's what being a great citizen is about, being a great father, whoever, whatever your identity is. That's how you manifest, and I think athletics does all that for you.
That's a great, that is a great answer, particularly the part about South Carolina losing.
You're still kicking me about that.
But Doc, that, that applies to students that are not athletes.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Temple, did you have a question?
Well, I, I was just was going to add to what he's saying, you know, the, the, the thing about athletics is, is it, it teaches you how to lose, which is the strongest lesson in life if you continue to live. You know, it teaches you how to lose. And because everybody, everybody that wins, wins. It's the ones that lose. That's, that's the comeback. So, I understand.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Any further questions?
You were speaking about students in the discipline earlier and how important that is. And, you know, I've gotten to know your, your student buddy vice president, or your student buddy president at South Carolina, Izzy. And she's had phenomenal things to say about you and, and your president. What are some things that you, that y'all are doing at South Carolina with talking with y'all's student government and the students on y'all's campus that you're looking to see translate to our campus, so that students feel connected to, to their president?
Izzy and Hannah, you know, I, I try to have conversations with them regularly. They're sounding boards for what's happening on the ground with students, understanding their life, not just them, but the other senators that they have. You know, they, they call me on Teams, ask me how to get things done, how to work through academic affairs or student affairs issues. I really enjoy that part of the job. They're amazing young people. The reason I'm involved in this is because for people like them, this is a great opportunity. We're, we're in the opportunity business. And so, to have leaders who sacrifice their time like that, you know, I talked about athletics with passion, but I also have the same amount of passion for those who volunteer in student government, because they persevere, they deal with the bureaucracy, they fight through and represent the stu, their fellow students really well. And so, I would want to keep that going. Historically, I always ask the students to give me a few things they want to get done, a charge, and as I said to you earlier, because I don't believe in waiting you out. So, I want you to put it in writing, and we're going to socialize the next group that comes along, and we're going to keep fighting about it, to get done what the students think are important. It's like your own strategic plan embedded into the broader strategic plan. And I try to model for the students exactly that. That's what leaders do. You have options. You lay out what you want to prioritize, and let's put our resources and talent into it. And I just have a lot of fun with them, too. We just talk about life and what they're going to be facing. The, the leaders we have are doing, going to go off and do some outstanding things, and I'm sure it's the same here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mallon.
Just one comment. I, if you're successful and you're the president, I commit to support you.
Well, I really appreciate you saying that, sir, and I, I would have no doubt about it. If I came across as being a little direct or a little terse in what I was saying, my apologies. What, what I wanted to get across you is I'm dead serious about it and ready to rock and roll.
You remind me of my friend across the, the dealer.
Which friend?
So, it's okay.
Which friend you talking about? Don't want to wear the corn.
Mr. Mallon has a number of friends, especially me. All right, who else? What other, Mr. Brown has a question.
Just all over me. What's the problem?
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Tate really enjoyed hearing your story and your thoughts and suggestions and how you would handle LSU position here as president. This question was asked the other candidates. You may or may not have some knowledge of the other candidates and their qualifications, but what would, what do you feel like uniquely that you have to offer that's unique to you that you have to offer for LSU?
You asked me to answer that relative to the other individuals, or just, just who I am?
No. Well, I asked that to the other individuals. What did they uniquely feel like they had to offer LSU in their acceptance position?
Well, in my, you know, the, the beauty of the LSU in its totality is, it represents a developmental pathway all the way from two-year to the highest level of PhD education. And for me, because of my experiences and background, I, I love all of that part of what's in LSU and in the system. And I've experienced in all of it and been successful in those endeavors. But to, to be clear about it, I think the difference maybe for me and a lot of other people who do academic administration, I don't know, I don't know what's in their heart. I have a heart for people, and I want to see them have an opportunity. And I take all the skills that I have and energy I have and devoted to trying to give them that, because that's what I've been blessed with. I've had an unbelievable run to this date. And I just want other people who might have come from backgrounds similar to mine or very different than mine to have a unique opportunity to be successful. LSU represents an opportunity regime, if you will, a public-private partnership that just opens up doors for people's lives. And that's who I am as an individual.
Thank, thank you very much, sir. Okay. I know it's been a long afternoon. Oh, yes, sir. You get one more question?
Yeah. So, what, what was the most, what was the most intriguing, intriguing question? What, what did you find to be the most intriguing, intriguing question that the faculty, staff had for you as you moved around, as you moved around and talked to folk? And where, where did you pick up any challenges? And can, I know that it's not routine or protocol, but maybe some of those folk behind him have a question or two. I don't, I don't know.
You're, you're right, that's not the protocol.
But I'm not out of line to ask him to.
You're not out of line to ask him the question.
You don't have to call the person's name, but what, what did you find the most intriguing question of?
Well, I think that, that the most intriguing finding was that you had these really special places distributed across the state. And there's, there, there seemed to be a tension about, you know, are they equally valued? And so, the question is, are they equally valued? So, so in my mind, I've been asking myself, if I were here, would I view these different entities as equally valued as a leader?
Silos, et cetera.
So, you know, you have Shreveport, you have New Orleans. I didn't get to New Orleans, but I know about the medical center there, and then you have Baton Rouge, and then you have other, you know, just, they're, they're places all over. It's geospatially arranged. And are they equally valued? Because I felt like some people maybe felt like they didn't have the kind of love they deserve. But, you know, what I, what I would say is that what was so special and about the experience was for me, in the end, and I think you, I think you felt this, sir, when I was in Shreveport. I, I literally, I, I told, I told them, you don't have to offer me the job, I can stay here and teach. Because it was just amazing, the kind of infrastructure that was being put forth, that if, if I was 18 or an adult looking to come back to school and looking at what they were doing with the, the kind of analytical work they had going on, and the partnerships that were developed, it just excited me in ways that, you know, that I would want to be supportive of. And, you know, a big part of being a leader is you've got to believe in what you're, you're advocating for. And what I saw there and, and the conversations I had with some of the faculty are, it would be worth the sacrifice of time, energy, and talent to make sure everybody had a chance to be touched by that.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Tate. Since I see no one else has any other questions. We, Dr. Tate, I want to thank you very much. We, we, we had the great privilege and honor of hearing from three outstanding folks today. And, and you're, you were absolutely wonderful. It's been an honor to have you here, sir, and, and we're going to, at this time, thank you for, for your participation, and I will accept a motion to go into executive session.
I so move.
It's moved by Mr. Starnes, seconded by Mr. Morrow. We'll move into executive session pursuant to Louisiana. Can we get? Objection.
You need to call a vote.
Can we get a bathroom break on that? Do we need a, do we need a roll call vote?
No, just say no objection.
Without objection, we are going into executive session. I believe we need a motion.
I move to bring us out of executive session.
Second.
Is there a second? Without objection.
Do we need a roll call vote for that?
No.
Okay. Without objection, we are in regular session. The first thing I want to do is apologize for a little bit of an oversight, because I failed to properly note that today, Tom Galligan became the president of Louisiana State University as opposed to the interim president of that Louisiana state university. And I'm, I'm going to call on Mr. Starnes for a brief comment.
I just want to express my appreciation for President Galligan. We, we asked you to become the interim, and not that that was ever going to be easy, but I don't think anybody had any idea how difficult the job we asked you to do was going to be. And I think you did it with extreme grace, tremendous amount of work, and I don't know how we could have gone, done any better than what you have done. And I sincerely appreciate your, your efforts in that regard. Thank you, sir.
I echo that. I know every board member echoes that. You've done a phenomenal job. You've become a great friend, and you are one great LSU tiger. I can tell you, folks, this man has done unbelievable work, as we all know.
Two words, thank you, and it's an honor, but most importantly of all, it's a team, and they deserve the applause and the credit. So, thank you.
At this time, I will call on Mr. Temple, who has a motion.
Mr. Chair and LSU family, I have a motion to make. And the motion is, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of the Louisiana State University, Agriculture, and Mechanical College does hereby select Dr. Tate as the next LSU president. And be it further resolved, the chairman of the board is authorized to complete negotiation of the terms of the employment agreement, which shall be subject to ratification by this board.
Thank you, Mr. Temple. Is there a second to this motion?
And on behalf of all the LSU students in the LSU system, I'd like to second that motion.
Motion was made by Mr. Temple. It was seconded by Mr. Cox. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Ms. Griffith.
Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Armenter?
Yes.
Ms. Aronson?
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Temple?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Fifteen yeas and none opposed.
I'm pleased to announce that Dr. William Tate has been elected the next president of Louisiana State University. I assume that he will be notified, and I think in a moment we will adjourn. But before we adjourn, I want to thank everybody. It has been a long, arduous process, particularly thankful to our search committee, as I've said on numerous occasions, Mr. Williams and his team, Dr. Gonzalez. Again, none of this works around this place without Tom Galligan, our president, and the history books will refer to him as President Tom Galligan. So, at this time, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. It is made by Mr. Zuschlag. It's seconded by Mr. Morrow. Without objection, ladies and gentlemen, it is, we are adjourned. There will be a press conference in the room next door. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Robert Dampf. It's my great pleasure to serve as chairman of the LSU Board of Supervisors. I'm standing here with a great group of people that is our board, who we have worked very, very hard for a very long time to select a great leader for LSU. There were many, many folks nominated for this position over many months. The list was narrowed on several occasions. It became finally narrowed to three folks who we heard from today. They were outstanding. Each one of those three individuals would be great leaders of a great, of any great university. I, I'm very proud of our search process that was led by Mr. Williams and Dr. Gonzalez. It was very transparent. It was, a lot of hard work went into it. I'm very appreciative of the entire LSU community who nominated folks, participated in this process, great number of volunteers. I think we had 18, 19 members of the search committee. I can't discuss presidency of LSU without saying how proud we are and fortunate to have had Tom Galligan for the last 18 months. And as you know, he, the interim tag. History will show that Tom Galligan was president of Louisiana State University. This is a very pivotal time in our university, from economic, environmental, social challenges. But we're doing great things at this place. We're doing great things. Our academic achievements, our enrollment, our diversity. I'm very proud of the things we've accomplished. We set about to find a great leader, and we found one. I met Bill Tate quite by accident six months ago at a dinner at the governor's mansion. And I'm, as my friends, my dear friends behind me know, I don't hear very well. And so, Bill happened to be sitting, the only guy that was close enough that I could hear, which was a break for me and kind of a bad news for him. So, I went in the back and I looked to see, you know, who is this guy? What's his area? His undergraduate degree was in economics, and I can't balance a checkbook, so I didn't think we were going to chat about that very much. He had a master's degree in psychiatric epidemiology, and I didn't have a clue what that was. And he had a PhD in mathematics and education, education with a mathematics cognate. I think I said that right. I didn't know what a cognate was, but I knew I didn't have one. But, but we had a great time. And I told James Williams, this is the kind of guy we need at LSU. And here we are, seven months later. And here we are, seven months later. It's my very great, very great privilege to introduce the next president of Louisiana State University, Dr. William Tate. And y'all know I'm a bit of a goofball. I forgot to introduce the best part of Dr. William Tate, Kim Cash Tate. And I highly recommend, by the way, go to the website, and this is not a paid political advertisement, Kim Cash Tate, and listen to her sing. She's amazing, Kim. And she's also a lawyer, which is near and dear to my heart. So, Kim, I didn't mean to slight you. Pardon me. Thank you.
I didn't know what was going to happen, sir, that day when we met. I honestly didn't. I really appreciate you and the other supervisors for this opportunity. I'm really overwhelmed with it. Quite frankly, it's not something I expected a year ago. I was very happy in South Carolina, but I'm going to be much, 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 much happier in this context, and I'll explain why. First of all, you've been giving me a hard time for a year about football. And I don't have to worry about that anymore, because I'm here. And I'm really excited to be part of this community. My wife, Kim, and I are really excited. I know we've enjoyed, we went up to Shreveport, you know, yesterday. The days are blurring. Day before, within the last 48 hours, okay? And really enjoyed it, and then walked around and saw this beautiful community. But what I'm really most excited about, I met students here who really are amazing. And for me, this position is all about what can we do to help students and get people access and opportunity in higher education. Have a tremendous passion for that. That's really in my DNA. How do we help people regardless of their background? We find the money, we get you here, and we give you an opportunity to live your dream. And I think there's no better place in the United States to come find your dream and make it happen than right here at LSU. I'm excited about being a part of the system. We have amazing opportunities, in my opinion, from a developmental perspective, from two-year colleges, all the way through medical education and PhD education. And I hope that we can support it and make it really, I know it's good now, but I know your expectation is we're going to be better in some years. And so, I promise you, that's where we're headed. We're going to keep going up. I would be remiss if I didn't say we are experiencing some challenges at this institution. I am ready to work with each of you to make sure that those are dealt with directly and that students are taken care of, and this community feels like a safe place, where they can come study and be the best that they can be as part of the LSU community. I will not belabor my remarks. I tend to be short in what I say, but I just want you to know how grateful I am for the opportunity. And the effort that I'm going to give you is going to be like a true point guard. I'm not going to give up. If I can't make it happen, I'm going to pass it to the person who can make the shot. And if the person's on the floor who can't make the shot, I'm going to knock it down. Thank you. I appreciate you.
How long will you be here? Just like one year, five years, 10 years?
You mean in this trip or in my career? I will be here as-
Answer that, 20 years.
My intention is to be here as long as you have me. Now, they have a lot to say about it. Point of fact is, I have to perform. And if I perform well, I hope to be here. I might look like I'm about 20 years old, but I'm a little older than that. And I hope that this would be a place where I would end my career in such a way that you'd be proud. And so, it's not my intention to be anywhere else than right here in Baton Rouge and broadly in the state of Louisiana.
And you're going to start by doing a new strategic plan? Was that what I was understanding you all said?
Well, we had some conversations during the interview process about the strategic plan and where it is right now. And there are a lot of ways to do strategic planning. I think that there's an opportunity for us to delineate some common goals that would go across the system and to then move forward in uniform fashion to achieve those. And so, I think we have an opportunity to do that. I'd like to work with my colleagues to figure out if this is the best time. We're in the middle of a Capitol campaign. You generally align those together, but we'll have some conversations and look at it and see if that's the right direction.
All right, we're going to pass the mic so we can hear on Zoom. So just raise your hand, I'll come to you. And please introduce yourself, so Dr. Tate knows.
Dr. Tate Johnston von Springer, Channel 2, here in Baton Rouge. Can you kind of surmise, in your opinion, how LSU has handled fallout from the Hush Blackwell report? Do you find it satisfactory to this point? And as it relates to Title IX, what is going to be your first step implementation to move the university forward?
Well, I'll start with your second question, because that's the better one for me. The reality is, I think that we need to have and be a model for the rest of the United States of America in how to handle Title IX. If you think that this is the only institution in this country that is dealing with this matter, that is not, unfortunately, the case. And I think that we have an opportunity to design and build a trauma-focused approach, where if a victim comes forward, that we recognize that they have been traumatized in some form or fashion, and then we work with them in the context of that trauma to make sure that they are taken care of. And I think that deals with the first part of your question. So, in the end, in looking at the report, our end game has to be a trauma-focused approach to dealing with sexual harassment and sexual assault. And ultimately, an adjudication process that is quick and aligned with the federal guidelines in terms of the timeframe and having the capacity to do that. And then if a person is found guilty of that, eliminating them or removing them from our campus as soon as possible.
Dr. Tate Lester Duwa with Channel 9. What's your biggest challenge facing you here at LSU?
Biggest challenge today is getting to know you. I mean, in the end, what I have to do very quickly is to come to understand what the people, the state of Louisiana want, what my colleagues who are going to be my accountability system, what they aspire, what the faculty and staff and students desire. And I've got to do that pretty quickly. So I've got to be a quick study, come to understand the needs and desires of the folks here, and then organize us in a way that we might be able to attain the goals related to what the community wants to be in the future. It's about dreaming, and I want to hear what the dreams are.
President Tate, Brooks Cabina from The Advocate here in town. You mentioned this meeting that you got to be here for the football game. It was part of your interview there. Could you tell us a little bit about that meeting, how you came to be here?
You mean the meeting I came to get my butt kicked by LSU?
I'm a sportswriter. I covered that game as well, so I won't ask you about that.
Yeah, so it wasn't part of the interview process. I literally was here as part of the team, coming from the University of South Carolina. I was here with my president, who has been a great, great leader for me, Bob Kasselin, and some other members of our leadership team. We were invited to go meet with the governor. They are both West Point graduates, and, you know, many folks know who my president is there. He was the, he headed that organization. And we went over and just, you know, in the middle of COVID, sat in a tent and had a meal and talked a little trash about football. I came up on the short end of that one, and the rest is history. I did not communicate, in case folks are wondering, with these folks until the search process started, when I heard from a search firm, Parker, and said that I had been nominated for the position. That's how this works. And I thought, wow, I've been nominated for a really great job. And you've heard some of the remarks probably through the interview process, and the rest is how it unfolded.
The library is from a old official who supported segregationist policies to this semester opening an African-American Studies department. Where do you see LSU now in terms of its progress with racial justice, and where do you feel like it still has to go?
Well, if I have discerned anything from the folks that I've been meeting with over the last couple of days, is that they're never satisfied with where we are, and they always want to get better. And that's what draws me here as well. And so I would imagine all the progress that has been made on that front is viewed as the starting point for achieving what the community desires, and that is an inclusive environment where people feel wanted and respected and part of the community.
Brooks Cabina again. I mean, again, you were mentioning the trauma-focused approach. Could you expand on what you mean by that and what would be in place with that kind of approach instead?
Well, you know, one of the challenges when we frame something in a legal way, like Title IX, which morphed out really the 14th Amendment, equal protection under the law, I'm going to be careful, because I'm standing here next to my wife who's a lawyer, and she'll correct me. But when you start from a legal framework, generally speaking, when you go to court, you have to prove that, you prove your point. You litigate it, if you will. And so, the assumption is that, you know, nothing's happened, and/or depending on the way it's set up, that you're innocent until proven guilty, that kind of environment. But here I come to you, and I tell you I've been traumatized, and you put on top of me that legal framework where I have to prove it to you, as opposed to a public health approach, where you might come in to me and tell me this has happened, and I believe you. And I take you in, and then I nurture you, and I help you, and I help guide you through a process that might ultimately lead to something dealing with litigious activity, if you will. But the initial beginning point is, I'm going to take care of you because you're part of my family. And if that doesn't happen on the front end, it's a complete fail. And so what I'm saying is that that's what we have to do, and that's the way we have to model our behavior. And I'm sure that any commission or group that gets together to think about this is going to start with that, because that's the best practice.
We have one on this side, then we're going to go to Channel 2, and then Mark Ballard at The Advocate.
Nick Fruein with The Revlon Campus. So the committee moved to allow applications to be accepted past the original deadline on April 21st, and that's when yours was accepted, the weekend after. Was there a reason that your application was late?
Yeah. Excuse me. I'll address that.
Sure.
James Williams, I chaired the search committee. There was no motion to extend the deadline. I think we made it clear, both the day that we met, I think it was a Wednesday, the beginning of the process and thereafter, that because we posted the job, and the way we posted it to the world was open until filled, we couldn't, then, we felt, and this was best practices from the search firm, after the fact, then have a cutoff. We thought that a practical cutoff would be once we started interviews, because even though they're still open, once we interview candidates and those are over, there's no opportunity for anybody to get in and become vetted. So, the Wednesday when I think the search committee met, we considered whatever applications we're in at that point. But you may remember, if you covered that meeting, we explicitly asked and said during that meeting that we would continue to receive applications up until the interview date. And so, Dr. Tate was one of those that we received after that Wednesday meeting.
Dr. Tate, a follow-up to that before I get to my question, obviously, later that week was when your application came in. Was there a reason you personally waited that late in between when the first applicants were publicly revealed? Did you talk to anybody from LSU, or was it personal mulling of the decision to apply that your application came late?
Right, so, you know, I'm going to be direct and tell you, hey, I love South Carolina. I know I love you all, too. But I really enjoy my time there. The people have been great to me. It's a wonderful place, and it was a very hard decision for me personally. Ultimately, I made the decision, obviously, to apply. And then, once you apply, you know, you begin to know the people and get a sense of what you're going to experience here as a part of the community. And we were drawn to that over time, because at any time, you can withdraw. Obviously, each day and each moment, I just became closer to the group here, and I feel like we made the right decision. And ultimately, it's played out in a way that I can be part of the community for a longer period.
And then, my question I had for you, I guess a moment of reflection, obviously, today, a historic move for LSU, for the university. You were the first African-American president. You will also be the first African-American president in all of the Southeastern Conference. Excuse me. Can you just reflect on that milestone personally for a moment, maybe?
Yeah, as I told the committee, my grandfather grew up in Oxford, Mississippi. That's the SEC town. My grandmother's from Mississippi Delta. My other side of my family is from Tennessee and Kentucky. It's all SEC country. Quite frankly, I didn't think this day would come. And I had a conversation with a colleague a few years ago, asked a question, would it ever be possible that actually an African-American would be president in the SEC? My colleague told me he thought it would be possible. Y'all made it possible. And so, I'm really grateful for it, as I reflect historically in my own personal journey. It's a huge moment for me individually, just being a president, period. But this part of history, to me, is very special. It also means that I have to absolutely be outstanding, because they're going to hold me accountable. So what I would like you to say, in X number of years, because you asked me how long I'm going to be here, is that, not that the guy was just an African-American president, but he did a dag-on good job, and we're thankful he came.
Actually, I had another question, but I want to follow up on that. There's a committee on campus that is going through the campus, trying to identify all the segregationist and Confederate names, and it will likely be a very controversial effort to remove those names from the campus. Is this something that's going to continue under your watch?
I understand that that committee is working very hard, and I see no reason why. I will let somebody else answer, but from my take, I wouldn't see why they would stop because I've arrived. It seems like the train is rolling, and they're going to historicize and contextualize these artifacts on campus and various buildings and provide us a report. And I think we have to look at that report as a community and assess where we are with those names.
Would that include the Tigers, which is a Confederate unit?
Well, I haven't seen the information and data, sir. So, it hasn't been contextualized. I don't have a report. So I would be speculating on what they're going to say. I understand there's some outstanding historians on there, and that I expect the empirical evidence to be really very clear. But that said, there's history, and then there's a decision. No decision has been made. And so what we're going to get is a report that tells us the history of the different names. And then there has to be a decision.
My initial question was, when are you actually going to be coming?
Here's it, oh, I believe it's July 2nd.
July 2nd?
Yes.
Has there been contracts?
Actually, I'm, well, I'll let you talk, because you're the chair, sir.
I have authority to negotiate with him per the board resolution, and we have some general concepts. We'll, I don't think we're going to have a problem with the contract, if that's your question.
Well, if the contract's not finished yet.
No, the contract is not finished.
Generally, what will you be paid?
Winston? We haven't finalized the contract.
All right, one last question from Jason.
Hey, have you been following anything going on with bills in the Louisiana Legislature lately? And if so, are there any, especially in regards to Title IX reporting, that you support or have any comment on?
Well, up until a couple of days ago, I was following all the bills that were in South Carolina. And I can tell you what's there, and we're going to get a ton of money that I'm walking away from. But I don't, I haven't followed the bills here in Louisiana. I'm sure I'll be briefed very carefully about those bills in short order. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Tate. Do you have any closing remarks?
Just, I look forward to working with you all. And for those of you in the press, the one thing you have to get used to, and I hope you appreciate it, is I'm pretty direct and not politically correct. So feel free to ask what you need to ask. I want to be a transparent individual here for you and just lay it on the line. You write it, and I'll make sure you get the absolute truth in what I'm saying. Appreciate y'all. Go Tigers!
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.